Test, test.
May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? The owner of a black Kia. A black Kia. Licensed DMJ 0334. Your lights are on, your parking lights are on.
Just like you said, we had this speaker.
Yeah. Hey, how are you? You're having a good seat?
I need to talk to her. I need to talk to her. I was like, I need to talk to her.
Perfect, I love your handwriting. And Coach Josh Ragsdale. Yeah, got it. Um, we need another thing.
She said she's getting them all together. She's gonna give to me.
Oh, good, okay, thanks.
Don't find out what face, what the face gonna do with that card and money. Why she give it to you then, why she have it up there? Oh, that's what she's doing. Oh, I didn't know what she was doing, I guess she was trying to...
The time now is 6:08 PM. We have a quorum, and the meeting has been duly posted. Good evening and welcome to the regular board meeting of the Dallas Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening, and please join us in standing for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and a salute to the Texas... Board members present, starting on your left and my right, are trustee Joyce Foreman, I know she's here, trustee Lou Blackburn, trustee Nancy Bingham, trustee Bernadette Nuttall, trustee Eric Cowan. Our superintendent of schools, Mike Miles, joins us, and I'm Miguel Solis, the board president. We have translators available, translator in the back, so if anyone needs a translator, please walk to the back and we'll be able to take care of you. At this moment, trustees, if you'll help me recognize any public officials who may be in the audience. I didn't get a chance to go through the audience, so did we see any out there? All right. And I believe we do have some district accolades, so let's take a second to celebrate our district. First, four district schools received national recognition for excellence. The National Center for Urban School Transformation recently named four Dallas ISD schools as finalists for the Excellence in Education Award. The four schools are John Quincy Adams, Jimmy Tyler Brashir, John J. Pershing, and Walnut Hill Elementary Schools. The award recognizes the top urban schools in the country that are exceeding, are excelling despite the many challenges that students face. Also, Segalville High School debate team were named city champions during their first year of competition. Debate students Giselle Estrada and Cairo Bustos were crowned city champions in the novice division in the Dallas Urban Debate Fall City Championship. Cairo was also named top individual speaker in the novice division. Teammates Chris Caddell and Jasmine Cortez made it to the semifinals, and Madison Tenorio ranked 19th in the individual speaker category out of a field of 150 students. Congratulations to this talented team for their great work during their first year competing. Also, district students were named finalists in our Gardier MLK Junior Oratory Competition. Eight 4th and 5th grade students will now advance to the MLK Oratory Finals on January the 16th at the Majestic Theater, where they will deliver their original speeches. The event starts at 11:00 AM. It's free and open to the public, so please come out and cheer on our students. Those students that are advancing are Kaiwin Brown, 4th grade from Wilmer Hutchins Elementary, Serenity Duggan, 4th grade from Thomas L. Marcellus Elementary, Jalen Hedman, 5th grade from Clara Oliver Elementary, Walker Homan, 5th grade from Harry C. Withers Elementary, Atana King, 5th grade from John Neely Bryan Elementary, Camilla Mesa, 5th grade from Thomas Tolbert Elementary, Hannah Wesley, 5th grade from Charles Rice Learning Center, and Ayesha Young, 5th grade from William Brown Miller Elementary. And finally, Conrad Senior, a Conrad Senior has become the school's first student to be accepted to Harvard. Wow, nice. Congratulations to Quinn Neroz on his recent acceptance to Harvard. Neroz applied during the early application period and was the only non-magnet student in the district and the first Conrad student to be accepted. Our best wishes go out to Mr. Neroz, congratulations. And now we'll read the recognitions of students, school, and staff. Ms. Scully, would you please help me with that?
I'm ready.
Or Delisa?
No problem.
Thank you.
Trustee Nuttall and Superintendent Miles, please come forward. Will the following Skyline Raiders, please come forward. Head coach Reginald Samples, offensive coordinator Herman Johnson, team captains Zach Abercrombie, Kylan Johnson, Savan Rollison, and Anthony Willer. The board is pleased to recognize the Skyline Raiders football team. Over the, over the past four seasons, you will be hard pressed to find many teams who have been better than the Skyline Raiders. Coached by Reginald Samples, the Raiders have accumulated a 51-6 record from 2011 to 2014. Not only have the Raiders won 40-plus district ballgames, accounting for seven straight district titles since 2011, the Raiders have been crowned regional champions twice in 2011 and 2014, which qualified them for the Texas State Football semifinals, 14-1 in both seasons. In 2013, the Raiders advanced to the third round of the playoffs. In 2012, the Raiders were ranked number three in the nation by MaxPreps.com. That season, the Raiders advanced to the regional finals. As of last week, when Skyline faced Allen, the Raiders were ranked number two in the state of Texas and number seven in the nation. The benefits of the Skyline Raider football program are evident through millions of dollars awarded to student athletes for college scholarships. Coach Samples and staff have had the privilege of coaching young men who have been nominated as all-district, all-state, all-American, and even players who currently play in the NFL.
Fellow from the player, they played an excellent game with Allen Eagles on Saturday. Um, it was really, really, really good, it was intense, they did a good job. They had a great pep rally on Friday. Sandy, come on down, he's with the Alumni Association. He's the first graduating class of Skyline. We want to thank you for your hard work for a game well-played and on the field and off the field. You have something, Coach?
Well, I'd just like to say, it's just a blessing to be able to work with these great young men.
So, thank you guys, and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Congratulations, Skyline Raiders. Superintendent Miles, trustee Blackburn, please come forward. Will the following South Oak Cliff Bears, please come forward? Coaches Emmett Jones, RJ Bond, and Jason Todd, players George Stevenson, Jalen Goss, Marvin Terry, and David Johnson. The board is pleased to recognize the South Oak Cliff Bears football team. The 2014 South Oak Cliff football season began with great expectations from everyone throughout the state of Texas and including themselves. Their ultimate goal was to win a state championship or finish better than they did for the 2013 football season by advancing past the third round of the state playoffs. They believed that they had one of the most challenging preseason football schedules in the entire country. They finished the preseason schedule 1-4, losing to national 6A powers such as Cedar Hill High School, DeSoto High School, and an up-and-coming 6A program, South Grand Prairie High School. The Bears knew that playing this type of schedule was one of the best decisions they could have made for the program as they dominated District 13 5A opponents by a score of 363 to 33, finishing 6-0 and winning an outright district championship. They made it through a challenging season after two critical members of their program passed away. Alumni president Lawrence King and assistant coach Fred Webb Jr. South Oak Cliff High School didn't accomplish the ultimate goal, but finished as 5A Division II Region 2 by district champs, area champs, regional semifinal champs, and regional finalists after failing to Ennis in the fourth round of the state playoffs. They are expecting many student athletes from this year's team to extend their academic athletic careers on the college or university level after graduating in 2015.
Number 55 stepped out, so I guess he's the team spokesperson. So, uh, it's always good that we have star athletes that also stars in the classroom. And, fellas, I want you to know, with all those other championships, you are the champions in District 5, okay? So, you're the spokesperson, you're the team captain tonight, tonight? Okay, speak up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, well, I don't really have too much to say, you know, it's a blessing to be here today. You know, me and my boys, we had, you know, a great season. You know, dedication to both of the coaches that we lost this year, also to the great coaches, you know, that sent us off to college this year, you know, I just really wanted to say thank you. These guys here, we really fought hard this year, and that's just pretty much it, thank you.
Good job, coaches, anything?
Don't have much to say myself at all either, but, uh, thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to come out to this wonderful setting. It's an honor, it's some of the things we talked about in the beginning of the season, so we're just glad and excited to be here, thank you.
Delisa, Delisa, one other thing I want to add, just because I think it's really important, is number 15 right here, hold on one second, know who you're just here. David, I want this crowd to also realize that we don't just have superior athletes, and you're going to hear a little bit more from another great team, but we have superior scholars and leaders as well, and this young man right here is a phenomenal leader. He's part of the Mayor's Rising Star Council, he is a leader at South Oak Cliff, he's led multiple projects. He is, I mean, just absolutely phenomenal. I've gotten a chance to know him over the past, what, now a couple of years? And, yeah, and I just want you to know, this board is so proud of the work that you're doing, and you keep up the great work, David.
Awesome. Congratulations, South Oak Cliff Bears. Principal Benjamin Mackey and executive director Isaac Carrier, please come forward. Cameron Wicks, please come forward. The board is honored to present a certificate of recognition to Cameron Wicks. Cameron is a senior at the Talented and Gifted Magnet at Yvonne A. Yule Town View Center. She is an academic scholar who is on track to complete 18 advanced placement classes by graduation in June 2015. Her academic honors include several National Honor Society Awards, AP Scholar Awards, the 2013 Steve Harvey Disney Dreamers Academy winner, and two Presidential Service Awards, just to name a few. Among academic success, Cameron has received several Girl Scouts honors. She started her Girl Scout journey as a daisy and has earned the Bronze, Silver, and Gold Awards, Gold being the highest award. Each year, Girl Scouts of Northeast Texas honors young women who have demonstrated leadership through a community project that creates change or action with long-term possibilities. One example of Cameron's leadership and service to others is the Baby Blanket to Haiti Project, in which she organized. This project helped to collect over 800 baby blankets, which were used to create 350 clean birthing kits for new mothers in Haiti. Girl Scouts selected her along with one other recipient as their 2014 Young Women of Distinction honorees for their outstanding community service and leadership skills. She was honored at the Women of Distinction Luncheon on November 19th.
Standing ovation, standing ovation. It's always good when we have daisies grow up to be Gold Star-type, uh, Girl Scouts. Mom and dad, I need you to come down here because I need you to, I need this crowd to know that Cameron didn't do this by herself. Cameron has two parents that are supporting her all the way, and Cameron tells me that she's torn with the idea of going to Texas A&amp;M or Purdue, and she wants to major in food science. Dora, where's Dora Reva? Uh, food science. She is going to help us fix the food that the students are often calling me about, we're going to fix the food. Cameron's going to help us make the food better beyond Chicken Tender Tuesday. She promised us we're going to have something from Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, but I want Cameron to tell us more about all the things she's done and all the things she's going to do.
Good evening, everyone. I want to just first say thank you so much for this honor, it's really great to be here. Well, for my gold award, I did a patient servicing at Methodist Hospital where I created self-standing surveys for the patients' bedside tables so the healthcare staff can get to know them a little better. And it's just been really great being able to give back to the community in ways like that, and I love being able to make sure I bring all of my peers along with me, so it's been a great experience, thank you so much.
Congratulations, Cameron. Superintendent Miles, please remain standing. Trustee Cowan, Mr. Gil Garza, director of athletics, and coach Josh Ragsdale, please come forward. The board is honored to present a certificate of recognition to the WH Adamson High School Varsity Football Team. Will the following football players, please come forward? Daniel Guadorama, Eric Viscara, David Benda, Darian Guest, Oscar Lopez, Danny Juarez, Jaime Espinoza, J.C. Plabla, Ernesto Viscara, Josh Duro Harvey, Jacob Sines, Darius Guest, Jose Ramos, Cody Morris, Carlos Gomez, and Isaiah Martinez. Will the remaining team members, please stand at your seats? Last year, the WH Adamson High School Varsity Football Team pledged and carried out a Stop Domestic Violence campaign that spread worldwide. This year, the Adamson Leopards met with a group of women who traveled from Bangladesh to learn how to spread the word against domestic violence in their country. The women who were brought to Texas by the World Affairs Council of Dallas-Fort Worth spent time discussing their own country's longtime challenges with the issue and the Adamson Football Team's efforts to encourage men to speak out against the problem. The discussion was a humbling experience for the team. Coach Ragsdale and his players are encouraged knowing the team's efforts are getting international attention. All right.
First of all, first of all, I want to thank you all for being here this evening. I'm glad that a coach could arrange this. So many times, we bring athletic teams in here to honor them for their accomplishments on the field. We don't often talk about the education that these kids learn on the football field, in the gymnasium, in the band hall, in the orchestra room. The education and the leadership that the coaches are giving... The education and the leadership that the coaches are giving you men are something to be treasured for the rest of your lives. The message that you are spreading from the east coast to the west coast of Bangladesh has been recognized not only by national media, but local media as well, and very soon, they will be on CBS Nation, or nightly news, so I appreciate your coach and your leadership. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I knew I forgot something. Where's Josh Duro? Come here, young man. You're running back? Did you, did you win a national rushing title or something? No? Sports Illustrated High School Athlete of the Month for November. I'm going to let your coach tell us why.
Very special story, first of all. Thank you for, uh, it's an honor to be here. These, these are my boys. These are my sons. I, I don't have a boy at home. I do have twin daughters, but these are my sons. Um, and I told Josh recently, if I'm ever blessed enough to have a son of my own, I hope he has his heart, his willpower, his drive to be successful. It wasn't long ago that, just before we started the football game, we're out on the field getting ready, that I had to break the news to Josh that he had lost his father. And Josh had been one who was a leader for our domestic violence project, going out, asking men to take the pledge to stand up against domestic violence. He lost his dad to an act of domestic violence. Very easy for the young man to go home and never want to talk about it again, and, and hide from the true feelings he has. He did not allow me to take him home. He demanded that he played that night, and in fact, less than a week later, he's out still getting pledges, asking people to stand up against domestic violence. Uh, it takes, that takes a lot. Uh, he has grown, um, he's already, in my eyes, a man. He's even more a man for being able to stand up for, for what's not always popular. Um, we talk about being the uncommon men. Um, we haven't won a whole lot of football games, but I promise you this, these young men have done so much to make you, the citizens of Dallas, Dallas ISD, proud. And Josh, being able to stand up and still say, um, "I'm not my dad, I'm not going to make the same mistakes, and I want to keep something from like, from, something like that from happening again," uh, it takes courage. So, very, very proud of Josh.
Superintendent Mounds, please remain standing. President Solis and Chief of Operations 1 DePaul, please come forward. Mr. Tim Shattick, please come forward. The Board is honored to present a certificate of recognition to Tim Shattick. Tim began his career with the District in 1987 under the direction of Superintendent Linus Wright. He took a short break from service in 1991, but returned in 1993. Since that time, he has worked with the Board at more meetings than he can count. In addition to working Board meetings, Tim has served the District in a multitude of positions within the Maintenance Department, ranging from crafts person, public address lead person, supervisor of public address, stage, clock repairs, and audio for special events. Tim will be retiring on January 23rd, 2015, making this his last regular Board meeting in which he will be serving the Board. On behalf of the Board and Board Services, we want to publicly thank Tim for his hard work and dedication.
Just real quick, Tim's a man behind the scenes, and, uh, pointed me in the right direction when I was going down the wrong direction, trying to figure out all this stuff up here, and mics, and he's everywhere. The guy's everywhere, so I got a chance to work with him as a staff member, uh, and you've been extremely phenomenal, uh, during my time on, on the Board. So, thank you so much, Tim, for your service, man, and happy holidays as well. Enjoy it.
I appreciate it. It's been an experience. Mostly good. But I wouldn't trade it for anything. It's been a ball.
Congratulations, Tim, and thank you for a job well done. We will miss you. This concludes our recognitions.
It's already happening, Tim, see? Just kidding. All right, now, we're on to our segment for speakers. Uh, this segment is for speakers who wish to address the agenda items. Speakers are reminded that they are to address the Board as a whole and not to address individual trustees. Ms. Scully, will you please call the speakers' names?
President Solis.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we only have four speakers for non-agenda items, can we move them up and just hear all the agenda speakers at one time?
I have no, no problem with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Sure, let's do that as well.
The Dallas ISD Board of Trustees welcomes citizens, visitors, and employees to its meetings. To hold this meeting in an effective and orderly fashion, we ask members of the public to please conduct themselves appropriately. Any person making personal, rude, disrespectful, slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the Board shall be removed from the room by the poli, police and security officers at the direction of the presiding officer without additional warning. I remind each speaker, you have three minutes to speak. When you arrive at the microphone, please state your name and address. Our first speaker is Amy Lee, followed by Jennifer Wagner.
Hold on one second, ma'am. Your, your microphone's not on. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Amy Lee, and I live at 1918 Mayflower Drive in Dallas, Texas. I'm here tonight regarding my concerns with the methodologies and policies of Mike Miles. I have a five-year-old daughter in kindergarten at Rosemont Primary. My husband and I were weary of DISD, but decided to give it a chance because we've heard so many wonderful things about Rosemont. After speaking with other parents and teachers and attending recent public meetings regarding TEI and ACP testing, I have been trying to educate myself on how this program works. What I have learned thus far is appalling. I can, with full confidence, state that if the other 99% of parents with children in DISD understood what is happening in their schools, they too would be appalled. Here are the reasons that I believe this program is not in the best interests of my child. The ACPs are not developmentally appropriate for elementary-age children. Example, art, music, and gym should be fun at this age. This is their first exposure to these subjects, and they have barely had a chance to begin this journey. Reading and math should be the focus of the subjects at this age, which are covered in the STAR and the ITBS exams. The tools are discriminatory. The first-grade rubric is not available in Spanish. 50% of DISD parents speak Spanish. We're a dual-language school, and everything that we get from our school and pass out is written in English and Spanish. When the rubric was requested in Spanish by the teacher, she was told it was not available upon multiple requests. The ACPs are not mandated by the state of Texas. This mandate comes from the superintendent. Because of this, the extra testing takes valuable classroom time from my child, and she has to sit for hours at a time and wait while the other children are tested. The only result from the ACPs that is shared with my child's teacher is the score. No information on where she fell short. No information for the teacher to share with me. So, there's no opportunity for either of us to reteach and reiterate, reiterate what we, the teacher or the parents, have fallen short of teaching her, as opposed to the STAR and the ITBS exams that provide valuable information to help close this loop. The lack of ACP results leaves the teachers and the parents with no tools to help complete this circle of learning with their children. And because they are going to use these scores to determine teacher pay, it leaves the teacher with less in their pockets as well. And Lord knows, I don't have enough time to talk about teacher turnover. So, it's evident that this, this process and these ACP exams are experimenting with our 160,000 children to find a way to, to prevent the District from paying teachers what they have rightfully earned. It is evident when you see items on the...
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Your time has expired. Jennifer Wagner, Jennifer Wagner, followed by Kristy Vowles.
My name is Jennifer Wagner. I live in District 7. My address is 943 Leatris Drive. I am here regarding concerns about the methodology and practices of the current administration. I have three children, six and eight, who are in kindergarten and third-grade dual-language program at Rosemont in Oak Cliff. I have a four-year-old who will be attending kindergarten there next year. I am specifically concerned about the current, about the ACPs as they pertain to the children. I would like to know why kindergartners are tested in the first place. My kindergartner can't even remember to put his shoes on. Secondly, I would like to know why the fine arts courses are being tested at all. I am an art major and had 10 years in the corporate field in advertising. Knowing whether or not my child can draw a yellow triangle is not a definitive marker of learning. I want to see art, pure imagination and freedom, to explore the abstract side of life. I want a child to be able to sing if a child wants to sing, not be asked to do a solo a cappella in front of a teacher who is not his or own, her own teacher. As far as gym ACPs go, rolling around on the floor like a log does not make for exercise. We are a dual-language school at Rosemont. We have a lottery to get into dual language. It is very important to the parents that Spanish be taught throughout the year. The dual-language teaching goes by the wayside with preparation for the ACPs. My children, our children, are not statistics. They are each individuals. They are eager to learn, and they are eager to learn and be taught by teachers who are eager to teach. Do away with the ACPs. Let the teachers do what they do best. Teach our children. Thank you.
Kristy Vowles, Kristy Vowles, followed by Dorsey Martinson. Kristy's not? Okay.
We're going to make it six child.
Okay. Dorothy, Dorsey, Dorsey Martinson, followed by Ryan Davenport.
My name is Dorsey Martinson, a concerned parent from 1219 North Winnetka. I'll start by saying that the last time that I entered this building was to be honored for putting Dallas on the map as a coach of a three-time global competition team in Destination Imagination, the last year resulting in a global win over 34 other countries in all 50 states. Rosemont was the only school in history to bring home two first-place global wins from the same school in a single year. I speak as a parent who is worried that this administration is doing a disservice to the District, which is evident by the large number of unsatisfied parents, teachers, administrators, and taxpayers. The overwhelmingly unfavorable data regarding the current policies should be analyzed and taken more seriously. As a parent and taxpayer, I refuse to allow this Board to devalue the education that my children will receive in DISD. I recently wrote a post that I'd like to share with you tonight regarding my recent experience with ACP testing. Goes, "Coloring outside the lines is no longer acceptable in kindergarten art class. Since when is art no longer defined as the expression of human creative skill and imagination, typically in a visual form such as painting or sculpture?" Well, Webster, it looks like your definition needs some tweaking. In DISD, this is evidently no longer the case. I was simultaneously amused and saddened when I received a letter from my son's kindergarten art class requesting his presence once a week for the following two months to attend tutoring for art class to prepare him for the District's mandatory upcoming ACP test. This is no fault of our superbly talented art teacher, rather, the request came in response to a requirement initiated by our superintendent to test five and six-year-olds in visual art. My son was identified as in need of additional support in mastering the teaks in visual art. After chuckling at first at the shattered dreams of my pint-sized Picasso, my sense of humor quickly dissipated. I thought about the fact that I would now have to take him out of his soccer practice, which we ironically enrolled him in to fulfill his lack of physical exercise, since unstructured recess play has been systematically moved, removed from DISD schools in recent years to attend tutoring for art. As a devoted supporter of public schools, I found myself searching for a better solution to educating my children without disrupting the school year with multiple weeks of testing. A portion of our art teacher's compensation is based on her ability to ensure that 500-plus students that she will see over a limited allotment of time master a test of line shape, form, color, subject matter, and media. I'm disheartened that we are losing teachers in the District who have dedicated their lives to teaching solely because they had a passion to educate. We're losing them because of the decisions being made by the District without any consideration to the impact of individual schools, families, and children at the early elementary age. These ACP tests are inappropriate for elementary-level students. They are riddled with inaccurate answers, do not align with the curriculum being taught, grossly take away valuable instructional time, and the answer keys and scores to these tests are never returned to the teachers to evaluate them, the results, and determine areas that might need reviewing. In all, they are flawed.
Ryan Davenport, followed by Trevor Hoffberger.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you for allowing us this forum to address you with our concerns. Stated, my name's Ryan Davenport, and I'm a second-year teacher at North Dallas High School. I teach economics in yearbook, and I'm a proud, I'm proud to be a Bulldog working here in Dallas ISD. Uh, as of late, the focus has not necessarily been on newer teachers. Your time and attention has been turned to the distinguished teacher review process, and many of my colleagues have been just as interested. I'm here tonight to share my adamant support for TEI and why I'm committed to Dallas ISD as a result of its existence and implementation. You see, in 2013, I was clerking for the Senate Education Committee down in Austin. I had the pleasure of distributing Mr. Murath's testimony to our members at that time, but in that same timeframe, I was making a very important choice. I was deciding where in this country I wanted to teach. I could choose between Washington DC, Nashville, Tennessee, and Dallas ISD. Following the education reform movement, I was looking for, for innovation, outside-the-box thinking, and dedication to doing right by kids first, and that led me here to Dallas. I spent many nights researching and reading about the work that our superintendent had done in Colorado and was looking to replicate that here in Dallas. I heard chatter about a teacher pay system that would reward talent rather than tenure, and I saw incredible opportunity here, so I jumped at the opportunity to teach at North Dallas High School. I'm here to tell you all that the Teacher Excellence Initiative is a force for good in my school and many others in the city. While the path has been bumpy as we've implemented the Excellence Initiative, I believe that it will ultimately draw more and more talent to our District. I wanted to be a teacher all my life, since I was in the seventh grade, and I speak to you all tonight, living the dream. You see, since the seventh grade, I wanted to be a teacher, and I'm pretty far from home. All of my family lives in Houston, but I'm dedicated to the students here in Dallas. As a young man, I've thought long and hard about how I'm going to provide for my family in the future, and I know now, um, that I will be compensated at a level equal to my talent and effectiveness, and I know that I can stay in the classroom for many years to come. My pathway as a professional has been made much more clear. As far as DTR goes, I strive each and every day to give my students distinguished instruction, and I look forward to having even more distinguished colleagues by my side as TEI brings the best and brightest to Dallas classrooms. I encourage you all to double down on our District's innovation and to continue to support teacher excellence through TEI. After all, I and my colleagues here tonight have a duty to provide the very best product to my students, given the investment by their families and other residents and businesses here in the District. TEI and ACPs have helped me to understand how I can fulfill my duty. I want to take a moment, very quickly, uh, to recognize our superintendent... I want to take a moment very quickly to recognize our superintendent for his responsiveness and also the 10 of my colleagues at North Dallas for their recognition of DTR teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Your time has expired. Trevor Hoffberger followed by Marisha Allen.
I don't think Trevor's here, so I'm gonna go ahead and go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Marisha Allen, and I am a DISD educator. This is my second year with the district at Hector Garcia Middle School, and I have grown and progressed in many ways, and I'm grateful for all of the opportunities that have been presented to me since joining the district. Two years ago, I moved to Dallas from Memphis, Tennessee. There were major changes being made within the city and the city school districts, and I felt that it would be best to move here to Dallas. Since coming to the district, I've seen many changes, one of which is the teacher evaluation system. My freshman year as a teacher in Dallas ISD was the final year of the PDOTS system. This year, I was selected by my principal to become a TEI expert. I was familiar with the TEI model because we used a similar model in Memphis, Tennessee. I feel I've learned a great deal of information from the TEI sessions, and I love that teachers are being given a voice in the decisions that are being made with the new evaluation system. If actually implemented correctly, TEI helps teachers to discover strengths and weaknesses from student data and perceptions and also evaluations from administrators. This system has the possibility to offer teachers insight on their educational practices from both students and an administrative perspective. However, I believe that there is a gap between what is expected by the district and what's actually being administered and implemented on campus levels. Many teachers still have questions and concerns about things such as the DTR. The DTR portion of the TEI allows effective teachers the opportunities to display the ideal practices of our school district, but I feel that it would be more beneficial to create a fellowship or program that actually helps teachers to receive the development and knowledge base needed to become a distinguished teacher. I know that the district is considering offering a summer fellowship, which is awesome. However, a year-round program that allows teachers to learn and practice the keys to effective education would be a great option. It should be noted that TEI is still a work in progress, so it will take a great amount of patience and understanding in order to make the system work. I believe that if more lines of communication like a TEI expert trainings and also the letters from the superintendent were open, it would help to bridge the gap between the central office and district campuses. Teachers need support and development in order to provide the best possible education for our students. Thank you for listening this evening.
Christina Colbert followed by John Stanton.
Hi, good evening. I'm Christina Colbert. I have been with DISD for four years. I'm a middle-school special education teacher at Benjamin Franklin. Sorry. Can you hear me better? One thing about TEI that I appreciate is the fact that it has a strong push to put effective teachers in the classroom, and from my standpoint, as a special education teacher, that is a huge plus because it helps us bridge the gap that is just getting wider and wider with our special needs population and our ELL population. So the push for effective teachers within TEI to weed out those strong personnel, I think is an awesome plan. The one thing that I wish I'd addressed more was my department, which was special education, because paperwork for us is a huge part of our job. It affects our district funding to help those students with special needs, and it affects the students in the classroom because whatever's in that paperwork is what makes them successful in the classroom, and for that not to be part of our evaluation, I think is something that needs to be tweaked or looked at because of the fact that it does go back to so much of what we do, and that would be my one concern. Like I said, I do, I appreciate how much effective teaching has become a priority within DISD, and so I just want us to look at our sub-populations of teachers to make sure that it's as effective for them as well.
John Stanton followed by Michael Evans.
I represent a body, and if you can't tell, they all have blue shirts on today, of concerned parents, and you've heard some of the things on the ACPs, but we actually went a little bit further. We are concerned about the current evaluation, testing regime, as well as the observation criteria that's going into the teacher evaluation. I do have a handout for you there that we left you as well. Basically, we started as a group of Concerned Dealey Parents. Dealey is a Montessori vanguard program and an international program. We use the Montessori method in our elementary schools. One of our big concerns was that the ACPs and the observation methodology did not take into account the Montessori method at all. And one of the things that we did as parents as we started the conversation, and what we found from other concerned parents at other magnet schools, is that other innovative programs had not been considered in the observation and the testing programs on how we test both our students as well as how we actually evaluate our teachers. While we do acknowledge that the district has a very difficult task, it is very difficult to figure out the best method to measure student performance as well as teachers, especially in DISD who represent an extremely diverse population, and what we are basically asking is more time. We would like to actually participate. Obviously, three minutes isn't enough to talk all this, but basically, we want to help the district and the board come up with better solutions that can help our exemplary programs and our Montessori programs specifically. What you see here is people that were willing to volunteer their time, and one of the things that we've actually brought to the table is we're willing to help get the TEI and the evaluation criteria fine-tuned for our magnet and Montessori programs. So what we're doing here is we're here to offer our assistance to make this better to, as we've heard a couple different speakers, work with our administrators to say, "How do we use tools that are out there? Other people have Montessori programs, other people have magnet programs, so how do we get these evaluation criterias fine-tuned so our excellent teachers and our students, as you see in the audience, are tested appropriately?" One thing, if you looked at your handout, I actually included one, from the state of South Carolina. It's actually an addendum to their student or their teacher evaluation program, three-page description on how you evaluate a teacher in a Montessori classroom differently from a regular classroom. This is the kind of stuff that we're willing to come to the table, help the district and the board, fine-tune the evaluation program so our teachers are evaluated appropriately. So what I'm calling for is an agenda item. It's not today, obviously, there's a big agenda. We want to come together and help the district, and we're asking for a specific agenda item for our special program to help in January or February.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. Your time has expired. Michael Evans followed by Elizabeth Akins.
Hi, I'm Michael Evans, 519 South Winnetka Avenue. I'm basically here just to say that I'm a product of DISD. I went to BH Macon Elementary, I went to Greiner, I went to Skyline, Class 95, and I went up to Southwest Texas after that. I just want to say that I'm appalled by this test. It is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen, ever heard of, ever watched happen. It is, it's unreal. You guys are way smarter than me, are way smarter than me. I'm sure you have way more accolades and education than I ever could have thought of, and just to look at this test, it's ridiculous. You guys should be ashamed. All, every single one of you should be ashamed. You know, when Mike Miles was hired, the first thing I did, YouTube, Google search. I mean, come on, people, you hired this gentleman? I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not the smartest guy in the room, but I looked at all that stuff, saw everything he did, and I was like, oh no, what's happening? And it's happened. It's here, it's here now. I mean, this is where we are, YouTube from four years ago? I don't know how long it's been? I mean, that's where we are now. And I spoke to Mr. Cohen before at another meeting we had with parents, and I asked him the same thing, "Did you hire Mike Miles?" He said, "You guys did." Well, my understanding is when Mike Miles left Colorado Springs, everything stayed the same. All these tests that we hate right now are still there. So it's you guys, it's not Mike Miles, it's all of you guys. You're the ones that are gonna get rid of this test. My daughter has spent the last two weeks at school at Rosemont Elementary as a first grader, wasting away, two weeks, two weeks. I mean, the artwork she's bringing home, like someone said over there before, a piece of paper that has a yellow triangle that says "yellow." That's not art. That's not what you do in art class. Art class, you go there and you get paint all over you, and you ruin a pair of jeans, and, you know, you scribble on the tables and you color outside the lines, and that's not what you're giving our students. And I mean, I've heard the tests for the PE where they're just rolling around and hopping like frogs and doing all this kind of weird stuff. That's not, that's not PE. PE is running and skinning your knees and playing soccer and, you know, and playing tag and knowing what it feels like to fall off the monkey bars, you know? That's PE, and then being tired and going back in and having some juice and then learning math. Anyway, I got way off topic, but anyway, I just, it's just wrong. It's just wrong. It's really wrong. I've got friends, when I put my kids in public school, you know, they're like, "How dare you do that? That's crazy." You know, they move off to the suburbs when they have kids. DISD has great magnet schools, but you've got teachers leaving left and right. You have jobs at magnet schools, you have jobs at magnet schools that teachers should be there their entire career because they look at themselves as the luckiest person alive to have that job, and there are vacancies. I mean-
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Elizabeth Akins followed by Tremondra Neek Hawkins.
I'm Elizabeth Akins. I am head of the History Department at WE Greiner Middle School. I have taught there for the past 10 years, and I'm here before you tonight to tell you that last week, one of my students had a breakdown. Class just started, and I asked them to take out their ACP reviews. When this boy, we will call him Eddie, just started sobbing, literally in the middle of my class, just completely fell apart. I took him out to the hall, it took several minutes before he was able to calm down enough to tell me what the matter was. He was so upset, I was sure he was going to tell me somebody had died, but no, he was just that stressed out over ACPs. I'm not the only teacher at Greiner who has experienced something like this. Another of my colleagues told me that one of her sixth graders spent the weekend in the hospital due to an anxiety attack, again, thanks to ACPs. This caused several of us to sit down and reflect upon the possible cause for these two events. What is really different this year? Our expectations are the same. We've been doing this for years. The kids have been doing this for years. The only thing that is actually different this year is the teachers' own stress levels, and that is solely on account of TEI. Our livelihood now rests on a child's decision to study at home. We cannot count on that. As a result, we push them harder in class, struggling to make the time we have with them count for as much as possible. Our stress stresses them, and they collapse beneath the weight. The two incidents I described to you are not isolated. Anyone who reads the blog will notice that this is a growing trend across the district. Why? Because this is what happens when you chain our salaries to student performance. The kids do not benefit, they suffer. This is not what anyone intended. For the sake of the kids and no one else, TEI must go. Not only has TEI already proven detrimental for our students, it is a farce. It offers district officials the opportunity to brag that we are among the highest-paid teachers in the nation, when in reality, those lofty heights are made practically unobtainable by miles of red tape. TEI forces administrators to be dishonest at the start of the year, giving good teachers poor rankings so they can show growth by the end of the year. This practice places strain on teacher-administrator relationships and destroys morale from the very start of the year. TEI threatens to gut good schools by removing highly-ranked teachers and placing them in the worst schools in the district. This criteria for TEI seeks to restrict good practices into easily-checked little boxes. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, if you put a butterfly in a box, it will die, and the high turnover rate makes it clear that the same thing happens to teachers. I am not here just to complain. I am here to posit a solution, and I hope you will hear me. Do away with TEI. Our administrators know us, trust them to supervise us according to our own skills and our campus's own needs. Give us back our step increases and restore the missing steps to those of us who are owed. Match our 403B contributions according to our attendance records.
Thank you, Ms. Akins. Tremondra Neek Hawkins.
Good evening. My name is Tremondra Neek Hawkins, and I'm a junior at Irma Rangel Young Women's Leadership School in Division 4. Last month, my classmate Laura Andre spoke about changes in the district's policies, and today I am here to discuss how I've personally been affected by said reforms. Being a magnet school student, my future is very important to me, and everyone around me holds the same belief. We have been encouraged to believe in ourselves, and we understand that hard work and resilience pave the way toward success. We have been taught that one can only fall short of excellence by not trying. The mission of Irma Rangel is not only to see students excel academically, but to shape girls into young women of excellence, to be leaders and to be innovators, to be the change we wish to see in our community and the world. But we can't achieve this without proper instruction. We can't achieve this if the people who are supposed to help us grow are too busy following district-wide mandates to ensure their ongoing employment. Dallas ISD has a mission to educate students for success, but how am I to achieve this when I'm negatively affected by the burdens of my educators? You say that you care about education, yet you can't even provide us with the essentials. I should not have to supply my teachers with half the things I do. The district hired them, and the district should provide them with what they need to be effective teachers. Valuable class time is lost at the hands of simple tasks such as DOLs, but I don't understand how are they any more effective than the previous methods? I dread walking through the school's doors because no longer does the curriculum consist of creative lesson plans, it's handout after handout. With all of the black and white that's thrown at us, I'm surprised those aren't the only two colors we know. The new uniform approach makes me feel as if I'm just a number, like I'm just a piece of data helping boost the district's rating. Why am I a junior in high school raising my thumb and using flashcards as a representation of my understanding as if I'm an elementary school? I personally find it beyond insulting, and I should not be held subject to mediocrity. When I applied for Irma, I knew my life was heading towards something much greater than my surroundings. My mom didn't choose the magnet program for no reason, and certainly, that reason was not to be taught at the same level as those who wouldn't care if the school system collapsed tomorrow. I can assure you that we, the students, and our parents did not sign up to sacrifice our time and money driving from all over the Metroplex to attend a mediocre school. I beg you to step back and truly evaluate what these new reforms are doing to us, your exemplary students. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Haley Larkins. I'm a junior who also attends Irma Rangel Young Women's Leadership School Magnet in Division 4. At the last board meeting, my friend and colleague Laura Andre spoke about the changing district policies in regard to strict and almost unachievable demands put forth by the superintendent. Now, I stand before you to talk about how I personally have been affected by these policies and how my education has suffered in direct correlation to the said changes. I chose to attend Irma Rangel because it would allow me to excel academically in the ways I felt necessary to prepare me for future education. Within the school, we are encouraged to be leaders, to believe not only in ourselves but in others, and that failure only comes when effort is not given. When past sisters have graduated from Irma Rangel, they possess the knowledge and mental strength which each individual must incorporate into their daily lives in order to be successful. Our school would not have the same academic environment if it were not for the wise, hard-working, and passionate teachers we are provided. The district policies currently in place, such as DOLs and exit tickets, which cover a majority of the class instructional time, have destroyed the ability for students to learn and magnify their creative abilities in their courses. At magnet schools such as mine, every teacher is forced to meet the same criteria for each prep. Some have as many as four and all have at least two. Rather than providing lesson plans that are impactful and knowledge-filled, teachers must provide lesson plans integrated with numerous data-driven pre- and post-tests and lengthy handouts to qualify as accurate instructions by DISD. Enforcing tactics such as thumbs up and thumbs down and the usage of whiteboards to determine how much we've learned in the high school setting does not only waste valuable and s- how much we've learned in the high school setting does not only waste valuable instructional time but belittles high school students' academic capability. Thanks to these policies, my classroom has become dual and repetitive. My peers and I are not only uninterested but unprepared for college-based tests such as the SAT or AP exams due to the excessive worrying over ACP scores opposed to the comprehensions of material by students. Our teachers are caught between being the mentors and instructors that we desperately need and being the repetitive cookie cutter teachers that the district has caused them to become. It is extremely disheartening to be placed in a classroom where teachers are more worried about the next deadline instead of the success of their students. We are incredibly discouraged to know next semester, many of the experienced teachers that we have grown to love will be leaving due to the amount of stress caused by these recent restrictive policies.
Lori DePree, followed by Audrey Pinkerton.
My name is Lori DePree. I live in District Seven and my address is 1823 Mary Dell Drive. I am here regarding concerns about the methodology and practice of Mike Miles. I'm a kindergartner in the dual-language program at Rosemont Elementary. I'm a PTA committee member and a DI coach. In addition to being a parent, I'm in charge of learning and career development, including performance evaluations for a mid-sized IT consulting company, often recognized as one of the best places to work in Dallas. I help other organizations develop strategies for educating and growing the careers of their employees. I am very familiar with how difficult it is to measure the impact of learning, but standardized testing is not appropriate tool to measure development of our children or the performance of our teachers. The teachers are able to see the test before administered, which incentivizes them to teach to achieve high scores on the test. What is the goal of the test? The way the process is designed does not benefit the child or the teacher. Another flaw that the kindergarten teachers are not able to administer the test to their own students. They must wait for test results to evaluate how their kids performed. This is too little, too late. It matters much more to see the kids actually answer the question and evaluate how they've developed, and also see if they're getting tripped up by how the question is being asked. My child is extremely stressed in the new situations, and I saw him experience testing anxiety at the age of six, waking up with night terrors the night before his test. This is far too early. I absolutely supported Mike Miles coming into our district. I did. And I hoped that he could make positive improvements to our system. But now, I don't believe his methods are appropriate or will work in the long term. My son has an unbelievable teacher that is focused on developing him just, beyond just academics. I do not want to drive away these teachers like her because we are so focused on passing a test and not how each child is developing and maturing along a spectrum. This cannot be measured by a pass-fail system. What is the purpose? If it's more than simply measuring achievement of our children, then we are using a measurement tool in a way it's not intended. I believe Mr. Miles's methods are not appropriately aligned with the purpose it's trying to serve.
Audrey Pinkerton, followed by Hope Lee.
I'm Audrey Pinkerton. I live in District Seven. I'm here tonight as a taxpayer and a parent with concerns about the current administration. For the last 25 years, I've led change in large organizations. I've also studied change management at the graduate level, and I can tell you from both experience and in theory that what the superintendent is doing is not good change management practice. Harvard professor Michael Beal has studied organization transformation for 40 years, and his book, High Commitment, High Performance, explains his finding that the highest-performing organization with the best outcomes have highly committed employees. Since it's the teacher who most influences the student on a daily basis, we must ask whether the superintendent's methods have increased or decreased teacher commitment. First, let's look at data. A key element of high-performance organizations is employment stability, yet in DISD, teacher turnover has nearly doubled in the last three years. Teachers are leaving in droves at an average rate of 11 per day. High-performance companies invest in employees and try to keep them for life, yet tonight, the administration is requesting more than $800,000 be shifted away from instruction, in other words, teachers, to general administration. And Miles has stated publicly that after three to five years, teachers should look at moving on. He's getting his wish. Currently, 33% of teachers have one year or less in the district. Teachers with proven track records at the district's best schools feel beaten down, demoralized, and frustrated by Miles's new mandates. Great teachers have been giving zeros on performance reviews when a verb in a DOL is not deemed rigorous enough. An evaluator gave a bad rating to a Spanish teacher who was teaching vocabulary to first-year students on the grounds that it wasn't critical thinking. Teachers must rigidly adhere to the curriculum. They can't reteach a foundational concept that the students might have missed the year before. If caught out of compliance, they are reprimanded and they are evaluated frequently to ensure that they are caught. Beer's research finds that tightly coupling pay to individual results, which is the essence of the TEI, leads to self-serving behavior, and Nvidia's comparisons that cause people to feel they are not being recognized and are being unfairly treated. Trustees, I hope you now understand why Miles's approach will not work. This is not a time for wait-and-see, it's a time for action. Start by saying no to Miles's request to shift money from teachers to administration. Then recognize that your primary role is to put a leader with the right values in the superintendent position and to hold him or her accountable. Find that person and get the district back on track.
Hope Lee, followed by Melinda McGee.
Good evening. My name is Hope Lee. I'm starting my 15th year with the district, and I'm here this evening to speak on year-end reflections. During the month of November, the district participated in many anti-bullying activities, and I had the opportunity to share 12 mini lessons with my students. In the midst of sharing those, my world came tumbling down upon me. My sister, who was 53, who had just been announced cancer-free but was still using her trachea, had texted me at 3:40 in the morning stating that she needed to go to the hospital. When I saw the text, I responded to her because we communicated via text, and she said she'd given herself two treatments and done a suction on her trache, and she was gonna be okay. My first mind was to stay at home from eight to four, from eight o'clock until 12 o'clock to make sure she was okay. But the things that flooded through my mind was, for one, that at the beginning of the year, we were told that if you miss too many days by the end of the year, you would be terminated by December. I was understanding that I wouldn't have an opportunity for a raise if I missed too many days in a particular year for whatever reason. When I began to apply for FMLA to help my sister care for my 77-year-old mother, I was first told that DISD expects teachers to attend daily with no regard of taking care of my mother. Then I was told that, oh, that was a mistake, we understand, we have to follow federal policies. And also, I understood that there was a biometric team that was watching if people were coming in or out late, to work, coming to work late, but there was never any accolades for people who stayed two or three hours afterwards. So on the day, I decided not to take off four hours, although I had many hours that I could have taken days, I went to work. And at 10:20 that morning, I got a call that my 53-year-old sister collapsed. My 77-year-old mother was with her, had to render CPR, had to call 911 for assistance. My sister was taken to the hospital. Three days later, we had to turn off the machines that had kept her alive for three days. Now, many of you may say, why would a 14-year veteran of DISD be afraid to take off four hours? I feel like I'm working under a systematic bullying system. And my question to you all is, as I teach the anti-bullying lessons to my students, I always tell them-
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Your time has expired.
Call someone. I want you to reflect on, over the summer, over the winter break-
Good evening. Good evening, President Solis, members of the board, and Superintendent Mike Miles. My name is Melinda McGee. I am a UNISERV Director for the Texas State Teachers Association, and I am assigned to NEA Dallas. Our office is located at 6500 Greenville Avenue, Suite 520, in Dallas, Texas. I am here speaking this evening about the climate of this district. It is sad to think about the thousands of teachers that have left this district because they don't feel valued, or they have just had enough of the constant bullying at the hands of this top administration, including the superintendent. Enough is enough. Tonight, TSTA joins NEA Dallas in their call for action. Teachers no longer feel valued by this district and are making decisions to leave for other districts where they can do their jobs without the nightmare of constant classroom interruptions and changes. How sad for our children, who are even feeling the pressures their teachers are under from the lack of support they are given and are overwhelmed from the constant district testing schedule that keep them from the creative, innovative, learning environment that they so desire and deserve. DISD, you need to get it together. And we feel that this will not happen until this superintendent is gone. This board needs to cut this loss on behalf of our students and select a superintendent whose agenda is more than a dictatorial one. DISD needs a superintendent who will lead while respecting professional educators and allowing them to do their jobs. Teaching, if you do not know, is an active profession. However, in DISD, teachers feel that they are not being encouraged to be active in their practice of their profession. They feel, they feel viewed as widgets that can be replaced at the whim and will of their administration. Yet we hear reports about the climate is positive, which brings into question, where? We couldn't be talking about DISD. You people sitting up there claim to know what is right for this district. All of these people that are out here speaking today, I think the jury is out on that. They haven't came back with a decision. We need to make some decisions over this break to make sure that this district is up and running at the beginning of the new year in 2015 that's gonna allow our teachers to teach our children and stop testing them today.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Nethal Jackson, followed by Mary Smith.
Nethal B. Jackson lived at 2851 Toluca, Dallas, Texas, 75224, for 45 years. To the Board of Education, General Superintendent Miles, power concede nothing without a demand. It never have, Joyce, and it never will. I want to speak about the budget as well as the misuse of the taxpayer money. This board was elected to carry out the duties and your responsibility as trustee, but you have given this power to the power to be. This board was elected to set a budget. You have not given the citizen the opportunity for input in many years. This board was elected to hire a general superintendent. You've given us no input. You came to the community without our input and selected a general superintendent. This board was elected to set policy. You failed your own policy. Member of the board, just a few days ago, I went to try to cash a check. The check, Mr. President, came back in sufficient form. I asked, "How could that happen, Joyce, living in District Six?" Well, I went back home and I started to write. In house legal term, we spent some $25 million. 1.5 million for legal service, 6.5 million spent per year for legal service, four times the budget for social service, two times the budget for community service, a third of the budget for the health service, a third of the budget for police and security service, a third of the budget for instruction leadership, a quarter of the budget for student transportation, overpaid for testing, overpaid for staff administrator, whole rural charter school, charter school initiative, teacher excellence initiative, and investigation of a trustee Bernadette Nuttall, ExxonMobil building. Well, member of the Board of Education, many of those charter schools have closed their doors, and they are coming to the district, and they're gonna be asking us to renovate some school as well as pass a new bond package.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Your time has expired. Mary Smith, followed by Robert Chacarelli.
Good evening, President Solis, members of the board, and Superintendent Miles. My name is Mary Smith, and I'm the Executive Vice President of NEA Dallas. I live at 109 Larchbrook Drive, DeSoto, Texas, 75115. Tonight, I would like to address Consent Agenda Item Number 33, the 2015-2016 School Calendar, in particular, looking at the month of November and the Thanksgiving holiday break. This is my 19th year working in the DISD as a teacher and now a librarian, and when I began my career, I always had the full week of Thanksgiving off since I completed all of my staff development in the summer. But since the fall of 2011, we now have to work two days, Monday and Tuesday, during the week of Thanksgiving. This may not seem like a big deal to you, but to those such as myself, a DISD employee that does not live in Dallas, I tell you that it is a big deal. The majority of the surrounding school districts, such as Irving, Grand Prairie, Garland, Mesquite, Fort Worth, Lancaster, and DeSoto, give all their employees and students the whole week of Thanksgiving off. So, those DISD employees that live in the surrounding cities and have children have to make arrangements for their children since their kids are out of school and they have to go to work. This causes a financial hardship that could be avoided if we, as a district, followed the lead of the other districts and had the whole week off. Many of our members want to be off the whole week and gave their input on the calendar survey to include the whole week, but the message was not heard. We are asking that you reconsider us not working those two days, and let's allow all the employees and students to be off the entire week of Thanksgiving. I would also like to add that we are a huge district, and there's no reason that we should not be being paid biweekly instead of monthly. Many of the other large districts, Houston, Austin, San Antonio, to name a few, are now being paid every other week, and I'm not sure why we cannot follow their example. So as you plan for the budget for next year, I would like for you to consider paying all of the employees here in DISD biweekly as well. If they can do it, we can do it. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Robert Chacarelli, followed by William Hopkins.
Good evening, everybody. As you can see, how effective speaking in front of the school board can change things. school board can change things. I'm very surprised about Ms. Nuttall and Mr. Miles, why there isn't any support with Ms. Nuttall at this time, how effective it can be. And I was at the Martin Luther King Meeting, and I was led out by the police, because I told everybody there, it's going to die down last month, and it is, it has died down. And I'm very, very disappointed in the two lady school board members, that your constituents are not here to support Ms. Nuttall. I'm afraid it's going to die down again, and it has, and Mike Miles is going to win out again. What just happened, you're going to stop doing it, and he's going to win again. You've got to do this every month, every month, okay? Excuse me. What I'm trying to say to you is, it has to be done, because Mike Miles knows how to manipulate the media, and he gets his way. You've got to use 50, 40 people, Ms. Nuttall, to get what you want, okay? But you have to do it. I'm correct again, you tried it last year, and it died out, trying to fire him, and it's continuing on. You've got to keep consistent with it, all right? It's got to be done, because there's nobody here to support you. And like, everybody just stopped. Next thing is, the TEI. I'm asking, I have an open mind, I'm Mike Miles' most vocal critic. I have an open mind, since it's been done in Colorado eight years now. What, how is it doing in Colorado? So, I'm asking for three independent studies to find out how it's doing, and report back here. One independent study by the Dallas Morning News, two, people that are for Mike Miles, like Dr. Forles, Ms. Bingham, and Mike Morath, and people that are TEI, they're against, like Ms. Nuttall, Joyce Forman, Bill Benson, the AFT. The information's already out there. You're wasting so much time, what's going on in DISD. Go find out what's going out there, to see if it's working. It's about the teachers, about the parents, how they feel. Report back here. You'll find out what's going on, so you don't have to worry about it. If it works, it works. The information's already out there. Now, also, Woodrow Wilson High School, this has to do with the TEI. Forty-one percent of the white are college-ready, nine percent of Hispanic are college-ready, four percent of the blacks are college-ready. According to Mike Miles, it was in the Dallas Observer by Mr. Schultz, according to Mike Miles, the blacks and Hispanics are getting the worst teachers, and the whites are getting the best teachers. That's the only way I can figure out why the disparity of the results. Mr. Solis, I would hope that you'd let Mike Miles explain those tremendous results, disparity, and that's the only way I can figure out how to say it. I wish he would speak out about it, and give his report. Also, student discipline, forty percent of the teachers have reported it still-
Thank you, Mr. Cecarelli, your time has expired. William Hopkins followed by Omar Jimenez.
Hey, hey, my name is William Hopkins. Mr. Solis, I'm here to talk about Gabriel Bates. This is a handout, I know they can't give it to you right now, but this is a handout of the Dallas Morning News about the Bates family and the lead in West Dallas. It said, to start out, it says Paula Bates is the daughter of Clarice Bates. Her lead level was 246. Okay? Now, the lead level that's harmful in West Dallas, as far as the lead and the EPA, is 10. So, Gabriel Bates' mother lead level was 246. So, it's people in West Dallas, Mr. Solis, that's lead level is 300. The media won't say nothing about it, they're trying to keep it a secret. But Gabriel Bates, he was a, he spent 10 years in prison for raping a three-year-old in West Dallas, Mr. Solis. It was all over the media and everything. So, the police went to Amelia Hard, and got Gabriel out of elementary, out of special ed. He was in special ed at Amelia Hard. And they told him, if you tell us you raped this three-year-old, we're going to take you to McDonald's, and we're going to take you home to see your mama, if you say you raped this three-year-old. So, he must have said it, I don't know if he said it or not, but he spent 10 years in prison. So, the police, when I went to the court, Henry Way Court, when Gabriel had his trial, so the police said that it was a seven and an eight-year-old is the one that told him that, you know, that the seven and the eight-year-old and Gabriel raped the three-year-old. So, I said, okay then. So, they get the three, the seven and the eight-year-old, and put them on a suit, and bring them in the court, so they can, so the seven and the eight-year-old could tell the story about Gabriel and them raping the three-year-old. So, they bring them in the court, and put them on the stand. So, when they put them on the stand, I went to the judge, and I told the judge, what the police said that this seven and the eight-year-old told him is not true, Mr. Solis. He said, well, why you say that, William? I said, this seven and the eight-year-old can't talk at all. They're in Amelia Hard, and them children can't even talk. So, if they can't talk, they couldn't have told him that they raped this three-year-old. So, they put them on the stand, and the little kids run around and biting on the, this thing here. They didn't know what this was, I don't know if they thought it was food or what, but they was biting on this thing, and so they ran and got them, and took them back. So, the media closed the cameras down. Once they seen they couldn't talk, they didn't want nobody to know. Mr. Solis, Gabriel spent 10 years in prison, and got him out of special ed, a white police officer, got him out of special ed. Gabriel spent 10 years in prison, I'm trying to get some help for Gabriel. He back in jail again, I don't know what for. And he don't even know what's, he don't know what's, he's never been to the fire, to the zoo. He's never been nowhere. I know it's funny, it's funny, but he in prison right now.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Your time has expired.
Somebody can help me. Well, Mr. Solis-
Omar Jimenez followed by Sheila Walker.
Okay, well, I thought I was afraid I wasn't going to speak, but I hope we have the same energy to what I'm about to speak about. Omar Jimenez, 1639 Cedar Bluff Lane, Dallas, 75253, in District 4. As a citizen, and as somebody who was out of high school for the last four years, and remembering the ACPs back in high school and middle school, they never even had the answer choices right, and they've always had the questions mixed up, or misspellings and everything. So, even back when I was in school, I never even understood why an English test was 100 questions. I never understood that. But, testing is not beneficial, even as the district provides testing, as I never understood at the first place. But now, hearing that kindergarten, PE, art, and all these concerns, even tonight, even in the press, it's not beneficial, because how's that going to help the students? How's that going to help everybody besides the TEI, which I'm not that familiar with it, so I won't say too much about it. But, there was a 60-minute interview about a student, and he was in homeschool, and he was in the eighth grade, but he was already taking AP classes, and he did fairly, fairly good, very good. And he didn't need testing at all. He doesn't need all that testing. And his field trips consisted of going around the world. And I don't even know if they still have field trips anymore, but we've had field trips to the museums, the fire station, the post office, all that since kindergarten. And now, I don't even think they even have time for recess, and all this testing stresses these out. We could have solved the obesity problem right now if these kids went out for recess. So, I feel that ACP should be up to the teachers. The teacher should be writing the test, and I think they will learn more, much more better if the teachers let them. And unfortunately, you know, my family did go to Dallas ISD schools, my nieces, my brothers and sisters, they went to Sigaville, they went to middle school and high school, and they've seen the mess that's happening in the district. And my brother just came out of the Marines, and he came back to live here, but he went to Cleveland for a while, once it got settled. Unfortunately, they left, and they saw the writing that's going on in this district. I mean, and they're doing so much better in Mansfield, and HEB, and Arlington where they are, because you don't see none of this at all. Teachers teach, the school board does their good job, and they care about students. And I'm also wondering how much is this in the budget, how much ACP is costing the taxpayers? I want to know that question, how much this is costing the taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Our last speaker is Sheila, Sheila Walker.
Good evening, school board members and Mr. Miles. My name is Sheila Walker, and I reside at 10707 Big Thicket Drive in Dallas, Texas, 75217. And I'm also a proud member of NEA Dallas. I'm here today with the concerns of the mandated testing in Dallas ISD. Our students have been taking some type of test since the beginning of school. Kindergartens have tested four times since December the 1st. Parents often ask, why so many tests? And there's no explanation that we can give them. We had to send flyers home with our students about tests. One says, third-grade students enrolled in or would be assessed during this assessment period. The results were the performance ACP, it would be five percent of their grades. The kindergarten says, this test, the kindergarten says, students enrolled in or would be assessed during this assessment period, this will not affect their grades. Why are they being tested in kindergarten? Here are some teacher concerns. Teachers had some reflection questions that they were asked. Why has this happened to ensure the 0% student failure rate? This is a response from a teacher. To have a 0% failure rate, we need to speak up about the curriculum pacing and restrictions on instruction. The pressure from the district to maintain traditional practices and accelerated pacing has prevented us from effectively preparing our students. The first round of ACP takes three weeks of instructional time to test our students before we've even had time to teach them, by rushing them through materials that they haven't even had connections to apply their knowledge during the testing. When our students fail, what did we fail to do? We failed to stand up for our students and demand that we stop inhibiting learning by overtesting. Our classroom list, in our school, I work at Harry Stone, so I'm your sister's school. At our school, we have a tree, at this time, the holiday tree, and asks our PTA parents, all I want for Christmas in my classroom, one teacher put, parents to contact the school board, congressmen, government trustees to protest testing. This is what teachers are up against. And this week has been a, this month has been a disaster. Parents cannot come and have dinner with, lunch with students, because we have to close down the building, because we're giving ACP testing. And last but not least, Life Touch gives us a complimentary package every year, and this is one of the pictures that they gave us, shh, I'm testing. Last but not least, this is what the job title should say when you apply for Dallas ISD. If you want to teach for two months and test for seven months, apply for this job. Thank you.
This concludes our speakers.
We're now on to the Superintendent of Schools' report. Mr. Miles, please begin your report.
Thank you, President Solis and board members. Thank you, members of the audience, for your words tonight and your input. Really appreciate-
I'm going to please ask, we allow the Superintendent the opportunity to deliver his report. Thank you all very much.
I appreciate the professional way. Many of the speakers were trying to provide input on a very serious topic, and one that is complicated, and one that will take us some time to get right. We have lots of TEI expert groups, we have focus groups. We also need to hear from parents, so it was good to hear from several of you about some of your concerns. Not coincidentally, we are actually working on many of those concerns. There will be a task force that's already in the works for January. It will include parents, and now that we have Dealey parents also, we'll include Dealey parents. And we think we can start, as TEI has always been, with the continuous improvement model. TEI, from the very start, designed over three years, lots of input from stakeholders, but mostly teachers and administrators. It was always known from the very start that we would have a continuous improvement model, and that means changes. There have been changes already, and there's going to be continued changes, there'll be more changes. One of the things to address some of the concerns of the parents, some of the things that could result from that task force, for example, and I really appreciate the gentleman who said, how can we help? Can we change the evaluation so that it's more geared to Montessori for those teachers? And can we change the test so that it's more geared to magnet? Certainly we can. There are three charges for this task force already. One is to consider how we administer the tests, and maybe we need to change the way we administer. Two is whether or not we get rid of some of the tests, for example, perhaps get rid of the K1 and 2 tests. Or, you know, and there's, a third option would be to allow parents just to opt out, or, I mean, parents always have that right, but opt out with no penalty to the teacher. So, and there's other ideas, I'm sure that people have. And so, that approach, the coming and talking and asking for changes, that makes a lot of sense, and the TEI will continue to be a continuous improvement model. So, let me thank you, those folks who have been brave enough to come and speak, and also to the teachers who also spoke on behalf of TEI. I know it takes a lot of courage to stand in front of an audience of any sort, and so, thanks for that. Let me give you just a little bit of the rationale and the sense-making behind the ACPs for specials. And we'll get to detail in a moment. By the way, we have about 450 teachers, distinguished teachers, or eligible for distinguished review who are fine arts teachers. There is a difference if you talk to teachers, and I know you have, and so, every, you know, this is a big district, we have 10,000 teachers, and every community is a little bit different. So, again, those of you who spoke to the breadth of the district and the complexities, thank you for recognizing that. And when we talk to teachers, and just from my own experience, we know that there are differences in teachers. Most of our teachers are great teachers, are effective teachers, but there's a difference, even among our teachers. And there's a difference between a teacher who can make any subject fun. There are math teachers who make math fun. There are science teachers who make science fun, and still have to teach rigorous content. There are some teachers who can make statistics fun. And then there are art teachers who can make art fun, music teachers who can make music fun. I think about my son Anthony, for example. Now, we had the privilege of making sure that he had started music lessons early, same with my older two, and we chose a teacher, because they're not all the same. Some music teachers are not as strong with kids, and cannot make music fun. Another teacher could. We hired that teacher. And it was a rigorous program. Anthony learned the scales, went to his first recital when he was 10. And he didn't want to go to the recital exactly, I mean, he knew that his teacher wanted him to, and his parents wanted him to, so he went. And he got the ribbon and all that, so it turned out to be an okay experience. But it was rigorous. I'm happy that the teachers didn't say, well, you know, just have fun, Anthony, just have fun, that's what music about. You'll learn the piano, you'll learn music. And then those of us who've been around in education, and have talked to enough art teachers, and been in enough art classes, have lots of experiences like the one I'll relate, just to give you some feedback, or some sense-making around the feedback that I received today. Take two art teachers that I've seen, not in this district, in the past, in October. October's Halloween, so a lot of teachers have some activity related to Halloween, which is fine. The method is up to the teacher. And just like any other state in Colorado, they have art standards, just like they do in Texas. There are actually standards for art that we're required to teach. And three such standards are value, and those of you who teach art know that that's shades of the same color, texture, and symmetry. Those aren't real tough, but those are third-grade- Those aren't real tough, but those are third-grade art standards. So, one teacher, again, not in Texas, and this is in the past, would do that pipe, the paper plate, you cut out the eyes at Halloween, and you put the rubber band on, and kids liked that, they have fun with that, and at one class would say, "Okay, kids, Halloween's coming up, we want you to make a mask. Have fun, be creative." And so you would see kids with crayons and coloring, and the kid would have a certain amount of fun. And then there's another art teacher who said, "Kids, third graders, look, we're gonna, we're gonna have fun. Halloween's coming up, we're gonna, we're gonna make masks. Yay! But kids, you know that we've learned two lines of symmetry, and so what I want you to do is make a mask, but I want it to be symmetrical, either top half and bottom half, right side, left half, and some of you are gonna be so creative, you're gonna do it diagonally. And second thing, we've learned this semester, we've talked about value, you've painted value, you've had fun with it, you got watercolors on your, you know, on your clothes, but you use value. So I want you to make this same plate, paper plate, but I want you to use value. And here's several examples. And finally, the third thing we learned was texture. And so, I'm gonna, I have some sandpaper here, I have some, a little felt over here, and velvet pieces over here, and I want you to make a mask, but I want you to use at least three different textures. Now, you're only gonna have two class periods to do it, but you're gonna have fun, and they have at it. And the kids have fun, and they, and they make this mask, Halloween mask, the same exact exercise, and the kids have fun with that. Which art teacher is a stronger art teacher? So, we know that, that art should be fun, music should be fun, and some of our kids aren't privileged, many of our kids. The only time they'll get a chance to play an instrument is probably in music class. And perhaps the only time they'll learn scales, or what's the, the different notes, and what a quarter note is and a half note, maybe that's the only chance they'll get. And who knows which budding musician is there? And maybe the, many other privileged kids get to have dance lessons paid for, and they have soccer lessons paid for. And maybe the only time a kid learns how to dribble a ball well is in PE class. So, it's not, we're not trying to take fun out, and I think maybe there's a better way, and maybe if you help, there is a better way. And keep in mind, the better way for all of our kids, with differentiation, and if we can do that in differentiated ways, so Rosemont kids get what Rosemont parents want for their art, music, PE classes, that's great. And Dealey parents, Griner parents, and any other group parents, if we can do it in a way that makes sense. But let's also ask teachers too, okay? Let's ask our teachers across the district. Let's ask art teachers. Let's ask music teachers, both at the elementary level and middle school, and it doesn't have to be one-size-fits-all. Remember, TEI is a continuous improvement model, we can do that. So again, TEI was on our agenda to speak to, so I want to again, thank you. You sat long and, and you were very courteous, I appreciate that. Let me talk a couple other agenda items, including DTR. Distinguished teachers, we passed a big milestone this last week, and you do have a lot of teachers excited, not just the ones here. You know, I go across, around the district, I go to schools all the time, I go to parent meetings all the time, PTAs, I go to, I go to other, you know, and in fact, the last one I went to was at Withers, that was a celebration, and then Griner was another one that was, I did last week. But there are many other meetings, and I talk to all kinds of teachers. We are trying to get it right, and it's not always gonna be smooth sailing, that's true. But the distinguished teacher, 1,480 teachers were tapped by their principals to say, "Hey, I think you're some of our most effective." Not just effective, some of our most effective distinguished. And that was a big pat on the back for a lot of teachers. These teachers are gonna help us define what effective teaching looks like. It's, it's, we recognize that right now, we're not really clear on what that looks like, right? We've had PDS, and now we're trying to find, define what distinguished looking, what distinguished teaching looks like. And I tell you, when we get those applications in, you're gonna see lots of great teachers teaching well, and who have done many other things, leadership. I know that we have teachers who are leading the church choir, who are working with kids on the weekends at the YMCA, who have written lesson plans for others, which by the way is not a district requirement, who have mentored other teachers, who teach class at the universities. We have those types of teachers, and they're getting results in the, in the classroom, and they're making sense for their colleagues and for parents. I know we have those teachers, and that's what the DTR process is about. And it can be intimidating just to go through a process, because it's the first time. First time for a lot of those teachers, and some of them are scared, and we're gonna encourage them to apply, and their principals are gonna encourage them to apply, and I hope, I hope you do. They don't have to, even that's voluntary. But you're gonna see some of our strongest, most effective teachers apply from all subjects, elementary specials, yes, but also math, calculus, biology, middle schoolers, middle school teachers. You're gonna see that range, and most of them will become distinguished and effective, and they'll help us grow and show what distinguished teaching looks like. We want to encourage them, because sometimes, when you, when you hear some of the news, you know, teachers don't always get the credit. Take, take a look at the climate survey, for example, and I, I know, I know that some, some people may, may question it, even though it was administered by Texas Senate and Commerce, we did that anonymously. And so, we, this is the fifth one, we're one of the few districts, I don't know any other district, that does a climate survey twice a year, where we actually ask teachers about the morale, where we actually ask teachers about the support they receive. And so, for example, please, for example, 74.5% of the teachers rated strongly agree or agree to the question, "I have the support I need from campus leadership to do my job well." 12% were neutral, leaving just 12.8% as disagree or strongly disagree. Now that's, guys, let's at least give our leadership, campus leadership, some credit, that's pretty good. Teachers aren't feeling that oppressed at the schools. And I can go into the other survey numbers, but I won't, I just, just tell you that that's just one piece of evidence that I hope you consider with regard to how things are going at the school level, and how the teachers feel about TEI, and we can, we can talk about some of the other things. But the, but the point is, in every single category, the, the numbers, the positive numbers are higher than they were a year ago, and higher than they were a year and a half ago. So, DTR teachers deserve our congratulations, just to have been tapped, and they need us to encourage them. We're gonna try to do that. So you're gonna see over the next month, us trying to encourage teachers. There's already several, what they call, application parties that are being planned. Some are gonna do it by feeder pattern, they're gonna work together, many who've already seen how the application, there's been workshops, have been, have seen what the application is like, now know that it's not that onerous, they're going to apply, and we're gonna try to encourage them. And sometimes they don't get to hear from those teachers either, some of their trepidation. So, tonight, board, I wanted to show just a short clip of some of the videos we're putting together, where teachers will encourage other teachers to apply for DTR, and we're gonna have several more cases where, where teachers do this. So if you can roll the film, just really short clip-
For 10 years, Markey Williams has made the drive from suburban Rowlett to Rusk Middle School in Dallas to teach science to her students. It is a job she loves, but one that is filled with many challenges. Last week, Ms. Williams became one of 1,400 Dallas ISD teachers eligible to participate in the distinguished teacher review process, part of the district's new Teacher Excellence Initiative that will compensate teachers based on their effectiveness in the classroom rather than their years of service.
I'm very excited about going through DTR. I feel that it opens up many opportunities for his exposure outside of the classroom and opportunities for more leadership roles.
Like Ms. Williams, there are several teachers in Dallas who are excited about being eligible to be recognized as a distinguished teacher and the potential to earn a higher salary.
The bottom line with distinguished teacher review is that it motivates teachers to do their best, which ultimately will improve student achievement.
I know that other career fields offer a lot of monetary compensation through bonuses or through raises that we have not historically had in teaching. So I'm excited about the distinguished teacher review possibility of having some of that in our career field.
I believe that our students should have the very best in everything that they have as far as quality of instruction, and the distinguished teacher review for me means that it's one more level of them getting the very best.
You know, when I think of the DTR teachers here at Nathan Adams, I think of what Superintendent Miles used at our last principal meeting, called the irreplaceables. They are the irreplaceables, and be able to reward them should be a top priority. You know, when visitors come to the school and they say, "I want my kid in that class", I mean, that was definitely a part of it, but it's their dedication and their commitment to the students and to the, and to their craft.
For 10 years, Markey Williams has made the drive from suburban Rowlett to Rusk Middle School in-
Thank you, I'll just be a couple more minutes. Thank you for being patient and giving me a chance to, to address some of these concerns. I appreciate your patience, very nice of you. Last thing I have to say, Mr. President and board members, is that we've had a great semester. It's been tough and not smooth sailing, but there is a smudge on the horizon, which we believe is land. Your schools are making progress, the, in the classroom, and I go almost every week to a few, we're making great progress, and the kids are learning, and they're progressing. Your schools are doing well. We got a long way to go, there's no, no denying that. And we know that change is tough, and in our profession, education, change is the new normal, because technology in the workplace is gonna keep changing, and so there's things we have to do. Just to call your attention, just a few things that you may not have heard, that we've accomplished this school year, a lot of firsts. You may know that we have five schools selected to start as choice schools next year. This is part of the 35 choice schools by the year 2020. They've been in program development, and now these five schools have been selected to start. We implemented a large-scale literacy program with volunteers, one of the largest DISD has ever seen. 92 schools have volunteers from the community helping out with literacy under this program. The district is, is in its best financial position ever. It, it received an upgraded bond rating, for those who are interested in, in taxes, it's a double A-plus from Fitch. We also have the highest fund balance ever, which will allow us to put more into the classroom. We, we're the first district, at least that we know of, that has tied principal compensation, not just incentive pay, but to evaluations for the first time. And by the way, our principals were excited about that, you didn't, you not hear a lot of complaints about it. We expanded early childhood program, and pre-K specialists have been supporting 350 out of the 450 classroom teachers to date. We also revamped the alternative certification program and increased the career tech ed programs. You may know that last year, we had, of our graduates, 1,683 industry-approved certifications versus 780 just the year before. And so, we're moving in those directions, and there's many other things, but I know I've gone on way too long, so I'll stop by saying, it's been a great semester. The teachers and staff, administrators, and those who are in support have worked really hard, they've made gains, and we look forward to next semester making some more improvements and also staying the course. There's some, a slight breeze in our back, we'll voice sales next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Superintendent Miles. We're now on to individual board trustee district reports. Trustees, are there any reports? We'll start with trustee Foreman.
Can you hear me now? Good. Thank you all for coming. In the interest of time, I would just like to wish a hearty holiday to all of you and hope that you will continue to stay involved in the education at Dallas Independent School District. I am wearing all black tonight in solidarity with my brothers and sisters who do believe black lives do matter.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustee Mitchka.
Yes, first, I'd like to second the congratulatory remarks that President Solis made to Quentin Neroz of Conrad High School. As you recall, he is the student who received early acceptance to Harvard University. It's a really big deal, the first time for a Conrad student, and we're very, very proud Also like to give a shout-out to our students. I started to make a list of all of the different schools that were putting together charitable drives this year, and the list goes on and on. I'll just mention a few. At Martha Turner Riley, the students collected nearly 1,500 canned food and non-perishable items to benefit the White Rock Center of Hope. At Robert T. Hill Middle School, students provided gifts as part of the Salvation Army Angels Tree Program. And at Gassen Medical, Middle School, students collected blankets and coats for the homeless. There are many other programs like this across the district, and I think it's really quite significant that our students, most of whom who live in, in poverty, are still out there being charitable and giving to others, so I applaud those efforts. And I'd also like to thank the folks who came out here tonight to express their concerns about, about TEI and testing. I, I do share some of those concerns, and I appreciate, especially when someone comes, as I believe Mr. Stanton did, with some suggestions and constructive criticism. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mitchka. Trustee Jones.
Thank you, President Solis. I echo my fellow trustees, this is a time of year where we do take stock. I want to take stock on the importance of strong neighborhood schools. The only true choice in education for a parent is a high-quality neighborhood school, and it is the goal of DISD to have many great choices that represent great educational opportunities for our children in every part of our 380-square-mile district. And I can assure you that within the large area that encompasses District 1, we have exceptional neighborhood schools everywhere a parent and a child wants to be. Excellence requires high campus standards set by a great principal, along with great teachers and active parent engagement. Tonight, I want to celebrate five exemplary principals who are- Tonight, I want to celebrate five exemplary principals who are recently recognized in District One for their achievements. That goes with Walnut Hill, Gooch, Pershing, Cabell, and Carey. I salute them because none of those schools are low-poverty schools. Every single one of those schools has its challenge, and every single one of those principals is rising to the challenge. I'd also like to give a big thank you to the parents and to the campus and to the principal of Dealey Montessori. 300 parents the other night turned out to a recent campus meeting. I was awed, absolutely awed, by the parental involvement and its engagement and its commitment to wanting to make sure that we keep our schools to the highest standards and making sure that a leading Montessori school, which has been one of Dallas ISD's greatest schools and one of the nation's best schools, that it stays that way. Most recent, five out of six TEA distinctions were awarded to that school, and I'd like to also thank the parents for being here tonight and for helping us, for guiding us, for educating us about what it takes to keep a school great. With the parents of Dealey Montessori who are here tonight and those who are there supporting them, would you please stand so we can recognize you? Thank you for continuing to participate in your children's education. I'm extraordinarily proud of the Thomas Jefferson Feeder pattern and Executive Director Tim Hies. I also would like to give recognition to Principal Sandy Massey for her work and the entire team at TJ High School. It is transforming. This year, the enrollment increased from 1,500 to more than 1,700 students. Out of the five state end-of-course exams, TJ High School increased its passing percentage in four of them, in English, Algebra, Bio, and U.S. History, and it earned a state distinction for their progress in English Language Arts. Now, I want you to think about that for a minute because TJ is one of three high schools in the state of Texas to have more than 51% of its population that is limited English proficient, and they have one of the highest, if not the highest, poverty concentration of any school inside of Dallas ISD at the secondary level. Their academic progress at TJ includes fine arts, and it includes academic progress with the most theater awards of any high school. One of the great teachers that you saw represented in that film is Rachel Harrah, and I'd like to send a major kudos to her. I thank to the parents, the community members, for restarting the PTSA. I thank the wonderful TJ alumni who continually volunteer and serve our students and who've also raised thousands of dollars in scholarships for them. I thank the Walnut Hill Neighborhood Association and Bob Noes for being great supporters of TJ, Carey, and Walnut Hill. Carey, one of our 43 IR schools, is also transforming. Through efforts of one of the district's high-performing principals and the entire faculty, the school is seriously on its way. Thank you to Corporal Bates for his leadership in LCC. Thank you to the Village Church, to Dr. Pepper Snapple, and to all the volunteers. And also thank you in advance to the FBI Citizens Academy alumni who have adopted the school and will be supporting it on so many levels. Congratulations are in order to Walnut Hill Elementary, part of the TJ Feeder. They were recently named a national finalist for the prestigious National Center for Urban School Transformation Award, one of the four schools in Dallas ISD out of 22 in the nation. Thank you to Nora Berry, the Executive Director of the Hillcrest Feeder. District One Pershing Elementary School, which is also part of the Hillcrest Feeder, was the other District One school out of the 22 in the nation to be a finalist in the NCUST Award. The ever-fantastic Kramer Elementary is on track to become an IB campus, and Kramer continues to be a leading school in Dallas ISD in spite of its poverty rate of nearly 80%. And then there is the great WT White Feeder, led by the incomparable, the incomparable Executive Director Anita Hardwick. 12 of the best comprehensive schools in the Dallas ISD, serving the cities of Dallas, Farmers Branch, Addison, and Carrollton. WT White High School, Walker Middle School, Marsh Academy, Caye, Gooch, Nathan Adams, DeGaulier, Withers, Marcus, Junkins, Bush, and Cabell, you are all exceptional. We owe a debt of gratitude to Anita. As many of you know, she is retiring after 40 years of service as a teacher, a principal, an executive director in Dallas ISD. But what many of you may not know is she's also a Dallas ISD alum. She has spent her virtual entire life here in this district. Through her great leadership and incredible team of leading principals, we have seen great results in almost every area of the WT White Feeder, a total of more than 10,000 children who were impacted. Of important note, WT White High School met five out of six TEA distinctions, the most of any high school in Dallas ISD. Edie Walker Middle School is the only Dallas ISD middle school to earn all seven TEA distinctions, and Marsh Middle School has earned three. Of the elementary schools, Nathan Adams and Withers earned five, and extreme high-poverty schools, Caye, which is at 95%, and Gooch, which is 98%, made three out of six distinctions. Through exceptional community support and extraordinary leadership, Gooch is no longer an IR school. Congratulations also to Marsh Middle School and Cabell Elementary. Both schools continue to innovate by working together. We learned today that they were recipients of the Personalized Learning Grant from Gates. I say all this tonight, and I take extra time, because yesterday, you might have read in the Dallas Morning News, there was a Rosemont family who was, quote, "reluctantly leaving" Dallas ISD. Any school district, any organization for that matter, should be in the business of keeping our customers and not losing them and knowing why our parents do not choose our district. That said, our recent district data shows that our populations are swelling to well over 163,000 during this school year alone. In 2010, we were at 157,000, so we've grown in size in less than five years, the equivalent of an entire Lancaster ISD district. Today, in District One, most, if not all, of our schools are well beyond their capacity and their respective feeders in some of our oldest and poorest-conditioned facilities. The New Year's resolution of this district should be, while I support choice, support is needed in the here and now, preferably a bond election in November of 2015, to improve the quality of our campuses and be able to be 21st century for our children. The district must invest in resources and must do so at the campus level to support our teachers, faculty, and students in their journey to improving the quality of education. As we enter the holiday season and we reflect on this year, please put in your prayers to the incomparable Cindy Gonzalez, who is bravely battling leukemia. Make-A-Wish Foundation recently made Cindy's big wish come true. While she could have chosen to do anything in the world, she chose to be a teacher and to serve. Cindy reminds us all that to be a teacher is glorious. She also reminds us that teachers need our support. We are a 10,000-strong district. Great teachers are what makes great education systems, and I know the teachers of Dallas ISD have been working harder than ever. You have my profound thanks for all you do in the classroom and beyond. I wish all Dallas ISD students, parents, administrators, teachers, and staff good cheer, joy with loved ones, and good health this holiday season. Here's to a great new year. I am extraordinarily proud of the quality of the schools we have in our neighborhoods, and if you don't believe me, please come up to District One. We should never lose any parents because they feel that the standard of our education system doesn't make the grade. Our job is to make sure it does. God bless you all. It is an honor to serve.
Thank you, trustee Jones. Dr. Blackburn. All right. Trustee Bigel.
First off, I'd like to announce that the Sigaville Theater Cluster, they had a food drive, which included all of the schools in that feeder pattern, which is seven, and they collected almost seven tons of food for the local pantry. And I'd also like to give a special note to Ebbey Halliday Elementary, who collected the most dog food for the dog shelter. So they won a competition trophy for the shelter. I've got three really wonderful feeder patterns within the District Four, that Samuel, Spruce, and Sigaville, and I'm so proud of the teachers and the faculties and the principals and the executive directors that run those schools. They do a great job. They're all striving to improve at all times, and I know all of these folks put in a lot of time. They give a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, so to speak, for our children, and they do this for all the children so that they will have a great education. And so many thank you to all those and also to the parents who entrust us with the education of their children.
Thank you, trustee Bigel. Trustee Nadal.
I want to wish happy holidays to all, and I want to thank the parents for coming out. I am a parent, so as well as a trustee, I'm a parent. I have a daughter in the district. So your voice matters, and we are listening. And so during this holiday season and reflecting on 2014, I hope we have some new reflections for next year, in 2015. So thank you for coming and expressing your concerns and the challenges. I live it every day with you, so I am with you. I have Olivia, and so Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, and God bless you and hope to see you in 2015.
Thank you, trustee Nadal. Trustee Cowan.
Thank you. Thank you for showing up tonight. Thank you for organizing the meetings that we had together. Also want to thank the superintendent for showing up to Greiner a couple of weeks ago to hear parent and teacher concerns. I also want to say thank you to the same Rosemont parents who are sitting out there tonight, who organized a book drive for our other neighborhood school, Reagan Elementary, two SUV loads worth of used books to their library. It is greatly appreciated, and we should do that more often. Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Thank you, trustee Cowan. Trustee Murat. From District Eight, the first thing I'd like to say is a big thank you to the city of Dallas and DISD for the Toys for Tots partnership that we have. We had, we distributed 31,000 toys that went to DISD students, and I know that took a lot of work. I think that's the right number, right, Wanda? You don't know. I think it was 31,000. Anyway, thank you so much, and I know today, your department did a phenomenal job getting extra support to the program. So if you didn't know what was happening, it's happening, Wanda, so thank you so much. Also, congratulations, to piggyback off something that trustee Jones mentioned earlier. Congratulations to Ignacio Zaragoza Elementary School. They are also part of the personalized learning cohort of schools that have made it to the next round via the Gates Grant. They've done a phenomenal job as a set of teachers and community members to try to rethink, re-envision what that school can be and envision it to be a 21st-century school. So they've made it to the next round. We're really excited, and let's keep our fingers crossed if Zaragoza makes it as a finalized personalized learning school. If you don't know about the personalized learning approach via school choice, you can find that information out on our website, DISD. All you got to do is go to the search bar and type in personalized learning, and you can learn about the way we are now envisioning schools in Dallas ISD for the year 2020 and beyond. So I'd encourage you to do that. Another great thing that's happening in District Eight, though, at the moment, it's really just been in the community and the way the community's been working together. In Arlington Park, a few years back, the school there, which is right behind the medical center, which is in the heart of this neighborhood, established back in the '40s, and also where the famous Mr. Sam Tasby lives, they have been working to try to figure out, as a community, what can they do with that building and how potentially might DISD be able to help them envision something new with that building. And they, when I think of community members like yourselves who have come here to try to offer solutions as to how we can continue to improve our systems, that's what they're doing in Arlington Park. And they're not doing it with a lot of fanfare at the moment, but they've been doing it now for close to two years. And I'd like to just give a thanks first to the community leaders there for continuing to stay persistent and work together to provide solutions to the administration to do something with that building, but also to our Chief of Innovation and Transformation, Mike Koprowski, and his team, who have consistently been willing and able to help Arlington Park. So from Arlington Park to you, Mike, and your department, I'd like to say thank you very much. The last thing I'll say is to just keep with the comments from the board to the community, we do appreciate the fact that you're here. We do appreciate the fact that you have, you're not afraid to share your concerns, but you're also not afraid to share your ideas. In 2009, I was sitting right where you were, Mr. Stanton, almost exactly where you were as a new teacher, and I remember people screaming and shouting, saying, "Get rid of Hinojosa. We got to get rid of this guy. What is he thinking?" And then I remember directly after that, coming to board meetings during the interim when Alan King was there, and people were saying, "Get rid of Alan King. We got to get rid of that guy." And then now, in the crowd, excuse me, we hear the same thing, but I'm not hearing it in your comments. What I'm hearing from you is this: DISD has a long way to go. We accept it, but we also understand that there are pockets of excellence. Rosemont is excellent. Dealey is excellent. Greiner is excellent, and you do not, and I don't want that to regress. We want to continue to ensure that it's excellent. We have new changes that are happening in this school system. In some ways, they're working, and clearly in some ways, they need to be improved. So I appreciate the fact that you are willing to provide solutions, and you're willing to come to the table now to say, "We want to help now before these things escalate." Thank you all for taking the time, and I look forward, as a trustee, to partnering with you to try to figure out how we can work as a community together to ensure that the churn doesn't consistently happen from a leadership standpoint, but that we get it right this time. Students don't deserve to have to continue to ask, "What's next? Let's get it right, and let's work together." So thank you all very much. Trustees, we are now on to the Board of Trustee Committee reports. Trustee Mitchke, I believe you have something, a report from the Audit Committee.
Yes, I want to make sure that our E-Rate auditors are here. And if, okay, I see you. We had an Audit Committee meeting on November 20th. The Audit Committee meeting was on the same day as the regular board meeting so that it would be more convenient for more trustees to attend. We had five trustees in attendance. They included committee members Lou Blackburn and Nancy Bingham, as well as noncommittee members Joyce Foreman and Bernadette, not all. We discussed a number of items. Trustee Jones asked if we could get a presentation on the E-Rate audit that Deloitte did for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014. If you all would come up and...
Trustee Mitchke, I have a question. Is our E-Rate...
Board members, thank you. I would like to take this moment to introduce, from Deloitte and Tush, the Director Sean Kilchrist, who has directed the E-Rate audit. It was not a financial audit, but it was an operational audit. So Sean, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go over the same presentation I went over with the Audit Committee, just from a little historical perspective. As Dr. Terry mentioned, this is a compliance audit in a sense. It's required under the compliance agreement to be done annually, and it's required to be submitted with the district's annual report up to the Federal Communications Committee. So also backing up a little bit, this particular set of rules that has to be looked at is basically the, there's certain things that are laid out in the agreement, and the district has to comply with federal, state, and local policies and procedures. So it's pretty comprehensive as it relates to that, and a lot of things that need to be looked at. This particular report, the format itself has been, I've sat down actually with the FCC and worked, discussed, not this report, but actually the format of the report a couple of years ago with the FCC. They also looked at our, how we approached the particular work that we've done at Deloitte on this, and they got very favorable results. In fact, they're holding out this particular format of report as something they use across the nation with other groups that are in a compliance agreement. So that's a good thing. I also do some E-Rate work for another Houston school district, too, and then similar type comments as it relates to the format and the type of work we do. The scope of the work for this year is obviously the funding year in the June 30th of 2014. Since some funding did start to trickle in, there are two new areas that had not been included in the prior work that we did that relates around dispo- around dispersments is one area, and asset tracking. If I was to go back also a little bit in history and look at our prior reports, we started this in 2011. There were nine issues. In 2012, there was one. 2013, there were zero. And this year, we had four issues on this particular report. And once again, this report will be attached by the superintendent and Jim as it relates to what they send up here shortly to the FCC. As it relates to the work itself, we start off with, we walk through a little bit of the process. We do planning, which encompasses interviews with about 11 individuals, management and board members, to identify the risks and concerns as it relates to E-Rate, and to see if any of our testing needs to adjust. We also look for any changes in laws and rules and whatnot that the FCC and the USAC might change during the year. We do substantive testing in a lot of areas. We look at the technology, that there's a technology plan, that the regulatory reports, the Form 470s and 471s and other reports that are required to be filled out are done as such. We looked at the request for proposal areas, the bidding, the procurement to payment area. We look at the goods and services that are provided, the roles of the superintendent, the ERCO, and the E-Rate Compliance Officer, and internal audit. We look at the training programs. We looked at the gift and donation area. We look at required compliance reports. And lastly, as I mentioned, the asset tracking area, which is new this year. Summarize the report itself. That's the whole process of how we went through the testing. We did have four findings. Two of them, I think, are a little more important than others, and one of them relates around the video, and one relates to asset tracking. And there were two others that were required to report on, donations, and for one board member, and also some board training. So I'm going to start with the first one. It's a video. We identified a video through our risk discussions that it appeared and came across against local policies and procedures as it relates to commercial advertising. There were some comments in there that made it appear that way. The ERCO did pull, Jim did pull the video from the website during the process of our testing, and, which was a good thing. But what we'd like to see happen is that there's a policy that updates, that there's an updated policy as it relates to the principals and other school district members, that they go through the ERCO first before any type of video like that is prepared. We also recommended that the district notify the E-Rate vendors of the violation, obtain some training within the school district as it relates to these type of videos, and also to evaluate the existing contracts that exist with these two particular vendors, and discuss those with the USAC and the FCC. The second issue relates to the donation. There was a gift that was provided to a elementary school, but it wasn't presented to the E-Rate Compliance Officer till a month after acceptance. And that's a local policy as well that was implemented a couple of years ago to, for a very reason of that they didn't, we wanted to ensure that the ERCO had the ability to see if a donation was with an E-Rate or it wasn't. That's pretty key. Luckily, it wasn't an E-Rate issue, but still, it should have been communicated to the superintendent, to the regulators, through the quarterly reports, and that's what we've asked for happen on that particular donation. It was only $14,000, but still, it was a small violation. Third is the E-Rate training. There was a new member, a new board member that came on in July, if I recall. There was not an existing board meeting in August, if I recall, but there's a very strict requirement that the training has to happen for all members associated with E-Rate, including the board, within 60 days. So once again, it's a small area, it's a small, you know, the training did happen. It happened in September, but it was just a little bit after the 60-day requirement that's in the compliance agreement. And lastly, asset tracking. We did have a little bit of difficulty finding certain assets. There were related assets. Internal audit actually had difficulties in that before and was working with Jim. And also, one of the requirements is that any discrepancies are reported to the superintendent and the FCC, which did not happen. So what we would like to see happen going forward is that there's strict adherence to the policies and inventory, that there are regular accounts to identify missing assets. Once again, the notification happens on any missing assets up to the regulators. And once again, just a better job of verifying assets as it relates to when they're installed, and also as they are tracked. And that's a summary of the four issues in the report, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Trustees, any questions?
Can you repeat the, I missed it, the nine, the year, and you started with nine?
Yes, ma'am. 2011, there was nine.
2011, nine.
12, there was one.
12, one.
13, zero.
13, zero.
And this year, four.
And this year, 2014, four issues.
Yes, ma'am.
The other question, do you know how this would impact our E-Rate funding receiving?
I do not. Like I said, my job is to test compliance to the agreement. That is definitely something the district will have to work with USAC and the FCC on. That's, I'd be speculating if I answered that.
Can we get the answer to that question? I see Bob Luna in the audience. Can we get the answer to that question? Would this impact our E-Rate funding?
But if you do that, you only have three minutes.
I could answer it faster than that. That's an excellent question, obviously a concern. I think that, however, that we're all in the same position, is that we're simply speculating at this point as to what USAC or the FCC might do with regard to the funding. As you said, these are fairly, two are fairly minor, two are somewhat more significant. But all in all, considering the last couple of years, the district has had a very good track record going in, and, but obviously, anytime anything comes up, we have to have a concern about, will it impact our funding? Right now, we simply don't know.
Do you know when we have an estimated timeframe for that answer?
We do not. The reports have already gone into the FCC and to USAC, and it's early on their schedule.
Okay. Can I, superintendent Miles, when that answer gets in, can we let the board members know, whatever the answer is, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, trustees? Trustee Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mitch Kay. It's so important that this compliance agreement that we're under be something that we take extraordinarily seriously. Any issue is actually a problem with respect to the agreement. The agreement requires that we have two clean years. Otherwise, we stay under this compliance agreement. So with that in mind, recognizing we had four issues, two significant ones this year, what actions have been taken to address the problems that led to the issues? So in other words, with respect to deficiencies in controls or deficiencies in some part of our system, what have we done to address that?
Well, to work my way backwards is that in the inventory, we have established an inventory control department, and we've moved inventory from under IT, and it now goes into a central warehouse under Chief of Operations, and inventory control is under the Chief Financial Officer. So we think, and we're also implementing a new inventory control software. It is going through piloting right now, and we think that we're headed in the right direction to bring that under control. In terms of the donations, we're recommunicating out to all campuses and through the Senior Executive Director of Community Relations, I mean, Intergovernmental Affairs, we're re-establishing that all items for donations over 5,000, especially for our vendors. We also have a vendor list. We're keeping that vendor list up to date. It has to come through the ERCO. In terms of the training, the training is under my directions, and what happened is one of the trustees was a new electee in June. In July, we did not have, and we didn't get it done until early part of September, and we have made note of that, that it's a hard 60 days, and I have done the appropriate verbal communications to my staff that there's no exceptions. And then on the video, we again have looked at the policy and reestablished that that policy, and any kind of videos that are going to be done in the future have got to come through the ERCO officer.
With respect to some of the findings and the related recommendations, one of the recommendations with respect to the video issue, since that's now a tainted relationship, was to notify the vendor of the violation. Has that been done?
Yes.
And have the existing contracts with the two vendors been evaluated with the FCC?
The FCC has not contacted me. I've left mostly messages for the appropriate personnel, and have asked them to call me so that we could discuss this. I've left specific messages that we wanted, I wanted to talk about the Deloitte audit.
And just so we're clear, the value of these contracts are somewhere in the order of about, what, 76 million?
Well, the value of the, of one contract, including our portion, is just over 86 million.
86 million. With respect to the, with respect to the audit, that has been sent to, that has already been sent to the FCC?
Correct.
Okay. Since, yeah, and since both, since the violations included issues with the compliance agreement, but also with district policy, what are we doing with respect to the violations with district policy at this point? How are we addressing those?
Those have been taken forward, and right now, we have an investigation underway with internal audit, and internal audit has yet to issue its report.
So if I understand you correctly, what comes next? I mean, if you're, are you waiting on a report?
Yes, we're waiting on the report.
And then, once you get the report, then what?
It will be evaluated, and appropriate action will be taken.
And with respect to the fact that we're back to four when we had zero, how will we ensure going forward absolute compliance and not?
Well, as Mr. Kilcrest pointed out, too, is that this was a new year in that the audit was expanded, and that we had received E-Rate money. So he had to expand that in terms of the money that we'd received, and for the first time, we expanded into looking at inventory and inventory controls, and that had not been done in the previous three years.
And going back with respect to having to launch, or when was the investigate, was the investigation as a result of this finding, or did it precede it?
Well, investigation started actually in June, and this was added to that investigation by internal audit.
Thank you.
Okay, and just so that I understand the scope of the audit, do you look at 100% of all bidding and procurement contracts?
We look at 100% of the bidding and the procurement itself, as it relates to the dispersments, testing itself, it'd be impossible, once again, to test everything, so we look at about 30, in the 30% range of the dispersments themselves. But we did look at all the 470s and 471s.
Okay. Trustee Foreman, do you have anything? I didn't look your direction. Okay. All right, and just for the record, the Deloitte E-Rate letter is posted on Sire, and it is, it is the final letter, and it's with the November 20th Audit Committee meeting. I think that concludes the report. Thank you. All right. Thank you, trustee Mitch Kay. Okay, trustees, we are now on to the minutes submitted for approval, and the following minutes are called board meeting October 30th, 2014, Audit Committee meeting November 20th, 2014, public hearing November 20th, 2014, board meeting November 20th, 2014, Board of Trustees E-Rate Training Workshop, December 4th, 2014. Do I have a motion? It's moved by trustee Bingham. Do I have a second? Okay, I will second. Trustees, are there any corrections? Okay, trustees, please cash your votes.
Motion passes nine, zero.
You've just adopted the motion, thereby approving the minutes as submitted. Texas Education Code, Section 11.159, requires the minutes of the last regular meeting of the board held during a calendar year to reflect whether each trustee has met or is delinquent in meeting the training required to be completed as of the date of the meeting. The required annual training is an obligation and expectation of any board member under the State Board of Education rule. As of the date of this meeting, the following trustees have exceeded their training requirements. Elizabeth Jones, Mike Murath, Dan Mitch Kay, Nancy Bingham, Lou Blackburn, Eric Cowan, and Bernadette Nadal. I have also exceeded my training requirements. Our new trustee, Joyce Foreman, was sworn into office June 26, 2014. She was not present in March 2014 to fulfill her team building hours, but Marla Gilliland with Texas Association of School Boards stated this requirement will be waived for trustee Foreman during this reporting period. We are now on to the consent agenda. This evening, we have consent agenda items 8A.1 through 8A.36 as amended. The following agenda items have been pulled for a separate vote. 8A.1, 8A.2, 8A.4, 8A.5, 8A.6, 8A.14, 8A.19, 8A.20, 8A.21, 8A.22, 8A.23, 8A.28, 8A.31, 8A.34, and 8A.36. Trustees, do I have a motion on the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, and seconded by trustee Bingham. Trustees, please cash your votes.
Ms. Bingham, second?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan? Motion passes nine, zero.
Trustees, you've just adopted the motion, thereby approving the consent agenda as amended. We'll now move on to the items pulled for separate vote, beginning with 9A.1, to approve the amendment to board policy, CDC Local, Other Revenues, Grants from Private Sources. It's a third read sponsored by Jim Terry, our Chief Financial Officer. Trustees, do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's moved by trustee Bingham, and a second. Okay, I will second. Trustees, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Foreman?
I, I've raised some concerns about...
I'm sorry, can you use your microphone? I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Hold on one second. Let me just skip to where I'm going. I've raised some concerns about this particular change, based on the acceptance of gifts, and, let's see, hold on one second. My concern still remains that the board is now giving up their authority to accept the gifts and transferring it to the superintendent or his designee, which I think it is a board responsibility to accept the gifts. There are a couple of areas where I am concerned. One of them is, is that the programs can be initiated by the superintendent or his designee, and they can be continued. This is actually, Jim, under the Superintendent of Schools or Designee Board show, it's on page two of four at the bottom. If you look at number four?
Yes.
The superintendent or his designee may be willing to continue at the termination of the grant, a program, which would then, in fact, obligate this district without the board really having anything to do with that, and that is a concern of mine. Then, if you turn to three of four, Jim, it speaks to minor gifts being allowed, such as with a teacher initiative. And my question to you is, what is the definition of minor gifts?
Well, I think at this point it would be anything under $5,000.
And that could be, if you have 50 employees, that could be $5,000 per employee that could receive that, correct?
No, I wouldn't interpret it that way.
How do you interpret it?
I would interpret the total donation of 5,000. So if the same donation is coming to all those employees, that I might need legal help here, but that's how I interpret.
Come on, legal. I don't interpret it that way.
I'm sorry, Ms. Foreman. Could you repeat the question? I was working on something else.
Um, I'm sorry. The question was speaking to the fact that the superintendent or his designee might give minor gifts. And it mentions the, like the Teacher of the Year Program or Teacher Initiative Program. And my question was, if you had 50 employees that met their standards, what is the threshold or the dollar amount that we're talking about?
Well, the dollar amount's still going to be the same. It would just be fact-specific as to how many employees and the value of their services.
Let me ask it another way, because I'm not getting an answer. If each employee met the standard and the gift is $5,000, who determines that we're, how much money we are going to give?
Well, I mean, that's, that would be established by whoever is giving the money. But again, the way that it's currently written is that it's a donation of $5,000. So if you had $5,000 were given and you had a thousand teachers, each, each, you know, each teacher would receive, you know, $5. You know?
$5 or $5,000?
Well, if, if, if a vendor were giving 5,000 per teacher for that many teachers and it's all in one lump sum, then, you know, that would add up to, I think, the amount that you're talking about. If it were all different gifts that were, that the teachers were each getting, that would be different. That's why I was saying it was, it would be fact-specific.
I, I just brought that to your attention because that, that's a concern of mine. There's no threshold there. It's wide open. And trustees, you need to be looking at what we are voting on.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustee Nodell?
Could, I had a question. I looked at Houston and talked to Houston. And Houston's the first, the largest school district. And it says, "Gifts 5,000 or more. Any offer of a gift that is valued 5,000 or more shall require the prior approval of the district's Board before that gift may be accepted. Any gift to the district that requires a prior approval of the Board shall be considered by the Board at its next regular scheduled Board meeting." And I talked to two Houston Board members. They're the number one school district. So why are we not?
My school district that I came from northeast, which was 60,000 kids, we brought the all gifts to the Board to be ratified or to be accepted each, each quarter. And it was not anything over $500. We put on the list and the Board approved those, those donations.
They have a very detailed CDC local policy and they're still, this policy is still in effect when I talked to...
But I think what you just read, that it said that, you know, they accepted the money and then brought it prospectively to the Board.
No, I didn't say. It says, "Any offer or of a gift that is valued 5,000 or more shall require the prior approval of the district's Board before that gift may be accepted. Any gift to the district that requires the prior approval of the Board shall be considered by the Board at its next regular scheduled Board meeting following the date the gift was offered."
I mean, that's, that's what we do now. And I think part of the reason that this has been brought forward to you is that sometimes it slows down the process in terms of, you know, a gift is brought to a school and the school wants to immediately put it into play. And we're unable to do that because, you know, it, depending on exactly when it gets to the, to the Board, it could be a month to two months before it is accepted by the, by the Board. And I'm not, in my three and a half years, I'm not aware of, of any donations that has not been approved by the Board.
I understand that. But I understand it's the, the reason why, but I'm just trying to follow. This policy says any gift 5,000 or more. So why are we saying the Board will receive a monthly notice of all gifts, grants valued at 5,000?
Well, I think the way that it's written now is that we're saying any gift over $5,000 would be reported to you monthly. And then on a quarterly basis, we would be bringing them to you to be accepted. That's the language you wanted, you all wanted to use. So that's what we're doing. I mean, you know, as the policy before was anything over 25,000, I believe. But here we're lowering the standard and showing you everything over $5,000. And we're just bringing to you once a quarter to, to accept or ratify.
The other question I didn't see, refusal of gift or donation. We don't have that in our policy. Did we not, can you show me, or I missed it?
To refuse a gift?
Yes.
Well, we usually just don't accept it.
Well, I mean, detailing the policy in Houston, the Board, the superintendent, appropriate principal. So should we not outline that in our policy?
We, we did not. It was not in there previously. And it's usually if it doesn't meet the threshold of legal and does it fit our mission and stuff, then we just wouldn't accept it. So we didn't outline it in this policy. I mean, adding it is probably just an amendment. I don't.
Yeah. I just, I mean, I, I looked around at policies and it's just refusal, refusal of, of gift or donation was important. And it was in a lot of policies. So I was wondering. I guess I need to make a amendment, Fay, to add that. Well, let me see the other. It was a couple things. Okay. I'll make a amendment. I would like to make a amendment to add, to clarify, to clean up the language. Because when you compare side by side...
Let me ask you a question, trustee Nodell. Are you making an amendment, you're making an amendment right now?
Yes, because when you compare side by side, other policies and best practices, our policy is not that. Because if we look, can you explain the sunset provision for extra district funding programs? Because I didn't see sunset in any other policy we're studying and talking.
Sunset in ours. Well, ours is in the top, so on page one.
No, can you explain it? I didn't see it.
I, I do not know the history of that, but it is the option for the district to take a look at, at programs and make determinations if they need to be phased out or to carry on. That, that's what that provision does.
Okay. So do we do that now?
In some respects, I, I would think. I know that evaluation and accountability looked at it and they made this more, they, they gave us this language because it is in line with what we do.
Okay. So we have to, each program that do not require annual evaluation must be, must be formally evaluated at least once every three years. So we're doing that right now?
To my knowledge, we are.
So do you know why we call it sunset provision for extra district funding programs?
Well, sunset means that, you know, you'll close up a program if it's evaluated and not to be acceptable to us or it's not effective.
So all our programs have an annual evaluation?
I, this is only referring to the, to the donations. So if somebody gives us a donation of a million dollars for a program and what we do is we put it in what we call a special revenue fund. And then we will apply those funds to the will of the donor. And if they ask for a...
I'm just, we're putting in policy. I just want to make sure that the policy is active and it's working. Because we're saying that approval of a grant shall, major evaluation questions are specific. The type of evaluation, internal, external, and the amount of grant money set aside for the evaluation are specific.
The superintendent makes that decision as to the evaluation. And it has been my experience being here that there are programs that have been closed down.
There are programs that have been closed down?
Phased out.
Phased out. Thank you.
Donated programs, do you have, do we have a list of that? Because I'm...
Well, if it's a grant, so like ABE, that's being phased out. I mean, it was a grant from the, from the State Department, from the state, and it's being phased out. So it does happen. But the superintendent, if you read this language, does say that he makes the recommend, or he or she shall make the recommendation to have an evaluation.
Okay. I'm just trying to, this is our second read?
Third.
This is our third read?
Third.
Okay. I would like to make a amendment.
Okay. Please state your amendment.
As a point of order.
Okay, point of order. Please state your point of order.
Board policy prevents amendments being made from the table unless they're provided in writing in advance. So the amendment itself would be out of order and in violation of Board policy. We would need to vote to, I think, and I, you asked the parliamentarian, we need to vote to waive our Board policy if we're going to proceed with this.
Hold on one second. Just to get a clarification. Hold on one second. I think I interpret the policy to maybe, tell me if I'm right on this, that it's, we, we would wish that someone would do that. Is it required?
It's not required by our actual, it's not required in our actual world. We don't have it written down. That was the discussion that we had between the Board for that to occur. But we didn't put it in our actual...
Yeah. So your, I appreciate your point of order.
Out of order.
We're going to go back to, it's out of order. We're going to go back to trustee Nodell. But trustee Nodell, I'm going to ask that you state the specific amendment that you would like so we can vote on that, please.
Let me clarify a question on page, for the page three or four. The Superintendent of Schools may accept gifts. Any donation that requires a physical change to a building or associated grounds must have prior review and approval of the chief operating officer. So we're taking that out of the Board's authority?
Mm-hmm.
Are we taking that out of the Board's authority? So if a donor makes a million-dollar donation and want to change a school, you will make that decision?
Superintendent of Schools or designee.
It doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that. It doesn't say that. Any donation that requires a physical change to a building or associate grounds must have the prior review and approval of the chief operating officer.
That's what it says.
Yes.
That's not.
But the naming of schools, is it a separate policy?
No, not naming.
We're not talking about naming.
No. Want to add a wing to a building, you will make that decision?
Under advisement.
Advisement from the superintendent. So if I want to add a wing to any school, that's out of the Board's authority.
My interpretation of it is yes. I think the answer is yes.
Yes.
Yes. We will ratify the donations at a, at a specific time throughout the year. We'll get regular updates on those donations.
Correct.
That's what the current policy proposal is.
Correct.
So your amendment, trustee Nodell, is to, what would you like me to do?
Can I, I was really trying to get clarification to understand this policy. So the Board, it used to say the Board must accept if we are going to change a building. But now we're giving all authority to administration if we want to change a building. Am I...
Well, this is, again, this is only gifts and grants and donations for construction of major capital improvements.
I understand.
And you're right. And you're correct. That what it is, is putting the Superintendent of Schools or designee may accept the gifts. And it strikes out Board.
Okay. Joyce had a question.
Okay, so...
I'm letting her. She, she wants to...
Okay. So we're going to go on our second round. Before we do that, though, do any other trustees have anything to say about this before we move back to trustee Foreman, trustee Morath, and then trustee Jones?
I just want to clarify. Somebody donated a million dollars to add a wing. Our construction services would put that out for bid and that would require Board approval. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
With the policy CV?
Correct.
Okay. So, and policy CV doesn't actually have a price floor for construction-related items. Any, any construction-related item has to come to the Board? Is that, am I correct in that? Or is that subject to the $50,000 limit? It's been a while since I looked at CV.
I thought it was 250, was it? It's 250.
It's 250? Okay. Because I know that all the bond items come back before the Board regardless of the price. So...
Well, the process would be if we accept it, the gift or the donation, then for the contracts to actually get the building built, it would have to go through our procurement process.
Okay. So in the event that, in the event that somebody did donate a million dollars for the wing, the Board is still in the process because of CV local?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, trustee, hold on. Trustee Jones?
Thank you. All right. I had a similar question. So if we took the example of Booker T. Washington, where you have a separate entity, a foundation possibly, raising capital, possibly donating, but subject to an entire project that isn't an entire donation, how does that get handled in this event? Would that come before the Board? Or could those things be decided?
Well, if it deals with construction and we would be, as trustee Morath said, it would be under the purview of CV local. So construction contracts valued at or above 50,000 shall be submitted to the Board for approval. So even though it's a donation and it's construction, it still has to go through our process for construction, which is dictated by CV local.
Right. But I think the question had to do with deciding on whether the project itself is, is worthy. Certainly in, in the case of what happened with Booker T., that was an incredibly worthy project and something that the district, the Board, the administration, a lot of people from the community stepped up and created an amazing school. My concern is just that that's usually a fairly well-planned and managed process that's done also transparently in the public eye.
Absolutely. Yes.
And the language here, in a sense, takes a step in a different direction, which even though authority-wise, I'm not going to quibble, I still think a process should include specific steps. And the Board for such a situation would be important.
Well, and again, I say that the donation itself, you know, if, if we were to accept a donation, a substantial donation, for instance, for the intention of building a wing, it would still be subject to our Board policies and procedures.
That's just on the, excuse me, that's just on the procurement, though. That's not on the actual project acceptance.
Well, I would envision that if, if someone is submitting or donating a million dollars for a campus or whatever, I mean, it would have to fit our, our, our direction of that particular campus. It would have to go through school leadership as it does now. We don't just do things haphazardly. There is a process.
Right. But where, this district, procurement is one thing, but when you deal with public-private partnerships, we don't really have a process for that. I mean, in fact, the only process would be bringing the project to the Board and the Board's ability to look at it holistically against its strategic plans.
Well, if it's a construction project, we do have a process and it would go through the normal construction process.
But that's after the fact. That's after we've decided the project and the project's moving forward.
Well, I mean, it's, it's like with any donation, you know, we have the option of refusing or accepting.
But I guess the question I have is what's the criteria and where does it come from? What's informing the basis of the donation if it's not?
It would be the same criteria that we do now. I mean... It would be the same criteria that we do now. I mean, we have donations that, that we accept, and again, you know, it's a donation. People want, if they want to give us money, we need to make sure that it fits within the plan of the community, of the school, of the leadership and the district.
Right, but we...
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm going to ask that you please allow our trustees to conduct business with our administration. Please.
My, my concern is just, for major capital investment and major project, that there's more to the story than strictly procurement, and something that should be part of a planned, managed, and community-centric engagement.
Well, oftentimes, that's where the donations come from, you know, from the community. And they see a need at a campus, and they try to help, so, and I understand your point, so I think we're kind of saying the same thing.
Yeah, the only, there's a distinction in my mind between a group of people coming together, and that truly is the community, and one donor who says, you know, we'll fund the whole thing, but here are the terms, and, you know, that never sees the light of day.
Well, you know, and again, if the terms are restrictive and are not in accordance with our district policy, then of course, we wouldn't accept it.
So where's the transparency on the process in that regard? It's strictly discretionary at that point with staff.
If the way that the policy is written now, you're going to see all donations once a quarter. And you're going to see the purpose of that donation. So if you see a million dollars or 10 million dollars, you know, given to the district for a wing somewhere, and then comes to the board for acceptance, you don't have to accept.
Right, well... We don't have to accept after the fact?
We certainly can return.
Switching gears for a second, since we had an E-rate issue this year with respect to a donation, in this case, PTA-related, what are the policies and procedures we've taken into account to make sure, as we change this, that we've got the compliance process?
Well, we have the policy, policy and procedures in place. It was not followed. Now, part of the problem was that it was an E-rate vendor who gave money to the PTA, and the PTA then gave it to the school. Now, we have a list of E-rate vendors, and the money that, you know, when you go and look at the E-rate vendors, PTAs are not on that vendor list.
Right, so the language that I'm referring to is page two of four. I didn't quite understand what it means now, that the language is stricken, the chief compliance officer has approved acceptance, and it was substituted until approved. What was the reason for that change?
Just clarifying, if you read it, it's, it says that it's not, we don't accept it until it is approved by the compliance officer. So if you, it just, it, to me, it was just a cleanup.
Actually, I think the prior language is clear, because here it doesn't specify who's approved it. Prior language is specific about the C, the chief compliance officer has approved acceptance, so you may want to take another look at that.
So all, see, all proposed gifts or donations of technology goods or services valued at 5K or more shall be submitted to the chief compliance officer for review, and shall not be accepted until approved by the compliance officer. Add that.
No, I'd go back to the original language. The original language, in my opinion, is clear, because it speaks specifically to the CCO, so, anyway.
Thank you, trustee Jones. Dr. Blackburn, and then trustee Mitch K., and then trustee Bingham, and then trustee Cowan.
As I understand this policy, it's only about accepting funds or accepting donations. It does not permit you to go do anything further with that donation as far as reconstructing or adding on to buildings and things of that nature. This policy is simply about accepting the funds. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if we get a million dollars or 10 million dollars, you're not going to go and add on to a building without coming to the board. Is that correct?
Correct.
I heard one correct. Did I hear two?
Yes, I think that's correct with our other policies in place.
Okay. I think what you're hearing is some, is some hesitancy with the administration. What you're hearing is some sense of, um... I think you hear it. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Mitch K., and then trustee Bingham, and then Cowan.
Yeah, I just want to take that hypothetical one step further. A donor comes in and says, "I'm prepared to give you a gift of a million dollars. I'd like you to use that to construct a wing at one of the schools." And the total cost of construction of that wing might be 5 million dollars. Is there anything in this rule, rules, or this proposed change that will prevent the administration from being able to make that 4 million dollar commitment in, as part of accepting that 1 million dollar gift?
Well, we couldn't add the other 4 million dollars without coming to the board for approval.
And may I add, I think going through Wanda Paul's shops would be that checks and balance. She would see that it would actually cost us more than the gift, and is it feasible? Does it make sense?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, trustee Mitch K., trustee Bingham.
Yeah. Dr. Terry, now, we are talking about free money here, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if I had, if Omar Jimenez, who's sitting in our office, the audience, says, "You know, I'd like to donate 50,000 dollars to build a playground at public school number 123." And as our policy is written right now, how long would it take to get that playground? How many months would it take for it to go through board process, and then finally, for those children to get that playground?
If, if the timing was right, we could get the approval by the board in a month, and then it would be up to construction in terms of putting into their plan to build it. If the timing wasn't quite right, then it would take two months to get through the board, and then it would take the construction, construction period to, to build it.
So, the way it's written right now, it could be three months, maybe even four months, before those children are allowed to play on that new playground. With the policy change, is the purpose of the policy change to, to probably allow things like playgrounds? And I have no idea how much a playground costs right now. Could it be, could the process be speeded up?
Well, I, I think it's sped up in terms of accepting the money and bringing in the money, and then making sure that it gets on the quarterly report. And once the money was accepted, then we certainly could, you know, proceed with the plans for construction. Now, if the board turns around and says, "Well, we don't want that 50,000 dollars," then we have to stop everything. So I think that it would shorten that time. And as I say, in my three and a half years, I don't know any money that has been, but you all have been on to this board a lot longer than I have, so... Have you ever not accepted money?
Nope. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Cowan.
Page, page one of four. Last paragraph. The superintendent of schools or designee reserves the right to specify the manner in which the gifts are made, to define the type of gift or grant that it considers appropriate, and to reject those deemed inappropriate or unsuitable. I'd like to offer an amendment.
Okay. Please state your amendment.
After receipt of the monthly notice of all gifts, grants, and bequests valued at 5,000 or more, upon the rejection of the superintendent for any reason, the board reserves the right to accept those gifts on behalf of the district.
Do that one more time. Do it a little slower, so that Fake can...
What page? One of four?
One of four.
Actually, can you tell me where you're even trying to add that? Are you replacing that paragraph, or are you adding in?
At the end of the last paragraph on page one.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll...
After rejection.
Okay, please state it again.
Upon receipt, upon the board receiving the monthly notice of all gifts, grants, and bequests valued at 5,000 dollars or more, and consider such items for ratification on a quarterly basis. If the superintendent of schools or designee rejects a grant or donation, the board reserves the right to accept the grant or donation on behalf of the district.
Okay. You need it one more time, Fake?
What I'm trying to get to.
Hold on. Did you type it, trustee Morath?
But...
Okay. I appreciate that. Okay. So, we, we have the spirit of your amendment. The spirit of your amendment is that if the, if the superintendent of the administration says, "We don't want the gift," the board reserves the final right to say, "Wait a minute, we may still want the gift as the board. We can vote for it." That's the spirit of it. That's the spirit. We will make sure that we capture that. Is there a second for this amendment? Okay, it's been seconded by trustee Blackburn. Trustees, is there any discussion? Trustee Cowan, would you like to explain that?
I think you explained it well.
Okay. Any other discussion, trustees?
Did you forget me?
Well, we're in amendment right now. When we get back to the main motion, we can get there. Okay, trustees? You, you have discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of trustee's Cowan amendment. Trustee Morath, read it one time for everybody before we vote. Put those typing skills to test.
Upon the board receiving the monthly notice of all gifts, grants, and bequests of 5,000 dollars or more, the superintendent of schools or designee rejects any donation, the board reserves the right to accept the donation on behalf of the district.
Okay. All those in favor?
Point of question.
Point of...
I don't, I need to understand what's the...
Okay, point of information.
Yeah, point of information. Can you explain?
The reasoning is if somebody comes and wants to donate 100,000 dollars for any reason, and the superintendent says, "Yeah, no, we don't want that." And the majority of the board feels that, "No, this would probably be good for the district. We can at least have the opportunity to discuss it and vote upon it as a board," as opposed to the superintendent just rejecting a granted donation, which probably has never happened. But it's probably a good thing to put in policy.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Keep your hands raised until they're counted. All those in favor. You can vote on here, okay. You have it plugged in? Okay, all those in favor, yea. All those against, nay.
Mr. Solis?
The, the motion passes nine, zero.
Okay, trustees, you've adopted the motion. Motion is now amended. We're back to the main motion as amended. Trustee Cowan, do you have any other comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
I have.
One second. Trustee Foreman.
Thank you. I am trying to get back to the question that trustee Nodal was asking in regards to the acceptance of the gifts and the naming of a facility. Part of the problem is, is that so many people don't know the history of this district. And if you don't know your history, you're destined to repeat it. I will not vote for any policy that will give staff the ability to accept a gift from an individual that could have strings attached and could talk about renaming a wing, not a school, a wing. Trustee Blackburn, I don't think they're just talking about accepting gifts. That's not what the policy says.
Well, our intent is that this is only about accepting gifts.
The intent might be well, the intent might be well, but that's not what I read.
We have another policy for naming.
I understand another policy for naming. Mr. Terry, again, I talk about, would you sit down? Again, I talk about the history of this district. In the history of this district, we had a policy that talked about naming. And when we looked up, another name was on a building. That's unacceptable. And that's what, um...
Certainly not our intent.
That's what trustee Nodal was trying to raise. And so the wording needs to be different for me to have any, absolutely any interest in voting for this policy.
Before we move on, while I respect the emotion of this, and understand the emotion of this conversation, and the history of this conversation, and the emotions that it evokes from individuals, I will ask that we treat each other, both board members and staff members, with respect for this, for this meeting moving forward, and all meetings in the future. I'm going to call those things out when I see that. I accept the emotion, but please, let's treat each other with respect.
Just this, Solis, I don't need to be lectured. I do not need to be lectured.
Thank you, trustee Foreman. Trustee Nodal.
For clarification, I don't see in this policy where it talks about gift approvals. What do, what do we do if a gift is under 1,000 dollars? What is the direction and policy for that?
The direction, there's, it's not in, it's, um, hold on. It's 5,000 or more that it goes through the process.
Yeah, but for example, and looking, gifts under 1,000, any offer of gift that is valued under 1,000 would require prior approval of the principal. So we don't get into the E-rate.
You don't get in...
So what is, you know, so we won't, what is the procedure in clarifying? Because policies should guide our employees on how to...
It still goes through the normal process. It just doesn't come to the board. There is still, it goes through legal, it goes through review, the principal looks at it. It still comes through the Office of Partnerships.
I understand that, but to clarify on policy. In, in policy CDC local, I see in looking at best practice, they give a very detail. For example, gifts under 1,000, any offer of gift that is valued at under 1,000 should require the prior approval of the principal or the school improvement officer of the school or program director to which the gift is offered. So employee will understand that, this is my process, gifts less than 4,000 to 999, any offer of that gift is valued, or shall require the prior approval of the superintendent or the designee before the gift may be accepted by the principal or program director. Then gifts 5,000 or more, that value is district board approval. I'm just saying to clarify language, so employees know how we, the rules of engagement when accepting gifts. Because as you know, with our principals, they accept gifts, and, and then when they go to policies, it just says, "The board will receive," it's not, this policy's not directing staff on how to govern.
I, I do, we do have those, and...
It's not referred to which policy.
It's not in the policy. It's not in...
Procedures are procedures.
Yeah.
They don't get all of our procedures and policies.
I understand that, but even in parentheses, does it say CCDC regulation? This, I don't see that. So as the employee, or as a, I mean, as a principal, I'm looking at policy because a person walks in my building and states, "I want to give you 1,000 dollars." And then they're like, "Okay, what is policy?" You pull policy, it's not referring me to any regulation to tell me how to... This says gifts, and then it says CDCD regulation. So I'm trying to understand, in looking at this policy, where is all of...
Okay, I can find that out for you, but I don't have it off the top. If, if there's more questions, I can get that information.
I'm just saying, we, we are the board to govern policy. We got in a little trouble with E-rate because of accepting money from an E-rate vendor. So, employees, all they know is to go to policy. So I'm, I'm asking, do I need to make an amendment to put it in policy, so we all understand? We go to CDCD regulation, because I don't even see CDCD regulation referred to. Is there a regulation for CDC?
Yes, but I don't, it's...
I see the CH. There's a regulation for CDC?
But I'll, I'll have to get it, because we have it in a procedures chart that we have circulated the information. I don't have it here.
Question, Fake, is there, I just need to know, is there a regulation for CDC?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is.
So, in this policy, the policy administrator do... I just noticed we didn't refer to CDC regulation to direct employees to... Should that be best practice?
Yeah, you could add that, Ms. Nuttall, so that it would be clear.
I'm just trying to clean up the policy because it's not clean where employees all understand the rules of engagement. So, where do you recommend that we put CDC? Is it regulation?
Yes, I'd put it in regulation.
I know, I see exhibit. So, do we have exhibit? Or we have a regulation for CDC?
We have both.
What's the...
The part that what you're referring to right now would be the actual... The actual regulation.
So, where in the policy? Because I see acceptance of items not in violation of any law. We refer to BBFB. Where in the policy would we put to make sure employees know when they're accepting gifts, they need to go to CDC regulation? Is that on the gifts? The board, would that be in parentheses right after that? Do we know?
Page three, on page three, in the middle of it. In addition...
Hold on one second, Ms. Nuttall.
Isn't that... All this must be documented by...
See, CDC regulation. So, is a difference... Can we...
Why don't we do this?
Look on page three.
Okay, I see it on page three.
Okay, if you look at after... Just about in the middle, just before the gifts, grants, and donations, you'll see, "In addition to procedures identified above, all gifts must be documented by completing the district's donation form, see CDC regulation, and CDC exhibit."
But at the top...
And recorded through the online database at...
But at the top, we say, "The administration should establish regulations to facilitate a streamlined process to accept these gifts." Do we put that in policy that we're going to establish? Or should that already be established? Because local regulations should guide the policy.
Well, it's pointing... If I'm understanding you correctly, I think it's pointing out in the policy right here that you need to go to regulation for all gifts. So, that would entail all gifts under $5,000.
No, it says, "The administration shall establish regulations to facilitate a streamlined process to accept these gifts" on page three or four. So, should you say right there, "Refer to CDC regulation"? I mean, it says, "The administration shall establish." I didn't know we put that in policy because I thought regulations should already be established when you go to the policy.
Yeah, but it says, it will... It shall establish the...
No, I think you're right, but I think what you're understanding is a little bit different. The policy drives the regulation.
Yes.
And in fact, I ask people, don't even get the regulations approved until we're making changes to a regulation to make sure that it reflects what the board actually has done in the policy.
But this is in policy. It says, "The administration shall establish regulations." So, shouldn't we have, "Refer to CDC regulation"?
Yes.
So, we should take that out?
No.
We should leave it there because that's what the board has authorized the administration to create these regulations. You want to leave that in there then because that's what gets you to your regulation.
The administration shall establish regulation? I mean, we're establishing a policy...
That's pretty standard how we do that, Ms....
I looked, and I didn't see it in other policies.
We have it in a few others because once the board is then outlining to the administration to go forth and create these regulations. And so, we do have that in many of our policies.
Shall establish. I didn't see it. I looked at Houston's and Austin's, and I just didn't see that in the policies of best practices.
I can show you some more, but I'll find and do it.
Of our policies, right. But not other policies.
Okay, trustees, any other questions? Okay, Trustee Jones?
Somebody... I think the thing that's been bugging me, while I'm comfortable with a lot of parts of this, of the changes, what's still bugging me is under construction of major capital improvements. The language that got eliminated, majority of it, is really a defined process. And I'm just looking at other parts of our policy, and this is pretty much the only place I can find it, enunciated clearly about the way in which we would accept a gift, that the district maintains ownership and control on all capital improvements and so forth. Can you point me to where, if we eliminate this, we still have some language somewhere that...
Directs processes.
Defines the process?
Again, I would refer to CB local.
Yeah.
That deals with construction. So, the example that was used before, if someone gave a million dollars, it would still have to go through our processes for construction. And then you have the opportunity to either accept or reject the donation.
I don't think you understood my question. Not about the practice of what happens, but the relationship to decision-making on capital improvements is what I'm still trying to understand. Number three very specifically says that we maintain ownership and control over all major capital improvements. The district shall procure all goods and services required for major capital improvements. All contracts relating to design, construction, and major capital improvements shall be in the name and managed by the district. And the language that precedes that says, "The board shall accept only monetary gifts, grants, donations, bequests, not accept gifts or donations of goods or services in connection with construction of a major capital improvement," and so forth. My concern is that this defines what's in, what's out, and how it's done. So, if we take this out, where is this reflected?
It's reflected in the fact that if we accept the donation, it belongs to the district. And anything that deals with construction, again, is guided and governed by our district policy. So, over $50,000 is guided by district policy.
So, goods... So, the question I had had to do with some of the specificity of this language. So, goods or services, for example, is eliminated. So, you're now saying that we can accept services, for example, by eliminating this? Because I don't see where any of this is defined elsewhere as being prohibited now if we take this out.
Well, I thought the question dealt with construction. So, that's what I was referring to.
We certainly can accept, you know, services as a donation.
Right, but here, it's defined that we don't. So, now we're saying we will?
I would say yes.
And how do we value that?
Well, it's valued in different ways.
Do we value it? So, we're basically saying we're going to put services back in?
Well, as an example, you know, we accept the, you know, tutoring.
Well, I'm talking specifically construction. That's my...
Construction, okay.
I'm looking specifically at the construction clause.
My misunderstanding. I thought you just meant all services.
No, 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 no. I'm specifically focused on page three or four on donations for construction of major capital improvements. And there's a lot of language here that got struck. And there's specificity in the language that struck that's part of a process. I was trying to compare it to CD. And I was also looking to see if it struck. Have we just said now we can accept services? Whereas before, it was prohibited. I just want to be clear on what we're recommending.
Yes. I think the answer is yes.
Hey, Trustee Jones, do you have any other questions?
I'm just very uncomfortable with the language that got struck out. And I remember those questions were asked during previous times that we've looked at this. I think at one point, there was supposed to have been some further explanation about removing certain language that I don't believe ever got... That loop ever got closed. And my concern is that we've struck a lot of specificity, and we put a lot of generality about the process, about requiring or changes to property, about capital construction and capital improvements and how they're vetted or otherwise determined. We also have added things like services back in, which were not, I think, the original intent was to allow some of this to be donated. And part of the problem has to do with not just valuation, but also control over it and other areas that are not... Because they're not tangible in their donated form.
Thank you, Trustee Jones. The only thing I can add before we take the vote is just if trustees still don't feel comfortable with approving this language, I mean, the policy will go back to being the policy as is to date if you vote no. Personally, I will be supporting this policy. I think that we've done multiple revisions that captures the spirit of the direction of the board as best as you can. And at this point, if trustees do not feel comfortable making the particular change, I would say, vote no. I will be voting yes.
Point of information?
Yes.
Just so I'm clear. Tonight, we did approve the playground equipment for Cabell, and I wanted to say thank you. But I also wanted to point out that there was a hang-up on that, but it was legal. It wasn't in our acceptance, part of the process. Just to be clear. Thank you.
Okay. Trustees, all those in... Well, please cash your votes. This is a motion as amended as well, just to ensure.
This is the main motion?
It's the main motion as amended.
The motion passes. Six voting yes, two voting no, and one abstaining.
Okay, trustees. I do know that we have... We just approved the motion. By new note, we have CBRE here. You've been waiting patiently. And the agenda item that we're supposed to talk to with you is the last agenda item. And that's... There's a likelihood that that will take some time. So, trustees, if there are no objections to moving the conversation on item 9A15 up to the current item, then we'll do that. Are there any objections? Okay, hearing no objections. We will now move on to item 9A.15. Approval of resolution for the purchase of the property known as Pegasus Place, 3,000 Pegasus Park Drive in Dallas, Texas, as further described in the resolution for public school, educational, and administration facility purposes, and to accept a seller's offer to sell at a price of $20 million, and if necessary, to offer to acquire same at such price plus authorize related costs and fees of 6% thereof, general operating funds, consent item number 36, pulled by administration. Trustees, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
It's moved by Trustee Bingham. Do I have a second? Seconded by Trustee Morath. Okay, before we go to discussion, I believe that there... Is there a presentation that's going to be provided?
Yes. I'm going to turn this over to Jerry Cobb, who will introduce the other members of CBRE that will do a fairly short presentation.
Okay, thank you.
The tall, good-looking gentleman walking in front is Jerry Cobb.
Mr. Terry, if you don't mind me asking really quickly, is there... The presentation that's going to be provided now, is that... Has it already been provided to the board?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so trustees, it's just... Okay.
I'll do this. Why don't you go ahead?
When did this... When did we receive this? Last week. Last night?
Yeah, she received it last night.
Okay.
You originally received it last Friday, and there was an update that was given last night.
Now, if I remember correctly, in the binder, we received, if not all the presentation, most of the presentation. You're telling me that it's been updated certain portions tonight? Last night?
Oh.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. We'll just take a five-minute recess real quick as they set up. Everybody else can take a break as well. The board will take a five-minute recess, and it will reconvene at 9:46 PM.
9:41.
Okay, trustees, the time is now 9:47 PM. And we're going to come back from recess. And now, I'd ask our representatives from CBRE to go ahead and begin their presentation. Thank you all for staying and for joining us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And Jerry Cobb with CBRE here in Dallas. To my left would be Peter Jansen from CB's office in Austin, Texas. And behind us is Beth Moore, who is from the Los Angeles office. Beth is with our Workplace Strategies. What we are here throughout this evening is to discuss the property known as 3,000 Pegasus Park Drive. It is a property that is for sale. It is approximately 765,000 square feet of space. And it is known as surplus property for the seller. And they have several other properties that they're selling in Houston, so this is in part of a portfolio. What we'd like to do to kick it off this evening is, Peter will walk through some of the financial information as far as how we arrived at the Workplace Strategy and how this particular property will fit into the future from facilities perspective.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. We were retained in the end of June this year through procurement to address future facilities needs and a strategy for the district's administrative and operations housing needs. And so, the presentation we have tonight is a result of that study that we've been working on the past six months. And most importantly, the trustees asked us to bring back recommendations in the context of an overall strategy, and something that could be a bold stroke to address years of deferred maintenance issues and provide really a path for the future, so that, at the end of the day, the taxpayer dollar steward it and more money can be directed back towards students. And we're here tonight with what we believe to be exciting news, and as an opportunity for the district to save a significant amount of funds over the next 20 years and address a lot of issues that have been plaguing the housing scenario for staff. When we presented to you in June, we said we would attack this consulting report from three different angles. What is going on in the marketplace today? How is the market impacting your portfolio? What does the district truly need to house staff? Do you have too much space, too little space? And lastly, is there a business case to make a move? And we'll answer those questions for you tonight. Here's the highlight. The Pegasus complex offers the district an opportunity to save $180 million net present value, I mean, our estimates, over the next 20 years, shed a significant amount of surplus space that's inefficient, ineffective, and solve a number of other issues as well in the real estate management. So that's the punchline tonight, that there's the opportunity to save $180 million by making a strategic investment today. This opportunity, as Jerry will tell you about, presented itself, was not on the market in June. It came on the market this fall, which was an unexpected opportunity. So again, the driving questions, what quality and quantity of space does the district require? Is the current portfolio efficient and effective for current and future needs? The answer to that is no. Is there an opportunistic acquisition scenario? The answer to that question is yes. And is there a business case? And we believe the answer to that is yes as well. We invite your questions throughout the presentation, but we have dedicated time at the end to address specific questions. I'd like to introduce Beth Moore, and she's going to walk you through the Real Estate Options Report Card.
Thank you, and thank you for having us today. When we were looking at the, not only the quantitative, but qualitative impacts of the way that the district houses employees today, which, when we're talking about housing employees, it's really the real estate effectiveness into how, at the end of the day, both the students, the campuses, and the operations are facilitated. In our research and our investigation from the Workplace Strategy perspective, we hosted a visioning session with senior leaders. We conducted interviews. We hosted a few focus groups with staff to understand what their perspectives are, how work was facilitated today, and what could be improved in the future. And we also have done extensive tours in all of the facilities to understand current working conditions and how that compares to other organizations best in class as the world is changing. Since this is the school district, we decided to assemble a report card of our findings. And what you can see in here is looking at really three different scenarios. We could have multiplied this out a number of times, but what we really wanted to be consistent in is thinking about how facilities are maintained in the status quo scenario, in which Peter will go into more detail in the financial specifically, what opportunities this new Pegasus building could provide, or if you were to look at a completely different alternative, which would be a bill-to-suit. And how we assess this was in really six different categories. The first one being mission. Now, today, as we understand it and visibly saw it and interacted with people, everyone is very distributed over a number of buildings. And so, creating connectedness to one another to be able to fulfill the mission of the organization, which is really coming together and creating innovative ideas and really supporting the students, is distributed because of the siloed nature of the facilities today. Accessibility from the campuses into one another, again, distribution of facilities is a big issue in the way that people are able to come together and communicate. And quite frankly, there's not a lot of flexibility going forward. So as the district evolves and changes, if you're looking at the status quo scenario today, taking on additional space will be above and beyond those desperate facilities today. And then, we also have a few other categories that you'll notice on the scorecard are TBD. One is around creating a best place to work. Now, when we look at how other organizations are facilitating a work process, we see a lot of trends out there which are changing the way that people are working. Certainly, technology is doing that, and also the way people are communicating to one another. Transparency and collaboration being some of the biggest trends that are creating better productivity in the way that work is being facilitated. So when we look at best place to work, we're really talking about, are we really creating an environment here that's encouraging people to come together, to collaborate, and also drive value for the students? We have a TBD under Pegasus, because as we're going to go through here, it's an incredible opportunity, but there is some renovation that also needs to be considered. And then, the last two, cost and timing. Peter will get into more detail around cost, but certainly, the opportunity that Pegasus provides, having it just come on market in this fall, and being a large building that you could consolidate a lot of administrative functions, so that they could more easily come together and create better efficiencies from a space perspective and also a process perspective, affords an opportunity that a bill-to-suit would take a longer time to be able to provide. Also, cost weighs into that as well. So when you look across the board, we rated in those three scenarios based on the ability for people to come together, create a flexible work environment that would adapt to the changing nature of the district, and also to create an opportunity that's cost-efficient and effective for the district. We had in here, this opportunity is rated high compared to status quo and even a bill-to-suit opportunity.
We thought it would be most helpful to address the portfolio analysis first and provide a framework so you can make this financial decision. So I'm going to walk you through a few of the assumptions in our approach and how we arrived at these numbers, so that you can feel comfortable that these are not rosy scenarios. This is not a very optimistic project, but instead, it's very rooted in market. So our approach to the portfolio analysis included broker opinion of values on all the district properties. We reviewed operations and efficiency, operating expenses. We considered schedule and risk, and how those impact financial numbers as well. So lastly, we rolled all of this analysis into a 20-year financial model to create a total occupancy cost. So in other words, this is not just construction numbers, this is not just the operating expenses, it's every expense that goes into managing your real estate and how that impacts it over a 20-year period. That is, that's a standard in the industry of, should I speak up a little bit? That's a standard in the industry of how you look at a holistic cost for a portfolio. So again, some key assumptions. We assume the district does allocate the funding necessary to address all the deferred maintenance on present acquired or build-to-suit assets. So in other words, there's not one scenario where we assumed you addressed costs, and another scenario you did not address costs. We assume that the district allocates funding necessary to create an efficient and effective workplace in acquired or build-to-suits assets. So in other words, we did not assume that in one building, you only allocated a minimum amount of funding, and the other facility, you allocated the maximum amount of funding. It was consistent across the board. Lastly, we assume that you reorganized your real estate management around best practices and BOMA standards, so that you can achieve what the industry standards are with respect to costs and operating expenses. The BOMA standard is aggregation of costs. It's a survey that goes out to every major asset and portfolio manager in the area, and they provide all their information back to this group, so that the industry understands how expenses are managed in a local market. So in other words, Dallas has a specific set of standards of how you should manage your assets and how much that should cost you every year. So it's a benchmark for cost. So again, some of the numbers that went into the total cost of occupancy, acquisition, redevelopment, hard and soft costs for constructions, contingency costs, revenue generation, what are the opinions of values, what can you achieve in the market for any property that would be disposed of? Occupancy costs, relocation, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, operation, addressing deferred maintenance and operating expenses, and again, this is a net present value in today's dollars. Now, we tried to create a framework that's conservative with respect to timing, cost, and risk, rooted in current market data, not projections of future values or rooted in the past, but what's going on in the market today. And this should allow you flexibility in the execution of the framework today. Moving right along, so the conclusion, as I mentioned before, is that the Pegasus complex is by far the least expensive option over a holistic look at the portfolio. These might be a little tough to see for the audience, but we created the 20-year net present value models. Of course, and that's not very clear here, but I'd be happy to walk you through any of the specific assumptions. One of the questions that we were asked to address was, how might selling any properties or acquiring a specific property such as Pegasus complex impact the tax revenue to the district? By acquiring this property and selling some of the associated properties you would not require anymore, there's actually a significant benefit to the district just on the land values alone, not projecting future improvements on any assets that were sold. For example, some of the lots that you have, we have portable buildings. We did not assume that a beautiful multifamily complex or an office tower was built on that and then taxed that value. We just assumed the standard tax values on the land. That's again, to create a more conservative model on the overall. And again, to make sure we are rooted in real market data, we looked at your peer group. What are the efficiencies and how are they managing their portfolios? State of Texas, average usable square foot per full-time employee, 225 square feet. Dallas, right now, is approximately 450. Dallas, independent school district, rather, is at 450 square feet per staff. So we've moved you towards the best practice in the industry and all these assumptions. I'm going to ask Jerry to come and talk about why we focused specifically on the Pegasus complex after a detailed market search.
Quick question. If I may, Mr. President.
If we don't mind, we'll go through...
Actually, it's an important question as it relates to...
Well, I appreciate it. Hold on. Let's go through the rest of the presentation, and then you'll have the first question. Thank you. Continue. Please continue.
It's a reference question?
Go ahead.
No, no, no. We're going to keep the presentation going, and that will be the first question. So thank you, Jerry.
Well, and the question is, how did we arrive, and how did we identify the Pegasus complex as an alternative, as we discussed this evening? So one of the assignments in the beginning was to understand the delineated area for the district, and that was our search area for a building. Another criteria for the area was a building that could accommodate 200,000 to 300,000 square foot of space for administrative space. But also, the property, or the successful candidate property, would also have attributes and amenities that would address other uses for the district, whether that was community space, education space, or even some service space. And so, with that criteria, we identified over 13 different properties within the school district that had the 200,000 to 300,000 square foot of space. Of those, six had the parking. And the parking was a big driver, simply from the standpoint, as we've all learned, you know, from an employee perspective, everyone likes to drive their car in Dallas. So it was 3 to 6 per thousand was what our criteria was for the successful candidate. And so, when we narrowed that down to having the attributes to do other things other than office space, the Pegasus property, which had been an excess property, as I mentioned earlier, for the seller for quite some years, that one seemed to have all of the attributes and amenity. As far as bulk space and the footprint of the property, which is approximately 23 acres, could accommodate 1,395 parking spaces with the ability to add approximately another 200 spaces on the vacant land that comes with the 23 acres. Now, part of what's going on here, and we've highlighted it in yellow, the seller is bifurcating that space, and the survey is still out with the city, has not been approved. So the whole site is approximately 26 acres, and the seller is going to keep their data center. So that's the reason for the outline and trying to understand. So until that it's approved, the property could not be conveyed. So again, that's going through the market search and understanding what's available in the school district. The Pegasus seemed to have the attributes and amenities that would address not only administrative space, but those other uses as well going forward. I don't know if you all can see that, we do have a... Regarding the use of the facility, the Pegasus, it is a 563,000 square foot tower, 18 stories. We subtracted three stories out of that, which left 15. And the reason we did that is the top floor, the 18th floor, is really mechanical and electrical, which is needed for the facility. We also took out of the equation the first and second floor. First floor being the way the building was designed. The building was built in 1970 by Zales Corporation, as there's corporate headquarters. And so, as it says there, the first floor is for storage, security, and those kinds of things. And then, the second floor is really the lobby or entry floor, as all buildings have. And so, we took those three floors out of there, simply from how to understand and look at where the people's space would be located in the building. And so, because that left 15 floors, and each floor is approximately 33,000 square foot, we tried to understand, you know, based on the work that Peter's group had done, we just used as a target number 230,000 square foot, recognizing that that is somewhat less than what you might need. But the density or the ability, per this plan to my left, of how many employees you could get per floor is one of the drivers to where you could take less space. And again, this is just one scenario that we wanted to look at to give you a what-if, what you could do with the property because of its size. Obviously, that leaves the top eight floors that we don't have a use for, but as the district grows over the years, obviously, that's, you know, either for multiple uses... Now, part of what's going on here, and we've highlighted it in yellow, the seller is bifurcating that space and the survey is still out with the city, has not been approved. So the whole site is approximately 26 acres and the seller is going to keep their data center. So that's the reason for the outline and trying to understand. So until that it's approved, the property could not be conveyed. So again, that's going through the market search and understanding what's available in the school district. The Pegasus seemed to have the attributes and amenities that would address not only administrative space, but those other uses as well going forward. I don't know if you all can see that we do have a... Regarding the use of the facility, the Pegasus, it is a 563,000 square foot tower, 18 stories. We subtracted three stories out of that, which left 15. And the reason we did that is the top floor, the 18th floor, is really mechanical and electrical, which is needed for the facility. We also took out of the equation the first and second floor. First floor being the way the building was designed. The building was built in 1970 by Zales Corporation, as there's corporate headquarters. And so as it says there, the first floor is for storage, security and those kinds of things. And then the second floor is really the lobby or entry floor, as all buildings have. And so we took those three floors out of there simply from how to understand and look at where the people's space would be located in the building. And so because that left 15 floors and each floor is approximately 33,000 square foot, we tried to understand, you know, based on the work that Peter's group had done, we just use as a target number 230,000 square foot, recognizing that that is somewhat less than what you might need, but the density or the ability, per this plan to my left, of how many employees you could get per floor is one of the drivers to where you could take less space. And again, this is just one scenario that we wanted to look at to give you a what-if, what you could do with the property because of its size. Obviously, that leaves the top eight floors that we don't have a use for, but as the district grows over the years, obviously, that's, you know, either for multiple uses, additional expansion, things that we haven't even thought of yet. The price for the property right now is $29 and 12 cents a square foot. And, you know, based on some of the comparables in the marketplace, there were other buildings for sale that we passed over simply because they didn't have the space. The sellers weren't in a position to sell or they didn't have the parking. From a build-to-suit perspective, which Peter has addressed, that $29 and 12 cents a square foot is approximately, you know, 10% of what a new construction cost might be. Now, as Peter mentioned and will point out here in a minute, there is quite a bit, you know, large number of deferred maintenance that needs to be applied to this building and which is the reason behind the seller selling it at the price it's being sold at.
Again, we wanted to ensure that any option presented before acquisition could achieve that efficient and effective workplace to promote the collaboration. And the test fit, as you see on the screen and here in front of you, we had an architect put that together, and the answer is yes emphatically that these, the floors have the capability to achieve the workplace of the future. You can see in the detail here that there are seven different ways to work in terms of conference rooms and ability to collaborate, which is quite a change and achieves that bold stroke to address some of the inefficiencies and ineffective layouts you have today. Beth Moore is going to just talk briefly about workplace strategies, and then we will have a question and answer period.
Great. You thought you guys could get rid of me, but I'm back, so thank you. So just by a little bit of background here and set the stage, workplace strategy, we work with a variety of organizations, public, private, profit, nonprofit, and we're seeing some really radical shifts changing the way people are occupying space. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of background before we got into our specific findings. The first thing is that people are flexible and mobile today. So we know, for example, interviewing, talking to people that work at the district, oftentimes they're in an administrative building, sometimes they're out on campus visiting the schools. So having the flexibility and accommodating folks, but also realizing you don't want to necessarily pay for space that you wouldn't use, that's why we're realizing that utilization has actually changed in the way that people are working. Technology and speed of decision-making have influenced that. Furthermore, as Peter indicated before, if you look across other organizations and where they're trending specifically in your competitive set, but also across the nation, efficiency is increasing. People do not need to have 400, 500, 600 square feet per person spaces anymore because they have technology that's much more efficient. And creating a community and creating a place for people to come together and, you know, collaboration, that term is used a lot, but it can actually drive real value for business and for driving decision-making. If everyone is located in their own silos and fiefdoms, it makes it very difficult for people to see one another, for accountability and transparency and decision-making to take place. So what you see over to the left, we've talked a little bit about that, communication weak across all of the buildings, just given the fact that everyone's distributed. That creates a lot of unsurety on who's making decisions, when decisions are being made. And also, a lot of the assets are not necessarily meant originally for warehousing people. There are a few examples where buildings have been repositioned, whether it was an old grocery store that had been converted, or other spaces that have no access to natural light for people throughout the day, which actually impact their productivity, their health and their morale throughout the workday, which is a big concern. And if you look in the future, one of the things we've heard across the board, the number one priority here is to make sure that students come first. And the ability for people to come together, to break down those silos and to be very effective and productive when they're coming together was the most important thing that we've heard throughout the course of the investigation. I think we can go to the next one. So if we were to look, and we have some of our folks here on the screen, in our visioning session, what we tried to understand was what the vision was for the future. Again, flexible workspaces, access to natural light for people to come together, and also a very consolidated approach to the district facilities so that more people can have access to one another on a regular basis. So this is what some of the spaces look like today when we went and rounded toward. Some secluded hallways, separation and silos with very high cubicle participions and also no access to natural light. Again, this just happens over time. It happens as organizations expand, they need to put people somewhere. It wasn't always intentional, but unfortunately, it's created a lot of barriers and silos in the way people are coming together. Centralized space, again, students and culture being number one priority that we heard throughout everyone and creating greater transparency and access, which also comes into materials that provide glass so that people can see one another, lower cubicles and more places for people to gather. One of the things, and what you'll see over to the right, is Maslow's hierarchy. We like to always talk about that as far as our basic needs being met so that people, when they're coming into work, can not only get the food, water, shelter, in this case, the right temperature, the access to natural light and what meets basic conditions for them to really create, think differently outside the box and come together and at the end of the day, drive value for the students. That, again, I'm restating some of the same things, but bringing people together, breaking down silos is a big part of that. Improving air quality, movement throughout the day and overall health and well-being cannot only create people at the district who want to be at work, but also increase their productivity. If people are healthier, they'll do more good for the students. And just a few recommendations we highlighted up here as far as a consolidation approach. Open layout and flexibility, again, that shows to the floor plan that's highlighted up here, breaking down those walls and creating a much more open layout. We heard a lot of interesting things from employees around health and well-being and an understanding of the food services that are offered to students, replicating those same healthy options to staff, encouraging them to walk around. One of the interesting things around the Pegasus campus, for example, is there's a lot of sidewalked areas, there's a lot of gardens. In fact, it's great for not only administrative staff, but particularly the community and students and teachers to be able to access those facilities, walk around the campus and connect with nature in a different way. And then, again, opening up the work environments and creating flexibility in the spaces as well. When we talk about flexibility, it's not just for administrative staff, but the Pegasus building does afford a lot of large spaces that can be used for teacher training, external community events, and also a way to bring students in and interact more in a different And then just to highlight, again, we work with a lot of different organizations that are going through a change. Our own organization has gone through rapid change in how we're allocating space that's fundamentally changed the way people are working. We have about 25 of our offices opened that have significantly reduced costs and increased employee satisfaction and commitment to the organization.
That concludes the presentation. I'll just comment that when we started this investigation, we didn't know what we'd find in terms of, is there a solution out there for the school district to address significant deferred maintenance issues and significant costs that were about to be incurred to execute a strategy that's really ineffective? And we really feel terrific that the market presented such a wonderful opportunity to address years of inefficient and ineffective portfolio in one bold stroke. So we're excited for the opportunity to present you with this savings opportunity over the next 20 years. Thank you for the engagement. It was terrific and with questions.
Thank you very much, Peter, Beth and Jerry, for all the hard work and for this presentation. Before we get into the questions, I did say that I was going to go to Trustee Jones first for her question and then we'll keep the rounds of questions.
Really just trying to map some things together.
Absolutely.
Really just trying to make sure I had all the right data. So in terms of the financial analysis, do the assumptions include the entirety of the 15 properties that were identified in your report on page 10?
Yes.
So in terms of your net present value savings, you're assuming disposal of all 15?
The point in the model was to show that if you do this consolidation, the opportunity arises for you to dispose of assets. That said, the total revenue opportunity from selling your assets is far less than the savings opportunity. In other words, it's about a $45 million net present value opportunity in disposing of all your assets. That said, if you extract that from the analysis, there's still over $100 million savings, primarily driven by the fact you're going from 1.2 million square feet to significantly reduced square footage.
Right. But I'm looking at dollar-for-dollar sort of trade-offs and how we pay for this. So one of the assumptions was we would dispose of assets, raise capital, or that would free up cash, that would also free up or offset existing maintenance requirements. So I'm just trying to look behind the assumptions and say, what are we talking about here? So you're saying it is these 15, the assumption is that all 15 get taken off our books and are disposed of?
That's correct.
Okay. And for the reference of fellow trustees, that's on page 10. Okay. And then the other thing, there were a couple stages of our work with you all in the sequencing of a process. So I just want to be clear, because that wasn't clear, because we're sort of doing a simultaneous equation right now. Originally, we were going to do the consulting and report and get the analysis around workplace strategies and optimizing sort of our needs, and then we were going to look at options. But right now, we're getting the first report we've never had before on our needs and we're presenting an option. Is that a fair statement?
I think that is a fair statement. When we came before you in June, the timeline that we laid out was that we would run these paths concurrently. Candidly, we would love to present a full report and a strategy, but the way the market presented itself, we're presenting the results concurrently with the option. That was unexpected, but the market drove that process.
Yeah. And I just want to make sure that was clear, because I think for some people that wasn't.
Okay. So we have Trustee Blackburn and Trustee Morath and then Trustee Forman.
Assistant Miles, I believe we have a Facilities Task Force that the board has appointed various people to, and that task force is to look at all of our properties to determine, as I understand it, what direction we need to go as far as addressing those needs. Have we gotten a report from that task force as far as looking at all of our facilities throughout the district?
No, the task force did not look at this facility and this opportunity.
I can specifically say we looked at all administrative assets, all operations assets, all vacant land assets and all vacant structures as part of our analysis. Schools were excluded from our analysis.
It's apparent that schools were excluded. And I'm asking, maybe I need some clarification. The Facilities Task Force wasn't only to look at schools and not administrative buildings?
The charge of the Future Facilities Task Force, which has been meeting since October and will continue this coming year, is to look at our programs for the future and future facilities related to the operation of our schools and could be administrative buildings as well. But their focus will be on a comprehensive plan that includes programs such as pre-K, school choice and facilities. That's their charge and, yeah, and school choice, and that's their charge.
So it sounds like that group is to look at facilities other than administrative facilities. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that that's correct, but that's not off limits, but it is correct.
And that other group, the Future Facilities Task Force, I believe is a segue into a possible bond program to fund those facilities. Is that correct?
Bond or tier, yes.
Okay. How do we anticipate paying for administrative buildings if we're not going to use a bond funding source?
Jim, you want to answer that question? I could do it, but you'll be much more accurate.
Well, you remember this, during the year, I designated $25 million to be designated for purchase of administrative complex, our building. And so the $25 million is already in our financial. This building here, the purchase price negotiated right now is $20 million. So that'll be another $5 million. Now, it is going to need additional renovations, so we have the $5 million there. We would then expect to spend, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of probably close to $8 million over the next five years. We certainly would have to come back to the board for that, and that would take care of the building.
Make sure I understand. The building is for sale at $20 million.
Correct.
And you're estimating that it's going to take $8 million over five years in renovation?
Correct.
And that information or that analysis is coming from where?
Well, that actually was given in the book that you received last Friday. Actually, it was the week before that, in the book that we gave you on the assessed value, and behind it was the report showing you phasing in the renovations of the building and showed you the cost of the building at $20.
Okay, let me ask it another way. $8 billion is going to pay for what over five years?
I'm sorry, can I raise a point of information on this question? Because I'm looking at this scenario too, and what I see in here is $16 million a year allocated over five years for a total occupation cost of $90 million, which I would assume it would include the 20 to 25 to run in. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same things. So is this different than what Jim's talking about?
No, no, it's not different. And the point of clarification is when I was laying out my assumptions, I explained we took the most conservative approach possible. And so there's a due diligence period coming up that will refine some of those numbers, but we assume the maximum amount of costs possible allocated to this facility in this initial period to make sure that we were not presenting to the trustees and to the taxpayers an assumption that was overly optimistic.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn, for that.
That's a wide range, $8 million to $90 million.
That's, he was talking to $8 million per year, and we were talking about $90 million in total.
Just a wide range, $40 million to $90 million.
Will you include the $25 million in the cost? He's including the $25 million in the cost. In your comparison, it would be $60 million to $95 million.
So let me go back to the $8 million over five years. How much do you estimate we're going to have to spend for renovation the first year before we move in, and what would that cover?
$8 million, and it would cover the first seven floors. That's, we think, is a conservative.
Okay. What is $8 million going to pay for? That's what I'm trying to get to.
Well, ADA, and I'm not familiar with all the other items that were in the cost. Wanda, that's probably where Wanda's area could answer.
Form me to the page that's in this book that you have in front of us. Form me to the page that I need to go to. Pull me to the page that I need to go to.
Yeah, he would be in the back.
Just walk up there.
Well, I guess my line of question is, we're talking about $20 million for the building, and, and Wanda Paul, you and I took a, took a tour of the 18th floor, and there's a lot of work to be done on the 18th floor.
Okay, hold on one second. Yeah, okay, Dr. Blackburn.
I'm, I only took an eyeball. I was only there for an hour and a half or so. The 18th floor is going to take a lot of work, and I thought I heard just a little while ago that it's going to take about 20 or so million dollars of renovation. So I'm hearing different numbers. So someone, someone guided me or guided us into knowing, besides the $20 million purchase, what else is it going to cost to move in?
Well, I mean, the fact is that the building has some deferred maintenance issues. The priority that we would place is on bringing it up to ADA. That would be the tower building. Americans with Disabilities Act, bringing it up to those standards. So there's some definitely carpet issues, painting, that sort of thing to, to make it move in ready. There's deferred maintenance on the, the cooling tower that we would need to take care of, as you saw. Some roof maintenance, some penetrations, water penetration. So it's typical of a building that size or that age. So we, we looked at several things, and one of the issues is to configure the space to, to make it usable for us.
Okay. In comparison to our schools that may have roof problems or may, that may have deferred maintenance, and quite often when I tell you about some maintenance issue at our schools, you talk about priorities. Where does this fit in our priority for the district as far as our facilities, as far as our maintenance needs?
Well, I think it's a great opportunity for us to look at some of the older buildings that we have that have tremendous needs as
Older school buildings?
Administrative buildings I'm talking about.
Okay.
That were identified in the Parsons report with a lot of deficiencies. So this is, you know, this is talking administrative building, not necessarily campuses. We have $15 million that the board graciously voted for deferred maintenance this past year, and so we're addressing some of those deferred maintenance needs. And then the future facilities task force is tasked to look at some of those needs that we have. So I would say that some of the things that we see with this particular complex is consistent with a, a building of that age, but I would also say that the Exxon Corporation had a very aggressive maintenance program for the building.
It's in the appraisal.
So I think, I think there are a lot of opportunities with this building.
We sent it out there one time with the appraisal.
I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Well, I guess my, my real angst right now is that in the past, we have talked about a comprehensive plan of sorts. We need a comprehensive plan for early childhood, a comprehensive plan for this, a comprehensive plan for that. I'm not hearing that we have developed a comprehensive plan for our buildings, not just administrative buildings, not just the schools, but across the district. That's what I'm not hearing. Am I missing it somewhere?
Well, I think that when you look at the fact that we had such a huge backlog in deferred maintenance and we're making strides to create a process to handle our deferred maintenance over time. So as I alluded to before, the first $15 million that the board graciously gave us, that, that changes culture, and we are being very aggressive in dealing with our deferred maintenance issues. Some of our buildings are way older than this complex that we're, we're looking at. So, you know, I don't, I don't think, you know, schools come first, so there's no doubt in our minds about that, but we also have a situation where we have aging administrative buildings that are at the end of their life cycle, and we have to make decisions whether we make it now or next year, but a decision has to be made about them.
Are we making those same types of decisions for our aging schools where our kids are located?
I think we are, yes.
And we're going to do the administration first?
Well, I don't think it's whether we do the administration first, you know, it's the need.
But this would be doing it first.
Well, I mean, we have still 2008 bond on a downward trend. We have Joe May that we're still building, so I think you can see that the board and the administration in the past have made attempts to bring our campuses up, but we're a huge district and we can't do it all at one time. So this is just, you know, if I'm speaking out of turn, tell me, but this is just one part of it.
Well, I guess, I guess, you know, in the, the big scheme of things, we always talk about kids first, children first, schools first. We talk about, you know, how we're going to make the learning environment the best that we can. I understand the need for an administrative building. I understand that. I also understand the need to talk about a comprehensive facilities plan. We did the Parsons, I mean, I don't, I don't recall if the Parsons ranked which building we should attack first or repair first or replace first. I don't know if, if the administrative buildings had a higher whatever number that you guys were looking at. I don't, I, I just don't, help me understand why we have an urgent need.
Well, some of our administrative buildings that we currently occupy have some of the highest facility condition indexes in the report.
Schools are the same way.
Well, yeah, typically, schools come first, and so we
Typically.
No, here, schools have come first, you know, and, you know, we, we, I think in the history of the district, as trustee Forman said, you have to understand the history before you can, so you won't repeat the mistakes.
The history
We have not, we have not, as evidenced by the, the condition of our buildings, administrative buildings, we have not kept them up, and they have been the last ones to, to be looked at, and the FCI has kind of proved that.
My guess is that we have not done a comprehensive plan for our facilities district wide. I understand you guys were tasked to only look at the administrative building. That's the only thing the administration asked you to look at. I'm saying to Superintendent Miles is, have we looked at how we're going to look at all of our facilities, not just administrative buildings, but also the schools where our students are located? Because I pass by schools on a regular basis where we have lots of portables. We have more classrooms in portable than we have in, in the main building. And, and then when I think about this opportunity, and I, I'll admit, it's a nice building, but I think it's going to cost us more than what you guys are telling us. And, and it sounds like the, the guesstimates that you're giving us are just guesstimates. And I know you're trying to be conservative and say, well, it's going to cost $90 million in all. It's just that my walk through the building tells me, it's, it's going to cost $20 million to buy it, at least $20 million to renovate before we move in, and then you talk about the, the new furniture that's going to go in, the technology that has to go in, a, a whole host of other things. I'm, I'm just gravely concerned about the, the total cost, not just over, over 20 years, but right now. And then Jim, you still didn't finish telling me how we're going to pay for it. We set aside $25 million. This building's going to cost $20 million. It's going to cost us more than $5 million to renovate this building, just to move into half of it. Just to move into half of it, because the 18th floor is going to have to be repaired no matter what portion of the building you occupy between the 18th and the second floor. The 18th floor will have to be taken care of. There are some serious problems on the 18th floor, and, and trustees, that's the roof. That's the roof.
The advantage on the, on the, on the roof on the 18th floor is that it's not, it's not an expansive roof. It has a very small footprint.
What else is on the roof?
Well, you have your, as I said before, you have your cooling towers and of course the chillers and so forth.
And we saw some problems with that cooling tower.
You know, it's indicative of, of a building that size or that age. So we do have some, some challenges, but we have a lot more challenges also in the current buildings that we're occupying.
So assuming that we were going to replace those two cooling towers, brand new, how much would that cost?
Well, see, and that's a discretion that we have, that we could possibly retrofit and not replace. And so, you know, so again, you know, the advantage is that Exxon did have a very aggressive maintenance program in maintaining the building, but as you know, that some things just are at the end of their life cycle, so.
So this is take care of administrators first, and we'll
No, that's not what I'm saying, Dr. Blackburn.
No, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. When we look at administrative building, we're going to pay $20 million, maybe $40 million, maybe $50 million. This is now, tonight, we're talking about voting on the building for administrators, for the administration.
Well, it's a Dallas Education Center, so it would allow us to do multiple things with the building.
Wanda Paul. We're voting to buy a building. I don't care what you call it.
Complex, yes.
I don't care what you're going to do with it. We're buying a building for administrators. We will not have classes here if we have teachers that are going to come there for some professional development, which we don't have much of anyway. So we're talking about building for administration. I don't care how you couch it, it's for administrators, it is not for children. That's my point, it is not for children. We have so many schools that have so much need. Talk to Roosevelt, talk to Pinkson, talk to South Oak Cliff.
You're, you're absolutely right. Don't forget the bottom, the bottom line is it's going to save us money. It's going to give us money to save us money into it.
Jim, Jim, Jim.
Talk to too many other principals, talk to too many parents where we are overcrowded, where we have kids in portables going in and out in this flu season. I'm just saying, we're going to take care of administrators first. That's what this is doing, taking care of administrators. That's the only people that's going to be in there, Jim, Paul.
No, this is, this is about saving money.
Jim and Wanda.
Save money on the kids. We've already closed schools to save money.
Their other trustees.
We closed 10, 11 schools to save money. I know about saving money, Jim. I know what we can do to save money, Jim. We can save money by retrofitting some of these schools. We can save money by tearing down some of these old schools, building new schools. That's how we can save money also, Jim. Start with the schools, start with the kids.
Trustee Morath?
Yeah, if I can, I'd like to pick up where trustee Blackburn was, because I was similarly frustrated by the lack of response to the question. The, the building, and I'm going to get to a couple of specific financial questions for you all, but the building, we've, we've got $184 million savings from this. This allows us to plow a great deal of money into classrooms. But, but trustee Blackburn's question, as I understood it, was we, we, we as a board already voted to authorize $25 million for financing for this, for the actual acquisition. That's, that's already happened. It happened last year when we approved the budget. The, the question that I believe Dr. Blackburn was asking, correct me if I'm wrong, is what do we do with the, all of the, how do we fund all the renovation work that's going to have to happen in addition to this? And I didn't, I didn't really get an answer to that, to that question. Give me just a second. So I, I do see very conservative renovation estimates in here to the tune of something like $16 million a year, although I think that, that includes some of the 25, is that right? Does that include some of the purchase price? Because there's just an amortization schedule of five years.
That's right. So we put up a total schedule for every dollar that's identified.
All the 91 million, which includes the 25 million that we're going to pay upfront.
Right.
Okay, so clearly, we're not spending $16 million a year, because that's coming out of, out of the upfront fee. So you've got very conservative cash flow burden in here, but it, it could be, it could be eight by Jim's estimate or up to whatever 16 minus the, the delta on the 25 is. And so the, the question I think Dr. Blackburn was getting at was, where is that money going to come from if it's not being evaluated by the future facilities task force, if this project isn't being evaluated by the future facilities task force for potential inclusion in a, in a TRE, which would, which would come out of our operating budget, or a potential allocation by a bond? So if I can, if I can offer just a suggestion, which it would be that, that you'd actually do include the scope of this renovation project in the future facilities task force's workflow, just because that is a fairly substantial capital investment, and, and that will answer the, the core prioritization question that trustee Blackburn and I think all of us agree with. There's no question that this is about, this is going to save us money. The question is, is as we schedule the renovations, what school projects get delayed versus accelerated because of that? So that's the reason why I think it makes a great deal of sense to, to include this in consideration with the, the future facilities task force work. Did I capture Dr. Blackburn, because I don't want to put words in your mouth, I just, that, that I thought was a, a very important point that you made.
Well, it would have required a simple answers beyond the 25 million, how we're going to pay for the renovation.
Right, which, which we haven't, which we haven't really got an answer for yet.
Still have not.
Do you actually, do you even know the answer tonight? Because I don't know that you necessarily do. Are you, are you just going to include it in future year budgets? Are you going to, are you going to do an MNO supported bond?
$25 million we have, $20 million for the, for the building, $5 million we would then use for renovations. We could use another, I would make a recommendation, we use $3 million out of our maintenance. That $8 million would put us into the building, and then, right, the rest of the money, which would be approximately $34 million would come back to you at $8 million a year for the next four years.
And so that would just be part of our annual approval of the MNO?
Correct.
So that, I think, answers Dr. Blackburn's basic question. So back to some of my, which I thought was a pretty critical question. So back to a couple of my very technical questions, I apologize, I didn't have a chance to like email you in advance
Sure.
Some of these. But in the, in the executive summary, it notes a $2.5 million operating budget savings annually by doing this, and I was looking at page 43 of the untitled big book.
Did you get the version from, from last night, or is this the Friday?
This is the one that came in the Friday packet.
Okay.
And so this is the
And your, and your question?
Well, the, the question was, I didn't actually notice where that $2.5 million savings was accounted for on this, and there's very broad categories here, so I was just wondering where that fell.
Right, so that, that's the summary page there on, on 43, and we're getting you an updated book, because I think those numbers are a little dated.
Okay.
But the essential methodology is that today, although we know it's not the case, we charitably assume that you operate all of your 1.2 million square feet at the efficient BOMA standard, which is approximately $6 a square foot annually.
Which is of course conservative.
Yes, very conservative, and you're operating at a much more expensive level.
That's where you get the $2.5 million savings from.
Right, so it's a minimum of two and a half.
What I'm trying to figure out is where that shows up in this column two for the, for the cost savings, for the, the costs associated with Pegasus project, because I just, I just don't see $2.5 million offset in here anywhere.
Right, that'll be in the, in the detailed cash flow statement in the appendix of, of the book there, and it's going to be on page 160, or 171, if I'm not mistaken, of the book there to your left. But the, the essential savings is you're shedding 400,000 square feet of occupied space, and, and that's a minimum of
Yeah, I get it. I just, I'm looking at the, the net present value of occupancy, and that's the thing that, that drives the $184 million, and I, the $2.5 million savings is already built into that number?
Oh, yes.
It's not in addition to it.
No, it's not in addition. That's, that's total occupancy costs, and it's all included in that.
Okay, and so the, the next question I have is that the, the $214 million renovation estimate for our as-is model, so if we do nothing tonight?
Yeah.
We're going to spend over the course of the next, the next 20 years, $445 million, which has a present value of 311, of which 214 or so is renovation cost. And just to make sure that I understood the model that you, you used, that was to maintain our current facility condition index from the Parsons recommendation?
That, that's, that's taking the Parsons recommendations
Right.
And applying to your portfolio today.
So that doesn't actually improve any of our administrative facilities? That just means that
That's right. You're just fixing today's issues.
As holes form in the, in the floors, those things are going to get fixed.
That's correct.
And that's, that's the $214 million cost that we have over the course of the next 20 years.
Right. Right.
And so, if we, if we just make an extraordinarily conservative assumption, that says that we're only, we're actually going to let all of our administrative buildings deteriorate around us, so that the facility condition gets massively worse, and we only do sort of half of the projects that would be estimated, we're still looking at a net present value savings, it's in excess of $50 million, if I just do some very simple mathematics on this. So, this is essentially a point, I think, for us to consider, is that no matter, no matter what set of assumptions you use on this, even as assumptions that say we never invest in the administration ever again, by us taking action tonight, we're saving a huge amount of money for the taxpayers that can be then plowed into our schools. So, it was just a, it was a key takeaway that I got from the financials, that I thought was important for us to consider as we do this. Clearly, saving 184 million, 186 million, I can't remember exactly, is a huge win for the taxpayers, and allows us to free up a lot of resources. So, thank you and your team for your work, Jim and the administration, thank you guys for your work. I'm glad that we found this opportunity, I will definitely be voting in favor of this motion when it comes.
Okay, trustee Foreman, and then trustee Mitchkey.
Thank you. I have a few questions, and then a comment.
Please.
The first question is, looking at this book, the newest one, we got on page nine. The total cost of occupancy is $158,000.
So, you're looking at the column B there, purchase Pegasus, nominal cost of occupancy? $158 million?
$158 million, yeah. It's $158 million, correct?
Yes, to own, improve, and occupy the facility for 20 years.
Okay, and this is a 60-year-old building, correct?
No, that's incorrect.
What's, how old is the building?
Yeah, 45 years old, which compares to the average age of the Dallas current facilities of over 60 years old.
Okay, so it's a 45-year-old building, built in 1970?
Seventy, yes.
Another question that I have, and maybe Wanda can help me with this. One of the things is, when I looked at the workplace strategies, it spoke extensively about actually looking at more alternatives, like people working from home. So, if we are talking about fewer people working from the office, why are we needing more space?
Well, I think that was just one of the strategies that they looked at across the marketplace, don't let me speak for you. But I know that you can't turn a wrench from your home, so that really is not applicable to what we do.
But, I can only go by what I read?
No, I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you wanted to?
Yes, I can certainly answer that. I think, you know, a lot of companies are thinking about work-from-home programs as part of their overall employee benefit compensation, so it's more around flexibility, so that people can work, not necessarily just from home, but have the ability to spend more time at schools and campuses, have the technology in order to do that, but really creating a place that people want to be and can come together, I think is one of our, one of our key fundamental strategies as part of this option.
And then, I looked at the project goals on page 60 of the book that I got Friday. Page 60, page 60, six zero.
And you said the parking goals, I'm sorry?
The project.
Project goals.
Goals.
Thank you.
And one of the things that concerned me, it spoke nothing about better enhancing the education of our children. Spoke more about creating a workplace for adults, to be more comfortable. We're in the business of educating students. You know who I want to be comfortable? The students. In case you don't know, I'm in the southern sector of Dallas. I got none of those new schools. So, I've got a lot of old schools, and that's trustee Blackburn's concern, is that we've got a lot of schools that need work. So, that spoke nothing to that. I know that district employees receive mileage, and as you probably know, this district is comprised of 17 cities. The furthest south is probably going to be Wilmer. Now, can you imagine going from 35 in Commonwealth to Wilmer, as compared from going from Haskell on 30 to Wilmer? That's a longer distance. And so, we are encompassing more miles. Cities like Cockrell Hill, Cedar Hill, Segalville, Hutchins, Lancaster, then let's go north to Carrollton, Farmers Branch, Addison, and so forth and so on. I have some concerns about one centralized location. This is a big district. And centralized, a lot of companies are decentralizing, and we're talking about centralizing. That's a problem for me. And this is to staff, this is not to you guys. With all the money that we've spent on technology in the last couple of years, millions, millions, why do we need a bunch of people sitting in the space looking at each other? I don't think we do. Not for collaboration, and not to get a better job done. I always have interest in raising employee morale, but I have a greater concern for the employees that are closest to our children. That includes teachers, counselors, janitors, school office workers, cafeteria workers, et cetera. You know, the people that see our children every day. We need to be thinking more about them. We've got several issues. Students with not enough textbooks, overcrowded classrooms, not enough teachers, deferred maintenance on many of our buildings. And we're talking about spending upwards of $158 million on a building where I think we should be considering, as we do, our school buildings, putting it on a bond program, and letting the voters decide. The voters need to make this decision. While we talk about how much money we can save, we're not really talking about the real cost of occupancy for this building. It's an estimate. I understand that. Trustees, this is a big decision. This is a huge decision. And while some of the trustees will vote for anything that the administration brings forward, we've got to be prudent with the taxpayers' money. And we should allow the taxpayers to make this decision. With that said, I'm going to make a motion that this particular issue of purchasing an administrative building be put on the bond program, the Future Facilities Task Force, and allow the voters to make the decision.
Okay, so just before we move on to that particular motion as amended, I want to make sure that we structure it the right way to be able to cast a vote for it. So, just clarifying question, trustee Foreman, are you asking that the language as it is on the agenda item at the moment be added to the Future Facilities Task Force consideration? Or are you asking to postpone this indefinitely, which essentially kills this motion, and then give the direction to some, to the Future Facilities Task Force, the administration, to consider this building and this strategy moving forward?
It's actually not a motion, it's just language, so that's not a motion. Nobody's made that motion yet.
What is your motion to amend?
My motion is, excuse me, my motion is, is that we, we as the board instruct the Future Facilities Task Force to look at and put on the ballot, when it comes forward, an administration building.
So, just within the technical confines of how we're operating at the moment, your motion can't be captured in the motion that we are voting on at the moment. It can't, it could be captured by you saying, "We want to postpone this indefinitely," which means, from a parliamentary standpoint, kill the discussion of this, we're not going to vote on this tonight, and then what you would do is you would, we would, in essence, have a conversation at some point with the administration to say, "You need to do what you're asking us to do." But the motion itself, as you're proposing, you said you want to make a motion.
Yes, and what I'm saying is, is that what you're reading from, nobody has motioned that, and it hasn't been a second, if I'm correct.
There was a second.
Yeah, it has. We've moved and seconded it?
Oh, I missed that.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
But I understand the spirit, I understand the spirit of your motion, and you can capture what you're trying to do by postponing indefinitely, is essentially what you're asking to do.
That's fine.
Okay, a motion to postpone indefinitely, and we, is that seconded by trustee Notall? Okay, motion to postpone indefinitely, and it's seconded by trustee Notall. Before we take a vote on that or have a conversation, I just want to make sure that trustees are aware of a motion to postpone indefinitely, and how many votes it takes to make that happen. So, from a parliamentary inquiry standpoint, can you make sure that we all know how many votes it would take for us to postpone this indefinitely? Fay?
To postpone indefinitely, you need a majority vote.
Okay, majority vote, five votes. Okay, do we have any questions about postponing indefinitely? We'll start with trustee Bingham, and then we'll go to trustee Morath.
Yeah.
Did you say that? No, because they didn't speak today.
But we, this is a motion, okay? Just to clarify, this is a motion to postpone indefinitely. It's a higher-ranking motion than the motions that we're currently discussing right now. That means, we will pick back up if this motion fails after we take a vote on this motion, but we can discuss the motion to postpone indefinitely at this moment. The discussion will start with trustee Bingham, and then it's followed by trustee Morath.
So, I want to make, I want to be really clear, if this motion passes, this essentially kills this whole deal. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
A seller will move on to the next buyer next month.
Okay, it goes to the next buyer?
Correct.
So, there's not time for this to go before the public in a bond, which we haven't even put a bond issue?
No, ma'am.
We're not even considering it. Okay, thank you.
And just to also clarify, too, this motion to postpone indefinitely can be accomplished as well by going back to the main motion and us voting yes or no for this particular motion, but we can operate, we can do it this way as well. So, we have a motion to postpone indefinitely, trustee Bingham, now trustee Morath.
I just, we've already actually approved, this is maybe a Jim or a legal question, we've already approved $25 million for this project. It's in the, it's in the budget. So, the, the, the funding for the actual acquisition has already been set aside by the board. Doesn't require future budget amendments, or does it require future budget amendments? That's kind of the legal question. Since it's been set aside, it's basically already there, right? Yeah. So, not only would we be losing this particular building, the money for the actual acquisition has already been approved by this board, so it doesn't, doesn't seem to make any sense to me to have a $184 million savings to the taxpayer go poof over this. So, I will be voting against that motion.
Okay. Trustee Jones?
Thank you. Number of things, first of all, Future Facilities Task Force is an administrative body, it is not a public-facing body, it is not currently operating under Open Meetings Act or any other related requirements, and none of the people were specifically vetted as part of the traditional process of how we put boards and commissions together. But that being said, I'm concerned about a number of items as it relates to tonight's issue. First of all, we never, this board set aside money to deal with its administrative assets, potentially. It did not automatically say that money should be spent on a specific project at a specific time. Second of all, Parsons indicated there were a number of deficiencies across the district in three major categories. We segregated those categories so that we could analyze them based on different strategies and options that are available to you in each of the categories, schools being one, administrative assets being another, and the third being the sports complexes. And the reason for that is because administrative assets should never cost a district money. They actually should be net contributors of value, if they're done right. They're supportive assets, but clearly, the ones we have have not met our needs and are severely diminished. But, the question tonight is really a very complicated one, and I feel rushed as it relates to this particular decision. Whether we consolidate into one building, or we do a revitalization strategy that may include multiple buildings across a long geography of 380 square miles, is a question we've not undertaken. I think our, we've done the first steps, and important steps, and CBRE has done an excellent job, as has Workforce Strategies, in helping us to start to understand the complexity of how we would design a strategy, but this board has yet to actually approve a strategy, and that concerns me equally. I'm really torn. I understand opportunities for specific assets, especially the kind that we need, are not readily available, but that presupposes this question that all of our needs can be met by one building, as opposed to looking at alternative strategies that say, we may want a distributed approach with some centralization to cure a number of deficiencies we have in a large percentage of our administrative assets. So, I would appreciate some thought around that, because right now, it's an all or nothing, and that's never a good place for any of us to be.
Before we go into a further conversation on that particular issue, I think there is a matter that needs to be resolved with the postponing indefinite, with postponing this motion indefinitely. Again, from a parliamentary standpoint, postponing indefinitely, we can, we can discuss wanting to postpone this or not, we can achieve the same thing by going back to the main motion, having a conversation, ensuring everybody has a voice at the table, and then taking an up or down vote to approve this purchase. So, I would ask the trustees that we make a decision at the moment to determine whether we want to postpone indefinitely, a conversation that we were already having, or not, and go back to the main motion, so we can continue the conversation, to take a straight up or down vote on the merits of the actual agenda item that we're voting on. So, trustees, I'd ask that we would vote on this motion to postpone indefinitely, so we can resolve that issue. If the vote passes to postpone this indefinitely, that means we stop the discussion and this thing dies. Or, if we vote to not postpone, if you vote nay, we go back to the main motion and we can continue the conversation and have an up or down vote on the merits of the agenda item. Trustees, all those in favor of postponing this agenda item indefinitely?
Is it all?
Vote no.
You said vote no.
Okay, hold on.
Wait, you said vote no.
All those in favor of postponing the conversation around this agenda item indefinitely, you will vote yes. If you do not want to postpone the conversation indefinitely and go back to the main motion, you will vote nay. Please cast your votes.
Ms. Jones, are you going to vote?
No.
Okay.
The motion fails, three voting yes, and six voting no.
Okay, we're now back to the main motion. Trustee Foreman, we left off with you.
I felt pressured into that.
I felt pressured into that particular motion, because that wasn't the motion I wanted to make. What I was saying and still believe to be true is, is that, as trustee Jones, I feel extremely rushed into making a 158 million dollar decision. We got this when? At the briefing?
Yes, you got it at the, the briefing after the meeting. I gave you the assessed value and also the financials showing the purchase price of 42 million with the, I mean, the purchase price of 25 million and the 42 million dollars for renovations. It was in the back of that first book that I gave you after the board briefing. I then, a week later, provided you with the book that was just handed out. And then again, last night, for those who showed up at the, at the board meeting, I handed out a, updated to that book, and the rest of you got, I believe, when you, I don't know when Dino sent those out, this morning or tonight?
We got them when we got you.
The update, so.
So actually.
There should be three books.
December the first is when the board knew about this, correct?
Yes.
December the first.
Was the board briefing the second or the first?
First, second? Close enough. Close enough. You were fourth?
You received it on the floor.
Correct.
Okay. And, and my concern remains that to handle the facilities for our students, major facilities, construction, comes through a bond program. Trustee Mitch K., I know you remember my fight for Truitt. Through a bond program. Trustee Cowan, I know you remember my fight for Greiner. Through a bond program. Excellent schools needing work that came through a bond program. But now we are considering 158 million, and we don't even know how we're going to pay for it.
I would suggest from a financial point of view that I believe that it will, would be considered, and that's what's called a, the next time we go in a bond, and if it's within the next three years, we can do a, um, a bond payback, is another word I'm looking for. But what it would allow us to do is to put it on the ballot, and then it would allow us to bring the money back to the general fund to pay for, pay for the, the building and the renovations. Reimbursement is called a reimbursement resolution that you could do when you, next time you go out in the bond, as long as it's within the next three years. And that's what we've done before. Also, I want to mention, I received a call approximately five o'clock from the seller who informed me that their process in selling this, um, this property is to transfer it over to their, um, foundation, and then their foundation would then sell it to us. So I just want to make sure. I became aware of this tonight, I want to make you aware of it. So those are two comments from finance side.
Jim?
Yes, I'm sure it's a tax reason that they're doing it.
Before you go, um, one of the questions that I've consistently asked you at board meetings when, when we looked at our financials, we're running at a $25 million deficit.
Currently?
Currently, we're running at a $25 million deficit, and we have been.
Right.
And I consistently ask you about that.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And I think if you look at last year's financial statement, it's probably approximately the same amount that we were running the previous year and the previous year before that, so.
Wasn't here. I'm only looking at what's in front of me.
Right. You're correct.
Question. On our, um, fine, we're at 311 million?
No, we're at 300 and, um, 342 million.
342 and 147 million?
143 million, QSCB will be due in the year 2033.
Okay, so we, we pretty much just set that to the side, right?
We've accounted for it in our books.
Okay, what that mean?
We've accounted for it in our books.
So that means we set it aside?
I don't know, you know, um, I guess I don't know quite how to answer that.
I figured that.
I'm too much of an accountant.
Yeah.
So what I've done is.
And I'm too much of a rookie.
Because what we, what we do is we put it in the general fund, there's other ways to do it, but it's, it behooves us in our best interest in terms of the amount of money that we can earn on investments by investing it, is that we note that it's reserved, but the cash is still there, and we invest that cash, which allows us to earn, right now, on the money that we've set aside, we're earning over 5% return on the money that we're, we're building up, which is, in this day and age, is, is, is pretty, pretty terrific return, so.
I only, and I'm, I'm gonna leave at this. Trustees, once again, I remind you that this is a hefty investment. And this board has caught a lot of heat from the public on making unwise decisions. This is a quick decision that you're being asked to make. For those who vote with the administration no matter what, you won't change. I'm appealing to the people on this board who have some sense of direction, some sense of community, some sense of understanding what you're about to vote on. And I'm asking you to work with me to make sure that this is put on a bond package for an administration facility, and if the voters vote for it, then I'll be with it. Other than that, I will not.
Trustee Mitch K.?
Oh, thank you. Let me say, I don't care about the analysis that talks about how it would be better, there'd be better lighting in the administrative building compared to what we've got. And I don't care about the silos. If, if it's cheaper to have people operate in silos, I'm okay with that. I don't mind having administrators in the old Safeway building or in portables. I'd much rather have all the kids in classrooms and all the administrators in portables, if we could do it that way. The only reason why I would consider doing this is, is if we could save costs. We can save administrative costs. That's the only reason to do it. If we can save administrative costs, then we can put those costs, those savings back into the schools. If we can't save, save on what we're paying for administrative buildings, then we shouldn't do it, regardless of all the aesthetics that, you know, were covered. So for me, it's just dollars. And as I look at this, this scenario here, I'm trying to understand all, all of the numbers. But let me, let me, let me, let me start by asking a question of CBRE. If we purchase this building, will you, will you earn a broker's commission or any other type of compensation?
Yes. Yes, the answer is yes.
And what would that compensation be?
I don't have the exact figure in front of me, but it's.
It's 2.1% or approximately $420,000.
And if we don't purchase a building, what do we pay you?
Zero.
Well, yeah, zero on the, there was an agreed-upon fee for, for the consulting work, but there was, there's no fee, there's no purchase for the commission side.
Okay, let's go over the projections. What you're saying is that, um, over the next 20 years, we're looking at 20-year projections, that our total cost of occupancy would be 420 million, and discounted back to present value would be 296 million?
That's correct.
If we do nothing?
That's correct. And keep in mind, that doesn't address any improvements to the space that may be necessary to, to address the, the actual efficiency or effectiveness. So that's just addressing deferred maintenance and operations. And one additional comment, we've, we've given the district the benefit of the doubt that all administrative facilities are operated according to BOMA standards, which we know is considerably lower than how you're operating facilities today, based on your actual cash flows. So I can, I believe that number is actually low because of how inefficiently the portfolio operates today. But we've given the district the benefit of the doubt that you're able to address that.
If we own this building, and I, how many administrative build, administration buildings are we talking about consolidating in your projections?
There's, there's a key, key set of approximately 10 buildings. There are, there are portions of other buildings that would be considered for consolidation, and, and that's why in, in our analysis of the Pegasus complex, we've assumed you've improved the first seven floors, because we know there's a key need for those administrators today, and we haven't assumed that you've improved the whole building. And, I mean, there's capacity for almost 3,000 people there, so you don't have 3,000 staff members at this point.
Okay, so if we, if we're, I guess what the public needs to understand is, why is it, if we own all of these buildings, free and clear, outright, why isn't it free for us to just stay where we are? Why, why does it cost, in your projections, 420 million, or, and then discounted to present value, 296 million over 20 years, to stay in facilities that we already own?
These are all the costs that were identified by the Parsons report, in terms of what it would take to get your facilities to a safe and, and where all the deferred maintenance has been addressed over that 20-year period. So these are the costs identified by Parsons, and what it would take to address all the life safety issues and deferred maintenance issues that you have today. And the second comment on that is that you do own the assets outright, free and clear, but they do have associated operating expenses. And so the opportunity is, is essentially to save a couple dollars per square foot on what you occupy on an annual basis. And that was the, the number that trustee Morath and I were discussing earlier, the two and a half million dollars a year, just in annual savings, by getting to a more effective and efficient footprint. So it, it said another way, with your current base of staff, 1.2 million square feet is, is double what you effectively need in, in a modern work environment. So you, you are operating today in a very inefficient capacity.
So you're saying if we stay where we are and don't do anything, we're looking at 296 million dollars, present, discounted to present value at 296 million? Since we're not looking at zero, we're looking at 296 million?
That's right. It's an important point, that over 20 years, your occupancy is not free. Your current trajectory is on a very inefficient trajectory, and this consolidation offers the opportunity, in a bold stroke, albeit, to address all those inefficiencies.
The, what is that 296 million comprised of? The 296 million of costs of staying where we are, we do nothing, what is that comprised of?
All the deferred maintenance, the cost of operating these facilities, those two items. So it doesn't, it doesn't address potential renovations to make your space better, there's no assumptions in there that would say that you're, you're spending significant amount of money on, on facilities beyond what's been addressed in the deferred maintenance needed by Parsons.
Okay, and then if you look at the Pegasus building, the initial cost is 20 million, and then we, we heard some estimates of what it would take to bring the, the Pegasus building up to ADA standards. And when you say conservative, are you talking conservative meaning you're going to estimate that it's going to cost a lot? That's the conservative estimate, or that it's going to cost a little? Which is, which, when you say conservative?
Yeah, that's right. Great question. We've conservatively assumed that you spend the maximum amount of money possible. In other words, we felt it would be inappropriate to represent that you could get into the building, not putting any money into it, not renovate the space to house your specific needs. So we've estimated on the high end to demonstrate that there's the capacity for additional savings that's, that's to be worked out.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask this question. We, we have students all over the district in portables, we have them in, in buildings that are inadequate, and if anybody has read any of my messages to Wanda Paul about some of our schools, you, you know how strongly I feel about that. Anybody who ever saw me at, over at Truitt would, would know that I want our kids to be in the best possible facilities. So what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to determine is, if we go forward with purchasing this building, are we going to have more money or less money to deal with the fact that we've got kids in portables? And we've got kids in school buildings that are in dilapidated shape?
We believe strongly that there is going to be a significant amount of money able to be redeployed into student uses and education uses because of the strategy. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Nodell?
Can I get a clarifying question? In the first book that we received last Friday, the number was 165 million. In this book we received today, the number is 158. So is there a reason why it changed?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you be more specific about which number you're referring to? I'd be happy to answer the question. Yes?
Draft.
Uh, that was, that was the draft for Friday, yep. And then, and which two numbers are you comparing, so I can answer your question?
The total cost, 165, and then this number went to 158.
Okay, I understand, yeah. Uh, we received updated numbers as to what the 2013, 2014 operating expense standards are for the Dallas area, and so I updated the financial analysis to include that updated benchmark information for operational expenses.
So, um, it's 184 million dollar savings?
That's right.
And so you take away the 158 for the total cost, right? When you do number, apples are apples. Our total cost to occupy the buildings at all 17 floors are, the 158 is 1 through 7.
Oh, I've assumed in the model, to be conservative, that you occupy all 17 floors. We know that you may not need all 17 floors, and so those costs could be significantly reduced.
So this number is for all 17 floors?
That's right.
The 158. And the saving is 184?
Right, but the, the savings include, it's benchmarking today versus the cost of occupying, so you, you wouldn't net the two out?
You wouldn't net the two.
No.
Because I'm just saying, we're going to pay 158 for, that's, um, cost for electric?
Right.
The bills, all of that, right?
My opinion is it'd be more appropriate to compare the 158 to the 404 million dollars.
And that is where?
Uh, status quo, total occupancy cost nominal in Calumnae.
So the four, help me understand, I'm trying to, just numbers on the sense, the savings. I'm trying to see where, where's the savings?
Right.
So when you, you know, you pay out, like, for instance, you buy a car, you know, you put a down payment, and then this is, I mean, where's the savings?
Well, this would be the equivalent of fitting two people in a Suburban and then selling Suburban and moving to a Prius. You're getting, you're getting lean, and you're getting a vehicle more appropriate for the size of, or the number of people you're transporting. And by the way, the Prius gets, you know, 600. And by the way, the Prius gets, you know, 60 miles to the gallon versus 10 miles a gallon for the Suburban.
But I'm just trying to understand, just apples, and I made in my head, apples to apples. So, deferred maintenance, how much is the deferred maintenance in the building, of the Pegasus building? What's the dollar, dollar amount?
Yeah, on Tower One, per the Corrigan report, which is due diligence, the total construction cost for the tower, this one I see right here, is 41 million, 351.
41 million?
Yes, ma'am.
For Tower One?
Correct.
So, I'm just trying to understand, 158-
Right, that's all included in that number.
We paid 20 million, 41 million for Tower One. That's floor one-
For the whole property.
Through 17.
And that's ancillary buildings as well.
So, the deferred maintenance is 41 million?
Correct.
Then, we're going to buy the building for 20 million?
Correct.
And the retrofit is how much?
Well, okay, and so now we're, you know, just to keep track of those numbers. So, if we do the 20, and then we do the 41, so we're at 61 million. And then, depending on what we do, assuming the scenario that we painted here for the seven floors, as far as carpeting and painting, and we mentioned earlier on, is it going to be furniture? Those studies still have to happen, I think we talked about some time to do that.
What's the estimated cost?
So, that gets us back up, jump in here from doing the math right.
Yeah, sure, across all the scenarios for any moving, any furniture, we've applied market-based numbers for what that costs on a per employee basis. So, that's, that's line item three, two and three there in the summary. Move costs, three and a half million dollars approximately. Furniture, 10 million dollars. That's all, that's all baked into the total occupancy cost number.
And that's floor one through 17?
That's right.
10 million, 3 million. So, total, 61 million plus 3 million plus 10 million. It's total, is that to go into one through three now? Or is it to phase, go into floors two, three, and four?
That is a great question, and so staging the expenses over time, depending on, again, let's just use this scenario because it's on the board, that you're going to use those seven floors. And we mentioned earlier, you have some air conditioning issues, serious ones, which are in that 41 million dollars. Okay, so, you would spread, assuming that the seven floors works for you now, then that's where your money would go. So, what I'm trying to say is you don't have to spend all of that money upfront.
So, the seven floors, the, so you're saying the 61 million, the 3 million, the 10 million is for how many floors to go in now?
We've not approached it that way.
Second, third, fourth floor? Because we're, and how many employees will go into that one through seven floor for this dollar amount?
Right, so, let me tackle the answer a couple of different ways. First of all, the preliminary test fits indicate that you can get to a great amount of density per floor. So, 185 employees per floor.
185, okay.
185 per floor. So, in the first seven, you could house 1,250 people in those first seven floors.
1,250 people?
1,232 is the exact number.
And our total number of consolidation in people's spaces, how many?
Potential candidates, it's up to 2,500. The, the key assets, which we identified in the report, it's about 1,700 employees.
1,700 employees. So, we'll get 1,232 in floor one through seven. And that's for the 61, 3 million, 10 million. So, to get the rest of the employees, is that, is that the goal that you worked from? To house 1,700 employees?
Yeah.
Or was it 3,000 employees?
Now, as you go up in the building, so if you, if you fill up the first seven floors with the numbers we've just talked about, then you would need to budget in for carpeting and painting and other things on floors. And let's just assume in this scenario, you do all the other eight floors.
And that, so in the first 41, not 41 million, does that include the ADA?
Correct, yes.
The 41 million?
Yes, ma'am.
ADA for every floor, or for floor one through seven?
The tower.
The ADA?
Correct.
So, I'm still trying to understand, you know how you, in your head.
No, I understand.
My other question is that, did you guys, a couple of years ago, there was a study for current administration building to build office towers on the HR and the, the building across, there's two buildings across the street. Do we have, that, that's in facilities planning, do we have that study, a copy of that study? Ms. Paul? I thought it was CBR that did it. Ms. Paul? Do we have a copy of, this board had commissioned a study for high-rise on the property across the street, under Eric Anderson?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, so, all the studies I know are somewhere housed, that we've commissioned that, and it was a dollar amount for the high-rise to, and then to cross over to this building. And also, there's a study to add on to this building. Dr. Blackburn, do you remember those studies?
We've talked about it several times, about different ways to handle administrative buildings. At one time, there was an offer to even purchase this building and everything around us, and we moved downtown and leased space. So, there's been lots of conversation, lots of discussions about how to handle administrative buildings.
So, y'all, y'all are not, you're not aware of the studies to just kind of compare? My viewpoint on this is that we voted to close schools about three years ago. And we're supposed to save 11 million per year, 11 million. And when I look at what's going on in trustee Mishkay's district, Truitt got to add on trustee Cowan, and the last bond package, you got to add on Griner. And then, when I look at the bond package, the majority of the new schools, a lot of them went into trustee Bingum's district. And then, we're getting Joe May in a sharing. And we bought land in trustee Jones' position, then real, uh, seat, then we had to move it over to trustee Solis. So, we don't know the total cost of the new Joe May school it's going to cost us. But we closed, which I voted, 11 schools to save 11 million dollars. So, we've saved 22 million dollars in two years. This is going on our third year of 22 saving 11 million. But yet, we're not in discussion about bringing back our schools online. And the majority of the trustees that had that was District Nine, and then I think in your district, trustee Solis, and one in yours, Dr. Blackburn, one in Danes, and one in trustee Forman, but District Nine, five. So, I don't, and we talked about a plan. What is the plan? We needed a plan, and we bought a plan back. So, I don't understand why we have the Futures Facilities Task Force, as you mentioned, Dr. Blackburn, why we're not talking about a comprehensive plan for what we're going to do. And when you look at the Parsons, and I sat on that committee with you for a whole lot of hours, trustee Jones, to talk about this Parsons report that we received and looked at the FCI and the index and our vacancies, vacant buildings, as well as the plan. We kept saying, trustees, we need a plan for the future of our students. So, I looked at this report, I didn't see anything on how we're going to be more efficient to help our students. I don't understand, I'm still trying to follow the numbers, but we saved 11 million dollars per year when we consolidated schools. And I don't hear in the plan how we're bringing our schools superintendent mouths back online. But yet, we're talking about administration needs to be, to, in a better building to help our schools. But yet, when I look at the FCI, we have a lot of pinch in the southern sector, and even in trustee Jones' district, and a lot of pinch. And I look at our priority, one, two, three, that I sit on this committee, looking for a plan. I nominated a Future Facilities Task Force member who is looking at the future of this district, so we can have a sustainable building. So, I'm just trying to figure out why we're discussing this when we've yet to come up with a comprehensive plan for all of our schools. And we have 11 schools that are consolidated. HS Thompson would like a new building. I know Dr. Blackburn wants a new building in Wilmer. They're about 200 students over capacity. And I will not be supporting this, because I don't see the full plan that a year ago, trustee Mishkay and trustee Cowan, we needed a plan to discuss opening up our buildings for our children, to bring our communities back online. So, I'm requesting that we get a comprehensive plan. And let's move administration in a couple of our buildings. We can reopen Frazier, and we want to repurpose that building. We have Bonham down the street. Let's put administration there, and then let the Futures Task Force come up with a clear plan and go for the bond, and let the voters vote on how we spend our public dollars. So, I'm pleading to this board to think about the 11 schools that I voted for, to close and bring them back online. I would like to see that plan of how we're going to bring our communities back, and how we're going to bring our schools and back online. So, you guys want to vote to save money to do what? I don't hear you saying save money to bring schools, open schools back up. I don't hear what we're going to do with the savings. And I don't hear this board talking about bringing the schools back. We said two years ago that we would bring our schools back in two years, and I don't see the conversation around that. Frazier, HS Thompson, Wheatley, Fantasy Harris, Akalia Park, Bonham, Harley, Hossely. I don't see the plan on what we're doing for our communities. And I'm requesting from this board to come up with a plan, and let the plan work through where we have these schools in that plan. So, I cannot support opening and moving administration until I see a comprehensive plan for the board members who voted to close schools, to see how we bring our communities back, for our students and our communities. So, I'm requesting a comprehensive plan. Good job, CBR. But however, this is a decision that I think this board needs to consider strongly.
Please, George, okay, trustee Jones?
Thank you, President, sorry. This district has over 8 billion in face value on assets, 700 million of which, which is less than 10% of our total assets, are our administrative facilities. We did start a journey for the Physical Assets Committee first to make sure we had a blueprint of all of our assets and the related condition, and that was step one. Prior to the Physical Assets Committee doing that analysis, this district had never looked at a comprehensive view of its real estate portfolio in all of its elements, and even then, didn't really know what its condition was and what its requirements were to make sure we could bring our assets up to condition and that, and that they were truly meeting the needs, whether those needs were serving students or the needs were serving our supportive infrastructure, which has to be there to, to make sure that our students get what they need. We have 20,000 employees in DISD, 10,600 of teachers, of which, the teachers are primarily located at the campuses. And with respect to our administrative resources, we do need solutions so that they can work efficiently and effectively. But that being said, I want to start to demystify a couple of things. Number one, this district has grown in population substantially over the last several years. Number two, this district, with respect to its schools, and I literally have been a broken record on this, has entire feeder patterns that are at overcapacity. Meaning, the amount of space allocated in all of the buildings, even if you tried to redistribute children, cannot serve the needs of the children that are within those patterns. And right now, as I look, that is a vast majority of our feeder patterns. And I will start with WT White, which has been at 112% capacity as a feeder pattern for the last possibly five years, depending on how you want to calibrate. My point is, is that our schools should be our first priority. Our schools should be where we concentrate our resources, and our schools should be where we should be putting our focus right now, because the majority of our assets in a number of these feeder patterns are in conditions that are unacceptable for the education of children. So, that was and is the main priority of what Physical Assets started to do. The vast majority of our assets are campuses. That being said, administrative assets do represent an opportunity, especially given the inefficiency and the ineffectiveness that we've managed to run them. But I take exception to a number of assumptions that have been thrown around at this table tonight. Number one, we have a $4 billion mortgage against our assets. And that's conservative, because I'm just looking at face value of the bonds that have been sold, and not necessarily looking at the total value of what we're going to have to pay in interest over the life of the bonds. Now, we do a very good job of managing those assets. Are you shaking your head, Jim? It's about 2.6, plus it's trumped up with interest and related other obligations.
Yeah, that, that 4.5 billion includes your interest.
Right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. But it also includes, we just did the, the QSCAPs, and we've also done some other types of obligations. The point is, is that, you know, we have a mortgage on a number of our assets that we're currently paying for, and we should never forget that. And that's means that there's no such thing here as a free lunch. So, even though things may be paid for, in essence, they're really not, in the sense that we still carry obligations on a number of the improvements that we've made over the last 10 years. The other issue that I want to stress is that this is a solution. This is not necessarily the only solution. I am very concerned, when we undertook this analysis, that we were going to do it in a systematic fashion. We were going to start with a workplace strategy. We were going to look at an overarching facilities approach that said, here's sort of the solution, taking our existing assets, looking at potential ways in which they can be optimized toward an answer that meets our workforce needs. My concern with the current proposal on the table is twofold. Number one, this proposal requires a lot of cash. And I mean, you can talk about net present value savings, but it's really not the same thing as saying, a dollar I have to spend out of my pocket in real hard currency to fund something versus the future value or the, the savings that I can grab by, you know, calculating that scenario against a scenario where I would have to spend a bunch of money, 20 million a year, or whatever the number is, over time to keep my existing assets running. Now, I get it. I mean, I do know that we're all talking about savings here, but I'm more inclined to want to look at the actual dollars in and the dollars out. And right now, I don't see how this economics work, how the economics of this is, is to our advantage in the current near-term period when cash is precious. You know, 25 million is a lot of improvement at a lot of campuses that when we've got 4 billion of deferred maintenance, according to Parsons, at some point, we're going to have to reconcile that. We're also looking at strategies on optimizing our assets in the sense that we're looking at choice and other ways in which we may change the current structure and use of our assets to accommodate these other opportunities that we have under current advisement. So, I'm concerned about taking this step ahead of other steps. I do see the wisdom of the property on some levels, but not on every level. Number one, the cost that it will require, the out-of-pocket cash and related resources we have to tie up to do this acquisition is of great concern to me, at a time when we have yet to do a bond program, we've got immediate needs with schools, and we've kicked that can so hard with no real current solutions to buildings that are bursting at the seams in poor condition that kids show up every day. Because 161,000, 162,000, 163,000 from last count are what we're currently dealing with, and that's a growth in a short period of time that we're having to meet the need for. So, that's my first concern. My second major concern is that this building is on the Stemmons Corridor. The other day, I looked at the pop, the, the traffic density and the population sort of flows going through there, and it was literally gridlock. I've traveled that corridor quite a bit, so I know it pretty well. And I also know that it's not effective with respect to DART, because there's no DART station that's actually at the building. So, as we talk about consolidation, I also want to talk about making sure that the type of asset that we invest in can support our people on every level. Mobility is important today. So is the opportunities for getting people out of their cars and not having to worry about parking and so forth. The third thing that concerns me is the, is the, not only the acquisition cost, but the improvement cost. I mean, granted that we could probably find the money, but it's money that's coming out of pockets of other places that right now, we should be spending. And this is really where the timing, for me, is quite problematic. I realize this district has an incredible problem with respect to its facilities. We undertook the Future Facility, excuse me, the Physical Assets Committee to start mapping that. The strategies needed to be understood before investments were going to be made, and that was against three major areas of focus that all have to be looked at on their own, but also as part of a systemic. also as part of a systemic set of assets that we should be proactively managing. We have never done proactive real estate portfolio management, I believe a district of our size should be doing that. We just started doing lifecycle cost accounting on our properties and in other areas. We have been very much behind in keeping up with our responsibilities, and certainly, based on the, the quality of our buildings, we've stretched every dollar, every inch of its life, but we're a big district, we're a growth district, and based on that, our overhead shouldn't be our first priority, our kids should be. And I just don't see where the savings in tangible dollars, where dollar for dollar, for the next five years or ten years, I'm going to see a net gain of cash in my pocket that we can turn around and put back into our schools. I can see how the economics of this, from a financial management, or, excuse me, a financial investment perspective, pencils out, I'm good at that, I like that, but we're not here looking at strictly that, we're looking at all the other pieces. So, with that, I'd like to talk a little bit more about that savings number, and whether it's cost avoidance or it's real dollars in hand, which is it?
Sure, so let me, let me start by saying, there, there will be significant offsets in cash outflows with cash inflows from disposition of assets. The district is sitting on today, and in the full report, there's an asset-by-asset evaluation of what's happening in the market around your administrative assets. And fortunately for the district, you are sitting on very valuable assets where the market is redeveloping around you, and, and the, the land prices in these areas have escalated significantly. So, as part of the model, we, we did include all of the inflows, so from a cash-in, cash-out basis, if the district executes this strategy and is able to sell these assets that are inefficient and ineffective, you're going to be realizing significant cash inflows along the way, and that could happen in the next two to three years. It all depends on how aggressive the board is in authorizing the administration to sell those assets, so...
And Peter, I, I appreciate that, because that was part of the study, but one of the things that troubles me is that we may need those assets to house children, and some of those assets, at least two of them that are on the list, the list of fifteen, were former schools. So, from our perspective, from where we're sitting right now, we got more kids than we've got available space in many areas of our district, for which we couldn't acquire the asset again for anywhere near what, you know, we might get selling it. So, there's this double-edged sword, because we haven't looked at this in context of our total needs, we've just looked at your point of view about how do we reconcile the administrative, and that's, that's important, but to me, it doesn't answer all of the questions and all of the interrelated issues that this district, from a real estate management perspective, is currently dealing with.
Absolutely, I, I completely understand your, your question, and what you've, you've raised the issue there. So, I would just point out that in the disposition strategy, there is a lot of room for strategic decisions in there as to what to keep and what to sell. We analyzed all of the properties from the perspective, does the market have a need for this asset, would somebody pay significant top dollar for the asset, or three, is there no market value for the asset? So, so we looked at it from a range of possibilities, and I'll just point out, in, in the analysis, there's about forty-seven million dollars net present value of disposition activity over the next three years, as you are able to relocate folks potentially into something like the Pegasus complex. But you, you would have a discretion, and there's enough, enough room in there for you to keep assets and still saving a significant amount of money. If you mothball some of these assets while you wait on school decisions, housing decisions, there's, there's room in those numbers for that.
Well, the, the, I think the issue, and trustee Foreman pointed it out quite, quite eloquently, is that we've got to do a comprehensive plan. I mean, we can't say this versus this because we don't know, and until you, you see the systemic needs from all these different dimensions, with the exception of the sports complexes, which are just expensive to maintain, and right now, you know, anytime you build one or improve one is a large capital investment, if you just stick to the schools being our major area of focus and as, as where we're supposed to be spending our money, I just don't see that. I just don't see how, you know, this opportunity, which is going to take a lot of cash and resources and investment, is going to throw off cash in any meaningful way. I, I can see from an expectation of cost avoidance, but the problem is, we're not going to invest a lot of that anyway, that's a given. And if you're going to optimize before that, then it's kind of a, you know, an analysis that isn't really meaningful, because, you know, right now, our goal was to optimize all of our assets against our needs, both current and future.
I, I would just comment that one of the major drivers of cost savings, yes, there is the opportunity, if you can call it that, to never invest another dollar in administrative assets, but they are only inefficient now and only getting more inefficient in the operation. So, today, it, it's very easy to, to assume that the district is operating at ten dollars a square foot on the operating expenses, and you're operating one point two million square feet. If you're able to shed a half a million square feet through executing a strategy like this, and, or potentially more, I mean, say you only operate the first two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of this building, and your administrative need goes from one point two million to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, you're going to save a million square feet a year of operating expenses.
See, to me, there's two different things going on there. The first is, we consolidate, we take what we've already got, and we figure out how to better optimize it. The second is, we're consolidating by buying a building where we throw everybody in there, and then we sell off these assets to offset cost or, or practical long-term liability. So, you know, to me, they're not the same analysis. I mean, to consolidate and to optimize what you've got relative to what you're using and your need, and then to also look at what are the strategies that would support that, is not the same thing at the end of the day. And frankly, the fifteen assets you've identified, I'm not sure all of them can be redeployed for, you know, sale, selling, or, or, excuse me, that all of them could be sold, many of them may need to be redeployed. So, I, I think what I would really like to know right now, and this comes back to the question that I started with before we got into other areas, was, why is this the only strategy? I mean, why can't we do a distributed strategy, and why haven't we looked at that as part of this cost analysis and this redeployment and this optimization?
Can we, can we do one thing really quickly? Is, if you will hold on to that question, we're going to continue the conversation, we're going to follow back up on that question, but I just want to make sure I get other trustees in.
And the second part is, I'd really like to see the savings in hard numbers, not just in the comparing of two different options and where we get to NPV.
Okay, trustee Cowan.
Yes, trustee.